All right, yeah, there's no gavel. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the January 28th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. Sit upon the United States of America and to this republic with which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as a whole.
All right, I guess first item here is ceremonial matters.
Let's roll call first.
Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Feng?
Present.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Vice Chair Saxena?
Here.
Chair Person Wong?
Here.
All present.
All right, full house. All right, ceremonial matters and presentations. So, election of a chair, vice chair, and committee appointments. Post-prom from the January 14th, 2020 meeting. And we'll be choosing, yeah, we'll be choosing a chair or vice chair of the Planning Commission, assign representatives to various committees, make a recommendation to the city council for the Planning Commission rep to ERC, and review the upcoming meeting calendar. So, yeah, so let's start with that. Before we begin, I do wanna make a few statements and make a few comments. I just wanna thank everybody on this commission. I think we've had a very exciting year. We've had a lot of conversations, a lot of different viewpoints, and I think that was very, very important. A lot of diverse areas. It's about five things that we did really well here, and I wanna thank you all for. I think first one is we actually helped with the land and regional business and tourism by adding a lot of hotel stock. And I think that's something to be proud for. I think it's a good tax base. It helps us in the long term with the economy. Second thing, we amended the planning development chapter of the municipal code. And, you know, I think we did some good things there. Things that represent community interest, business interest, inclusive of a lot of different views. And then the third piece, we implemented the SB 35 review procedures and checklist, things that help us be much more prepared for other housing bills or housing bills like that as they come across. And then, of course, we reviewed the general plan and CDD work program. And I think we've got a lot of items on track, and thanks to our planning team and planning department for moving things along. We might have a lot of things completed by 2020, June 2020, which is pretty impressive for what we've done. But I think the last part was the most important here. And I thank the community, and I thank the community input here. We were more inclusive with resident input than I've seen planning commissions in the past. And I think that was something very important. We've always had great business representation. We've always had great representation from, you know, other intergovernmental agencies. But the thing that was missing in the calculus here was really resident input. And as a reflection of what happened with our city council elections and what happened with a lot of resident voices, I think we were able to get to a different balance and different calculus. I think that is much more positive for the community in the long run. So I do wanna thank that before we get to the proceedings. So I'd like to go to Seth, our attorney. What is the process here, so everybody knows what we have to do? And then we'll move in that direction.
Actually, Mr. Fu will be running a process and has a process laid out. He can describe it.
Okay. Director Fu.
Thank you, Seth. So typically, what we do is we would entertain a motion to elect a chair. And then I would like for that to open to public comment for that item. And you can close public comment afterwards and bring it back to commission for discussion and a vote. We'll obviously repeat and do the same thing for vice chair. And for the committee members, you don't necessarily need to be as formal as you want, but it's up to you if there's multiple people that want to be in the same committee. Otherwise, you could just, for example, I want to do this.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Sure, sure. I wanna attend this meeting, and there's no opposition.
Makes sense.
Then I'll write that down as well.
Okay, we'll do that. So the process is a nomination is placed, a second is made, public comment, and then we make a vote.
Yes, sir.
All right, sounds good. So, all right, well, I will take my chair's prerogative, and I would like to make a nomination for Kitty Moore to be the Plan Commission Chair. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all right, let's go to public comment. So for those, please fill out a blue card, and you have three minutes to come up to the dais, and we will hear your comments about this proposal for a nomination. Luke, is that Luke Wang? I hope I have the right name.
Yep.
All right, Luke, please come on up.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission and staff. I'm here to express support for Commissioner Moore as the next chair. There's no doubt that growth and planning is extremely important here in Cupertino. There's also no doubt that the housing crisis is a major problem. Here's an op-ed written by San Jose Mayor Sam Liccardo two weeks ago. So if I can have the overhead, please. So this was on April 12th, and he wrote that San Jose needs multiple approaches to solving housing crisis. The first paragraph, I'd like to read to you. Amid the complexity that afflicts our lives, some problems have simple cause. Okay, that's a key word, simple cause. Take our housing crisis. Since 2010, the Bay Area added jobs at the rate of about five times the rate of construction of new housing units. Now, the words of many, the rents too damn high. Okay? So there's the problem, simple problem, simple cause to the problem. Job-housing ratio, five to one. Okay? So the key word is simple cause. And so now, back in 2018, why did Commissioners Takahashi and Feng not recognize the simple cause when you approved the VAALCO Tier 1, Tier 2 plan? For this, I find you unfit to lead this commission. Furthermore, I've had extensive discussions with Commissioner Feng on Xstor. You flatly rejected job-housing ratio as a meaningful metric. This is absolutely ludicrous and totally unacceptable. Now, back, right here in this room, back in 2014, Paul Brophy famously asked, "Where will the people live?" Okay? It's still true today, or maybe even more so. We need intelligent and sensible leadership in Cupertino. I have no doubt that Commissioner Moore is such a leader. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the next individual, Pamela Hershey. Please come up to the dais.
Hello, I'm Pamela Hershey. Hello, Commissioners. A resident of Cupertino, of course. I just wanted to also ask for Kitty Moore to be considered as the chair. I think she's compassionate. I've worked with her a few times and know how much diligent work she puts into the commission and how she cares about the city, the residents, and the building, everything that goes into being a commissioner that actually is for the residents and the community. So please consider Kitty as the new chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Warren, please come to the dais, and then followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Hi. So I'm also wanting to support this nomination, and for many of the same reasons Luke mentioned, that she's very well qualified, she does her homework, she came with knowledge that we needed, and she's expanded on her own knowledge for this city. And I don't know how you can ask for more of someone that's sitting up there making decisions. It doesn't mean that, well, so I guess I really wanted to say some other things, but it's probably not appropriate at the time and the message is sent, that she's an A-OK choice for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This is the first time I've really gone through this, but that's okay. We're living in, may you live in interesting times. We certainly are. I think that Kitty has shown, especially for the first year being on the Planning Commission, I mean, I have been coming here for 20 years. I went to the county for five years before we annexed. Been coming here since 2001 in two different buildings. And it is rare that a first-year Planning Commissioner or City Council member winds up going to the chair position the first year. I consider public service a very, very high calling. All of you have dedicated hours away from your family, that's, it came out wrong. All of you have spent a lot of time away from your family doing public service, getting involved in things that you never had any idea you'd get involved in. And I still think all of you are to be commended for the time that you have spent serving the city. I do think Kitty has done a great job the last year. She's very fact-oriented. I am extremely impressed with seeing her amount of data acquisition and retention and memory. It is phenomenal. So I think that this is a very good appointment at this time, especially considering Kitty lives in an Eichler community and her Eichlers are under threat from SB 50. I think that it's very important that we remember that all of us, when we're here, have different things in our lives that are affected by laws or things that happen in the country or the city. But I think that Kitty is eminently qualified after one year of service and a great deal of public service through being involved as an active neighbor. And she has a lot that could be lost in her neighborhood. So I think it's very appropriate that she be the chair. I think she's highly qualified. All of you have served very well in the last several years, and you're to be commended. I think that Kitty would make a fine chair for this year, and especially from the strange times that we're living in with the housing bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you have any other cards? Okay, let's move to Commissioner conversation and debate.
Well, I'd like to start off and echo what some of the public speaker said. The amount of effort, diligence, and, oh, that's not for me, right?
No, that's not for you. We'll cut you off.
The amount of effort and diligence and analysis I've seen Commissioner Moore do is really impressive. I think it's, it sort of reminds me of David at times, a very experienced thing. And I feel, I feel she will be a great person to lead this commission. Her commitment is extraordinary, and I really value that.
Any other comments from Commissioners?
Sure, I'll make some comments. I would agree with a lot of the comments in terms of Kitty's review of data assessment and preparation. I think it's second to none. Main concern comes from bias, and the fact that there's some litigation she's involved in, there's just a natural bias to one of the bigger projects in our city. And we have to ask ourselves, is that a prudent thing to do, is put an individual that has this bias on this large project as our chair? So that's my reservation. I think the comments, I guess I'm a little offended at being called unintelligent, but that's somebody's opinion. I'll live with that. But, you know, we, as a Planning Commission, try to look at any project or situation based on what is presented to us and the facts that are presented to us, and ideally reach a conclusion that is based on those facts and not necessarily based on a decision that's been made before we enter the meeting. And so, again, that's really my only reservation. I think attention to detail is fantastic and all of those elements. So that's my concern. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Feng?
So I'll echo, I'll echo some of the prior comments as well. You know, I think Commissioner Moore is, certainly has high interest and is prepared. I will point out that she is suing the city, a litigation against the city at this time. I believe that is disqualifying, probably to serve on the commission and certainly to be the chair. I think that an important part of this last year, if we've done anything, we've tried to at least say that what we're here to do is to look at trying to make decisions objectively rather than subjectively. And I think that this actually is a failing here. We're seeing a, you know, there are many different criteria on which you can try to make the decision. I think that when you weigh those criteria, it would be hard to, you know, to, I can't support this nomination. You know, I think that they are, these are tough times, tough times, you know, they're challenging times because these are times of change. And I just think that one of the things, one of my goals, you know, in the three years that I've been here, has been that we try to create an environment here where, where we can kind of intelligently and objectively review the projects that come before us to make them good projects for the city. So that's where, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner Feng. Yeah, I would like to, you know, echo some of the comments of some of my Commissioners here as well. I do wanna say something that's very important. I think that, look, I have, I have been amazed by the amount of resident input, the resident, how much residents care, how people have entrusted their trust with us to ensure that the different views are taken into consideration. And that may not have happened before, having that level of residents input. And that's one of the things I very much value from Commissioner Moore. She has spent the time to meet with folks that may be perceived as people that are having different views. She's spent the time to go out and solicit different opinions, sometimes to the chagrin of maybe folks that had a different point of view, might think she may have one point of view or another. And in every step of the way, I have found her to be, to have the integrity to understand that the facts can be presented in different ways, and it's important for her to make that decision and to make those facts and consider those facts before walking to a meeting. I think we all walk into a Planning Commission meeting, and Commissioners and individuals, we all walk in with our inherent biases, but when presented in the facts in a forum like this, opinions change. My opinions have changed multiple times since I've been here. And I think to make an assertion that anyone walking in here came in with a bias and had that bias and carry that all away without considering other facts is unintelligent, but I'll leave it at that. But what I do wanna say is that I believe every Commissioner here votes with their heart, votes with the facts that are in mind, and that's what I respect about it. I might not agree with a lot of people here, but I know that they're voting with their conscience, and they really believe that's what they, that's what they are doing is the right thing. And it's that level of entrust that I believe, and I think Commissioner Moore, like every one of the Commissioners here, could be chair, and she's done that very well. But I think it's the additional knowledge, the passion, is why I definitely wanna support Commissioner Moore on that nomination. All right. Wanna put it to vote? Okay.
Sorry, we were just discussing whether there was a second. I believe there was, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair Saxena.
May I say a few words?
Oh, yeah, you should on your own nomination. You're not allowed to talk. Go ahead.
All right. Wow, I'm really touched by the comments. Well, okay, so part of the attention to detail has to do with the fact that I do have a background in civil engineering, land development specifically. I have done street, street plans, storm drain plans, grading plans, drainage plans, hydrology and hydraulic studies. So some of the questions I had today with regards to one of our agenda items went straight back to doing hydrology studies and calculating runoff flow and, you know, having some concerns with one of our agenda items with regards to that. I've also done traffic studies and worked for Regional Planning Commission, calculating levels of service as well. I'm currently in the paralegal program at Danza College. And after about 18 months working on the SB 35 lawsuit, volunteering on that, it became clear that there, and that the city really does need to have, you know, Commissioners and council members who do have some legal background because, you know, we are facing litigation, you know, from developers, and we also have the sheer number of new housing laws which, you know, came through last year, which need to be digested. It's, you need somebody that doesn't mind reading code and is able to do it. And so this program, I voluntarily entered it, and it's already helping quite a lot. I, as I mentioned, I am a named petitioner for the SB 35 lawsuit, and to me, that demonstrates my willingness to look out for the residents because it's a project, the SB 35 project worsens the housing shortage while using a housing bill. And the judge on that case, you know, made some comments about the way the law is written, and that will further come out when she makes her statements. The Planning Commission really disappointed me in 2018 because it held no hearings on the SB 35 project, not even to inform the residents what was in the project. So, you know, people had to go to other sources in their own city to find out how big the project was, what the towers were like, why there wouldn't be any hearings. All of this could have been discussed in an open forum for the public so that the residents would at least know what the project was, and if they wanted to at that time, they could have challenged it. And that wasn't allowed, and that was extremely disappointing for me to watch. And I think it definitely went against what this commission is supposed to be doing, which is being open and transparent. And I'm, I am still shocked and outraged that that, that that happened. And there's the statement of bias, and to challenge that, my issue with the SB 35 law is that I think the law has some unconstitutional elements to it. And we are also talking about the largest project in the city's history, which will worsen the housing shortage. And I, you know, I wasn't entirely sure at the start, working on that project, that it needed to be challenged, but as time has gone on, it's become more and more clear that for this particular project, it definitely needed to be challenged. And also, I recused myself on all the SB 35-related matters. So I, which is the right thing to do, especially considering your, you know, the comment of bias, I did not involve myself in those issues. So to, you know, take some words from John Willie, Councilmember Willie. I'm here for the residents, and I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
All right, well, with, well, that's good. All right, well, with that, let's start the vote. All right, everyone ready? Here we go. All right, looks like everyone has voted. I'll do a drum roll, but be less anticlimactic. All right. Motion carries, three, two. I relinquish my duties as chair, but I do make one request. I'd like a break between 8:35 and 8:50 today, if that's possible. Thank you. All right, so I guess, do I take over or do I finish this out?
Yeah, so what I would suggest is, once you finish all the election, both chair and vice chair, that you remain seated.
Okay.
Give us an opportunity to switch out the system. But what that would happen is then Commissioner Wong, you have to assist our new chair.
I will do that.
With the system for the voting and also a timer as well. So coming up next, we have the vice chair, so we can entertain a motion for vice chair.
Actually, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
I believe the largest project in the history of the city of Cupertino is Apple Park. Isn't that correct?
By square footage, no. No. Apple Park was around between six and seven million square feet, even including the parking garages, whereas the VAALCO SB 35 project sits around 10 million square feet. It is larger. It is the largest.
I'm going to propose Chairman Wong as the vice chair.
Oh, okay.
Because I, because of some personal issues, I think I don't want to be in a position of higher responsibility than a basic commissioner this year.
I second that.
Okay, up and for discussion. Actually, public comment, I guess, that's where we go, sorry. Anyone wanna comment? Please, I guess you have to refill a blue card, but do that on the way out. Jennifer Griffin? Same agenda, wait.
Not like I don't know how to do that. Good evening again, Planning Commission, and I think that that's a good choice for vice chair, and I wish you all a successful year. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I guess we gotta vote, or, commissions, commission comments, please go ahead. Commissioner Feng?
Yes. So I'll raise the concern here that there have been, I'll raise two concerns. One is that there has been an issue raised with regard to, with regard to the behavior, whether the behavior of Commissioner Wong has been appropriate with the public. That's something that the council has chosen not to, to address, I think, regardless of the outcome. You know, I think that that's probably something that they should have done. I also would say, again, to kind of recap my first comment, I'm concerned about impartiality is something that we want to try to have a high level of in the way that we look at projects and the way that we make decisions. And I think that that, strong opinions are a part of human endeavor. I just don't know if it's appropriate, an appropriate choice in this case.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Commissioner Moore?
I think.
Chair Leckmore?
Yeah, I think that we have been extremely fortunate to have Chair Wong for the past year. We actually have, I wanna say, kind of a rock star that has been running our Planning Commission. And if you have not seen him on television, you know, he regularly interviews, providing analysis on various companies, and travels the world, and really brings a whole ton of knowledge to the Planning Commission that I don't know that the residents are all aware of this. And I know that there were very many complimentary statements made towards my diligence. However, Chair Wong does certainly do his homework and goes through material probably faster than anyone I know, and because of his technical background, he's able to understand it. And also brings in some different viewpoints about, you know, land use rights and the rights of the owners towards development, which for me have been enlightening and have expanded my view about what developers should be allowed to do or not do with their property. And I think we will be extremely fortunate to have him continue as vice chair this year, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I'd like to say you've been very graceful, even though you have been very openly attacked about things like 20 years ago or 15 years ago or whatever. I would be much angrier if I were in your place. So I appreciate your calm. I know public service is hard. We deal with complex topics. We need to do what's good for the, what we believe is good for the people of the city. And at that time, we end. And at that time, we end up in positions which may not be liked by some other folks. And it's our job and our duty to represent what's in the best interest of the city and what the city council believes represents the well of the people. And I really appreciate the work you've done, and how you have taken so many different projects and studies through, and as Commissioner Moore said, much faster than she or maybe even I could have done. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Any other comments? I would just say, hey, look, I'm very surprised. I think everyone here is pretty qualified to be a chair or vice chair. And, you know, thank you for the nomination. Start a vote? All right, here we go. All right, here comes drum roll. And it carries three, two. So, okay. Back to you, Director Fu.
All right. We have, next on the agenda is the Environmental Review Committee. This meets on the first and third, Thursday of the month, at 9:30 a.m., if we have projects. We typically will have one representative and alternate, just in case. So you can volunteer. If there's no objections, then I'll note that. Or if there's multiple people interested in representing, then you can vote on that as well.
Could we get a list of committees first, just so that we get a sense of what they are, and also the time they meet? Because at times that will-
It's attached to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
I have been the Environmental Review Committee Chair for this past year. We had very few meetings, but one really important meeting we had was, I believe, the second or possibly the third meeting, where we went over the requirements. And I believe it was the first time this has happened in the history of the ERC. We went over the requirements legally for us to do our duty, which is to make a determination of a project, after we have the initial study, if it's going to become a mitigated negative declaration, or a negative declaration, or will it need to have full EIR. And we had an excellent presentation. And then that meeting ended with us having to actually make that choice after being given the guidelines from the attorneys on how to go about doing that. I would personally like to continue on with the ERC. As a member from this Planning Commission, I really enjoyed it, and I just feel like I'm just starting, developing my knowledge on the CEQA process, and I would like to continue on.
I am too, but it, I'm open.
Are we just giving preferences?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Feng, can you repeat that?
I'm interested for consideration, but I'm okay either way. I mean, you know, there is a precedent on how this is done, so I have no problem with that, dude.
The precedent is that the chair of the Planning Commission is the representative to the ERC. That's what I was told last year. However, I believe there was some time conflict.
I had a time conflict, which I believe I placed that to your-
That's been sort of a unwritten practice. It's not a policy written in code.
No, it's a tradition. It's a tradition. So, okay. All right, what's our next, is there anybody else interested?
So I heard that Commissioner Chair Moore, as well as Commissioner Feng, are both interested. Is there a consensus on what the commission prefers, or?
Do we put this to a vote?
I think at this point, yeah.
We do put that to vote.
And I'm sorry, and then just to, so this will be a recommendation to the council for the appointment.
It's a recommendation.
It'll appear on the next city council agenda for the final appointment.
So the convention is that typically the chair becomes-
I think at this point, there's really no convention. I think it's just the commission, and you feel like-
We've broken a lot of conventions this year.
Represent you the best at these committees.
Yeah, because I know the Design Review Committee, they require the vice chair to be there, and-
Correct, that's written in code. That one is actually written in municipal code.
Okay, that's the only one?
That's the only one written in municipal code, that's correct.
Good to know. Now, I know it's in there. Okay, I guess I'll make a nomination for Chair Leckmore to be on the ERC. Is there a second?
Would it make sense with that nomination to nominate the alternate?
Yeah, let's nominate the alternate.
And, so who's your alternate?
Commissioner Feng.
Okay. And do we want to just go, just put a-
I think we can agree on all these, all ones and do the other ones, and make the recommendations. Is that the only one that gets recommended, council, or is it?
That is the only one that gets recommended, council.
The rest we take care of ourselves, if I remember.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's just do that. So I need a second? Do we have a second?
So, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so the nomination is Commissioner Chair-Elect Moore as the chair for the ERC as a nomination to city council, with an alternate of Commissioner Feng. All right, let's put that to vote. Or is there discussion? I think we don't have them. All right, we are going to vote. Yarons voted. Motion carries five, zero. And we have our new ERC nomination to the council.
Next, we have the Design Review Committee. This meets, depending on projects, first and third Thursday, on 5:00 p.m. This is an evening meeting.
Oh, that I can do. Yes, I'm in.
So, and typically, this is the chair of the DRC is typically the vice chair, so, and that's written in municipal code. So in this case, it'll be Vice Chair, Vice Chair Wong. You can vote for two, a second participant. It's up to you. And then the third member will be an alternate.
Okay. Anybody interested in DRC?
I can be the second person.
I'm interested, too.
Okay, so I'll defer to Commissioner Feng.
Let's, there we go. Do you want to be anything in DRC, Mr. Commissioner Takahashi?
I do not.
All right, well, we have an amicable resolution.
I volunteered to be the alternate.
So Commissioner Feng will be with me on the DRC, and Commissioner Saxena will be the alternate.
All right, next we have the Housing Commission. You were, this, the represent, I don't think there's a vote, I think there's a consensus here.
Consensus.
I don't think we need a vote on this one. But the next one, we have the Housing Commission. The representation from the Planning Commission will not be a voting member, it will just purely be, I don't know, observant, I guess, observer.
Conscious observer.
Yeah, and then maybe report back to the Planning Commission and the Housing Commission results. So this one, we're looking at one representative plus one alternate. And I would say this is typically on a second Thursday at 9:00 a.m., so this is a morning meeting.
Alan, would you like to continue on that?
I, I-
Difficulty.
I've been attending those meetings, just out of interest in them. Does anyone else have time in their schedule to make those meetings?
I'd probably be interested in doing it as an alternate, but, you know, what I've been doing is, you know, as the alternate this year, I've basically been kind of monitoring the agenda and only going if there was a major, major item. But it's a challenge for me as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like Commissioner Moore, you're interested in that? Okay, do we have an alternate? You want to stay as alternate?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Commissioner Feng remains as alternate. There we go.
So we have consensus on that as well. The next one is the Economic Development Committee. This meets quarterly on the second Wednesday, also a morning meeting at 10:00 a.m. And-
Which, what day? What, do we have a calendar for this?
So, so the dates are in the attachment as well, in the list of the commission appointees. I'll just read those out, and those are attended, we can kind of move those around, depending on the availability of the attendees. So the first one is February 12th, May 13th, August 12th, and November 11th. We're looking for one representative and an alternate.
Yeah, I'd like to be there.
Yeah, I was the last year's representative, but it was interesting, so.
Would you like to stay in that role?
Yeah, I actually would. I enjoyed understanding the economic challenges that the city was dealing with.
I can be the alternate.
Okay. Commissioner Takahashi remains. Commissioner Saxena is named alternate.
Okay, so we have consensus on that as well. That, I believe, concludes our appointees. Next one I'll bring to your attention is our, the mayor's monthly meeting. So you'll see the schedule on the attachment as well. Usually occurs first Wednesday, that's an evening, meeting at 5:30 in Conference Room A. So typically, in the past, we've had you guys rotate, right? So you will go to every other five meetings. I'll just read off those meetings for you, and obviously, those can still be rearranged. February 5th, March 4th, April 1st, May 6th, June 3rd, July 1st, August 5th, September 2nd, October 7th, November 4th, and December 2nd. So with these, you will have to indicate your availability and desire for any of those dates. We could do the first five and just do a rotation system, or you can pick the dates that you can attend, whichever one works for you.
Let's start with the first date and see who can make it, and then we'll see who wants to go. And that might be the easiest way. The first date you have is?
February 5th.
All right. Who's here, February 5th? I can't make that.
I can't make it.
I'm thinking, because-
You want to go earlier than later?
No, because my wife's traveling, I'm trying to figure out. And I also would want to avoid that, that week.
I am traveling. Well, I guess I'll take that one.
Thank you for your, we thank you for your service, Commissioner Feng.
Okay, so I've got Commissioner Feng for February 5th, next one's March 4th.
I can't do that.
I can take that.
And these are 9:00 a.m.?
These are 5:30 p.m.
5:30 p.m., okay.
I'll take the March one.
It's about her, Commissioner Saxena. Okay? Next one, you have April 1st.
I can do that.
Now, April 1st goes to Commissioner Moore. May 6th?
I'll take that one.
Commissioner Takahashi, June 3rd.
I think I need to go, but yeah, I'll take that one.
Well, we can switch them around.
Switch them around, but yeah, I can do that one.
All right, June 3rd, we've got Commissioner Wong. July 1st?
Are you at the rotation point there?
It's up to you. You want to rotate, or you want to pick?
Probably rotate, yeah.
Okay, so that, July 1st will be Commissioner Feng. August 5th will be Commissioner Saxena. September 2nd will be Commissioner Moore. October 7th will be Commissioner Takahashi. November 4th will be Commissioner Wong. And December 2nd rotates back to Commissioner Feng.
That's brutal. That's Election Day, November 4th, second, after Election Day.
Okay. So that concludes item number one. You can move on to approval minutes, items two, three, four, two, three, and four, with new Commissioner Chair Moore resigning.
All right, all yours, Commissioner Moore. Congratulations. You're now chair.
All right, thank you. Okay, so first, item number two, subject draft minutes of the November 12th, 2019, minutes postponed from the January 14th, 2020 meeting. Recommended action, approve or modify the draft minutes of November 12th, 2019. I think this, yeah, this was the one that we did not have quorum on, I believe. Okay, have the people who are able to vote on this been able to go through the draft minutes?
Yes. Yes, I have. I think the only comment that I had on this one is, this was the one that was partially passed, Commissioner Saxena, if you had any modifications. I don't, I'm not sure that we actually had any modifications at all on this one, along the way, so it may just be-
Yeah, that's the quorum issue.
No quorum.
No quorum.
I can't. So I would make the move that we adopt the minutes as presented for the November 12th, 2019 meeting.
I, I was, I am not able to vote on this, but there was a typo regarding, for the parkland item, which was an item that I recused on. It said chapter 1308, 1308, it should be 13.08, I believe, under item two for November 12th.
Commissioner Moore, can you say that one more time? The sections again?
So item, item two, the study session, should read 13.08. It's regarding the parkland. And I'm not really sure procedurally, because I'm, was recused on that item, and I can't vote on this item. Am I allowed to say that there is an error?
We'll say it for you, if you want.
That's fine, so I understand you're not voting on this item, and Commissioner Takahashi, you're not either. Okay, great.
I will second the minutes with that correction by Chairman Moore.
You have to say it, I just, I'm just-
Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
And we're abstained. And the motion carries three yes, two abstains. Right?
Correct.
Okay. So next, we move on to the draft minutes of December 10th, item three, postponed from January 14th, 2020. Recommended action, approve or modify the draft minutes of December 10th, 2019. And has everyone had a chance to look over those meeting minutes?
We have. Make a motion to approve.
Second? Vote with your lights? And the motion carries-
We need to reset the vote. Let's try that again. You listed as absent, so.
No, no, but I was, I was absent.
Oh, you were absent, oh, okay.
This is the one that I left partway through.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's why we didn't do it last time. That's right, okay, good.
Was that the only absence from that meeting? From that one item, Commissioner Feng?
Yes, yes. Well, it was for the latter, the second half.
For the second half.
The last point, which was just the study section.
The minutes list, Commissioner Saxena is also absent from the whole meeting.
Okay, so I'm also going to, let's take a review. This is a special meeting, right?
Yes. Ready? Okay.
Okay, vote with your lights. And the motion carries three, zero, two, two abstentions? Okay. And we'll move on to item number four, the draft minutes of January 14th, 2020. Recommended action, approve or modify the draft minutes of January 14th, 2020. Has everyone had a chance to read over those meeting minutes?
Yes.
There a motion?
Yeah, I propose a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, vote with your lights. And the motion carries four yes, zero noes, one abstention. Now we move on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Okay. This is item one, this is ceremonial matters, chair selection. Okay, I do not see any oral communications, blue cards. I do have one from Jennifer. Okay, please come up.
I think those three are all, I'm two.
Chair selection.
I filled one out, so I'm not sure what happened to it.
So we're going to need a stopwatch here, we don't have one.
I think I had a bunch of them, so maybe I filled it out wrong, I'm not sure. You'd think I'd know how to do that by now. Anyway, congratulations, Chair and Vice Chair, and the rest of the Planning Commission. I hope we have a successful year. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us. As I said again, may we live in interesting times. Tomorrow, SB 50 goes to the, it is at the floor of the Senate right now. It was moved there yesterday, and they will take a vote of the Senate tomorrow on SB 50. This is the third time this bill has been introduced again by Mr. Weiner. I think that the bill has gotten worse this time. The third time is not the charm. This bill has been a problem for the last year, well, it was tabled in April- for the last ye, well, it was tabled in April of last year to be a two-year bill. We're all learning a lot about bills. We've learned about cut-and-paste bills. So this bill started out as eight-two-seven, like, two, two or three years ago. It didn't pass out of the, somewhere. I think it was stopped in March. It was re, they did a, I forgot what they call it. I'm calling it cut-and-paste, but it's like, they took apart, Mr. Weiner took apart a cosmopolitan, cosmetology and barbering bill and reintroduced it again, and it became SB fifty last year. Well, why are we doing that? Are we trying to fool the public into passing a bill that nobody understands? I thought it was quite interesting that Kitty mentioned the unconstitutional bills. I had written down, when I first came in, that I have never, in my years of coming for five to the Board of Supes, and then twenty years in Cupertino, I have never seen things that I considered unconstitutional. In my mind, SB fifty is unconstitutional. All of the housing bills that have been signed by the two governors are unconstitutional, as well as the ADU bills. I have never been so stressed, as a resident of the state, to see our state compromised like this, our democracy handled this way. It is, these bills are unconstitutional, and I think the public has the right to say that. I have never felt so compromised. SB fifty is one of the worst examples. It is taking away local control. They have taken away local control in Oregon with HB two oh oh one, and Nicole, one of the, in Washington State, they have just introduced HB two seven eighty, which is exactly identical to HB two oh oh one.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And she cited HB two oh oh one as why she was doing it. These are all unconstitutional. We live in dangerous times. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now, we move on to written communications. We had one desk item, I believe. Okay. And this is regarding the city hosting ULI Urban Plan for Communities Workshop on Real Estate and Land Use, which is an item they're offering for the Planning Commission to attend. Next, we have consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar, so we are at item five, Public Hearings. Subject, Municipal Code Amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code for Accessory Dwelling Units. That's chapter nineteen point one one two, accessory dwelling units, and chapter nineteen point zero eight definitions for clarifications and consistency with recently adopted state bills. Application number MCA two zero one eight dash zero four. applicant, City of Cupertino. Location, citywide. Recommended action, conduct the public hearing and, one, find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA, and, two, approve the draft resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to make amendments to the city's municipal code. Tentative city council hearing date, February fourth, 2020. And I believe we start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Moore. Congratulations, by the way, on your appointment. This is John Martier, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department of the City of Cupertino. I'm here to present the accessory dwelling units ordinance, MCA twenty eighteen dash oh four. I'm also joined, to my right, Sarah Clark, with the City Attorney's Office, has been, excuse me, which, who has been integral in the interpretation of the state bills to implement this into our ordinance. So those of you who are at the Housing Commission meeting might have a little deja vu with this presentation. It is a modified version of it, but, but I think it, it does accomplish the same thing as to try to explain what ADUs are, and kind of slowly integrate as to what parts of the ordinance are being changed. So what are accessory dwelling units? So essentially, ADU is a second, secondary dwelling unit with complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. Three different types that, that we have illustrated right here, and this is important to note, and do take a mental picture of this, of these illustrations, because it will become important as we dissect the, the state bills. To the top left, you have, well, right here is the internal ADUs, where, those are the ADUs where you have no increase in square footage of the house, very little modifications to the exterior, and whatnot. There we go. And over here on the top right, you have what's attached, and those are basically the external modifications, additions to square footages, and whatnot. And then you have, what most people think of an ADU as, when it's detached, the old granny unit, put grandma in the backyard, as she gets old, detached from the principal dwelling unit. There's a clear distinction of, of what, what the principal unit is and the accessory dwelling unit. So the benefits of an ADU, as, as seen by the state of California, by design, is affordable. It provides income from homeowners, if so, if someone's an empty nester, or has some unused area of their yard, or unused area of their home, they can rent out those, those portions of their, of this, of this new unit to outside renter, or a child, or a, or a, or a parent, whatnot. It's also shared independent living areas with family members. We see that a lot in this, in this community, a lot of older values coming in, where, you know, we have multiple generations. You bring in, you know, mom and dad from abroad to live with you, or even locally. Also, as housing prices do increase, and living expenses do increase, you can, you know, we see a lot of cases where folks want to bring in their, their children, who have graduated college, but, you know, as they're starting a new job, aren't making enough money to purchase a home, or even rent an apartment, so they live at home, but still want that independence from their parents. So, the proposed changes to the municipal code, at least in the last few years, have met, have been in agreement with our council work programs, particularly the one that's current, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty city work program, under community livability. We see it as providing incentives to build ADUs, which provide affordable housing opportunities by reviewing ordinance and reducing fees. This isn't the first time we're bringing it this year. This actually, I'm sorry, within the last year, this is really the second time. In fact, in June eleventh, twenty twenty, all five of you were here, no, I'm sorry, no, Commissioners Takahashi, you weren't here, but the four of you were here, where we made a small modification by removing the ten percent lot restriction for size, and basically was to go with the council work program to try to encourage more ADUs to be developed by allowing larger-sized ADUs on size, on the, on, on the single-family lots. The commission denied recommending approval to the council, one-three-to-one, with Takahashi being absent, since, since at that time in June, there was, was, was no secret that the state was looking at approving six different state bills that could contradict what we, what we were going to be approving at this point. So, correct me if I'm wrong, the general consensus from the Planning Commission is, why would we change this when we could have some undue consequences going forward? So, knowing that, we took that recommendation and tabled any type of modification of the ordinance until such time that we knew which state bills were being approved. And little did we know that pretty much all six of them were going to be approved, and signed into, into law by the governor in October. So, what we have here in this application scope has changed. We're actually, instead of just changing one small part of one chapter, we actually have to change three chapters. The first two, definitions of chapter nineteen oh eight and nineteen twenty are really just, are, are small modifications, but the, the bulk of it is nineteen twelve, which is our accessory dwelling unit chapter. So, a quick overview of the California legislation, in which, these are the list of bills that we did find through this. The staff report goes into a lot more detail about this, so this is a very high-level analysis of, of each bill. AB sixty-eight and AB eight-eight-one, by Ting and Bloom, respectively, are prob, pretty much the meat and potatoes of the changes right there, where we, we come with a streamlined approval or denial within sixty days. Certain ADUs are being sub from local zoning standards, and, and they really set the maximum ADU dimensions for these, for these types of secondary units. Wachowski, a lot of the changes to his bill didn't affect the city too much. We never, we haven't had, at least in recent time, an owner resident requirement for ADUs. But the important part, I underline this also, was that we cannot impose the, any impact fees on ADUs under seven hundred and fifty square feet. I think a lot of the, the hesitation from some residents that want the ADUs but decided against it was the, the, the size of the impact fees, particularly our park mitigation fee, which ran upwards of fifteen thousand dollars per secondary unit. So, you know, again, someone came in, wanted to do with the, as, we'll talk more about that a little bit later on in the presentation. And as we, as we go through those bills, we see that's, under certain circumstances, you can actually convey a separate deed of an ADU if they qualify. That includes, but the standards are pretty high. You have to be a bona fide nonprofit, and, and deed to restrict that ADU to a certain nonprofit status in perpetuity. And AB six seventy and AB six seventy-one just talks about homeowners associations, how they can not restrict ADUs, and also, six seventy-one talks about incentivizing housing elements, incentivizing ADUs and housing elements, which we do anyway, with the city. Okay, so we're going to go through the changes, chapter by chapter. Nineteen oh eight, oh three oh, definitions. What we did in this case, we amended two definitions. The first was the ADU definitions to include what a junior accessory dwelling unit was. Essentially, a junior accessory dwelling unit is, has to be internal conversion. It can't be, you can't add square footage to your home. It has to be a conversion within the habitable area of your house, which does not include garages. You can't, so a garage conversion does not count as a JADU. Max size is five hundred square feet. Although, you know, you can't have your, a JADU can't have its own bathroom. It may be, you may be able to share a bathroom with the principal dwelling unit. So that's one of the main distinctions between a regular ADU and a JADU. And JADUs have to be deed restricted, so if you have a deed restriction on, if you do create a JADU, you have to deed restrict it to meet the standards of the state.
Quick question?
Yes.
Does it, is it allowed to have a kitchen?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually has to have a kitchen. Yeah.
May I also ask a question? Looking at the actual municipal code, the red line copy, on the right margin, it says consistency with state law. So, I can just show you that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm, I'm assuming that that means that this definition was written consistent with the state law. There's nothing that was locally, you know, generated?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Single-family residence, the definition of that was actually also amended to and simplified. Before, we excluded such types of single-family residents, like townhomes and whatnot. Essentially, consistent with the state definition, if you are, if you're a single-family home on a separate lot, such as a townhome, you are considered a single-family residence. This does not include condominiums, or any, any type of residential unit that's owned by air rights, but townhomes are considered single-family residents according to the ordinance now, consistent with state code, state, uh, state law. Nineteen twenty, just, this one basically, if you look at the underlying section right here, before, we did not allow ADUs in the R one C, R two, R three, but with the new state bills, we, we have to allow ADUs within multifamily zones. And that includes duplex zones and multifamily zones, anything that has more than two units on site. So nineteen twelve, some of the higher-level changes. Again, as mentioned earlier, no impact fees on any ADU or JADU less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. Again, that includes park fees. And one change from the Housing Commission, and the Housing Commission, we did say that ADUs cannot, any ADU approved after January first, twenty twenty, could not be used as short-term rental. We, we, since then, amended it to say any ADU can't be used as a short-term rental.
I'm sorry, so you, you got rid of the date?
We did get rid of the date, yeah. That was, so staff has reevaluated that, that provision.
Okay. So I think that in our last meeting, we discussed, maybe it was a July date, when that would go into effect. So would this be effective immediately when city council, should they approve this?
Well, it would be...
When would it start?
I, I believe it's effective January first, twenty twenty, since it's state law. This is, because it's with the state, so it would be effective immediately.
Okay.
So for, we're going to get into the discussion about streamlined accessory dwelling units and non-streamlined accessory dwelling units. As of January one, twenty twenty, for streamlined accessory dwelling units, we cannot allow short-term rentals in those types of units, and that's per state law. That's irrespective of what the city does with respect to this ordinance that's before you today. For non-streamlined ADUs, the city has discretion. It could choose to prohibit short-term rentals, or it could choose not to. And based on our understanding of this commission's direction in the short-term rental discussion, I believe that that is in part why we made this modification, to exclude short-term rentals from all accessory dwelling units. And so that would become effective once this is effective, so thirty days after council adoption.
Thank you, Sarah, for clarification. Continuing with the streamlined ADUs, JADUs, and single-family development, pretty much those, those, those are limited to internal conversions and detached ADUs. So if you're an attached ADU, you're not considered streamlined. So that's why I said in the beginning, just take that mental picture of the difference between attached internal conversion and detached. So, attached ADUs are not considered streamlined, only internal conversions and detached. You're allowed one per lot unless a detached streamlined ADU and, and a JADU are, are built, are on the, on the same lot. So you can't have a JADU in a streamlined detached ADU. These types of ADUs do not, are not impacted by FAR lock coverage, open space requirements?
John, could you repeat that? That you can have both, and can you say that again?
Yeah, so, so if, if there's a principal, so if a, like a, like a single-family home, they can do a JADU internally, like internal conversion for a JADU, and they can build a detached ADU, as long as it meets the streamlined detached ADU standard. So, let's say someone could do a four hundred square foot detached ADU in their backyard, and also a three hundred square foot internal conversion, that would meet the JADU standards.
All of that can be streamlined?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So long it's less than eight hundred... Oh, it's less than eight hundred square feet, right, if I remember? Correct, yeah.
And outside of that narrow world in which you have a junior ADU and a streamlined detached ADU, only one ADU or JADU is permitted on a single-family lot. So for all other types, we're limiting it to one per lot, but per state law, we have to allow this weird dual ADU when, when you have both a JADU and a detached streamlined ADU.
Related to that, just to understand some nuances real quick. So, is a tiny home on wheels considered an ADU?
It's a great question. So, I know in some jurisdictions, they have considered a tiny home on wheels to be like an ADU, and have processed it specifically that way. I don't believe that is required by state law, because a tiny home on wheels is not a permanent structure. And ADUs are really intended to be permanent independent living facilities. And so, we don't have anything in the code right now that explicitly prohibits tiny homes on wheels, but I believe that, based on the definitions, we wouldn't permit a tiny home on wheels. And so, we could add clarifying language if desired, but I think that, as drafted, the ordinance would not permit that.
Can you clarify the distinction between a tiny home on wheels and a mobile home?
And an RV, yep, that's my next question. I think that's a little bit of a gray area there. I, I think in our, the way we would enforce it, it would be as, similar to like a mobile home.
Yeah. And I should say, per state law, mobile homes specifically are considered accessory dwelling units. The distinction that I see is really when you take the wheels off, and you get rid of the safe for travel on roadways, and you put it on a permanent foundation, that's where you start to blur the line between a tiny home on wheels and a more permanent structure. And I think that's supported by state law.
True, unless you have detachable cinder blocks.
Yes. The gray area.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. And again, so setbacks are reduced to four feet for detached structures. Currently, with the way our ordinance, the ADU ordinance defers back to our accessory structure ordinance, which base the side and rear setbacks on wall height that's facing the, that, that... the, that respective lot line. We do give the option to be as close as three feet, but in that case, the applicant of the ADU would have to adhere to our accessory structure ordinance where, if they want to go to three feet, the wall height is limited to seven feet. Other than that, they can have a taller wall height at four feet if they choose to. And...
Can we require privacy protection?
Well, you can't have a two-story ADU. So that's the only time in our ordinance we would actually require privacy.
But if I'm at 16 feet on the maximum height, on a single story?
We can't require privacy screening. We continue to require it for the non-streamlined ADUs, but unfortunately, the city lacks discretion to impose privacy screenings for these streamlined categories.
Okay.
I have a question on the 16-foot height. So you could, you're going to measure from the existing grade to, okay. So you could technically dig down two feet and have a two-story, is that correct? Because you're measuring from the ground surface. So if I just dig down two feet, now I've got 18 feet, really. And so, I've got two stories.
And you're not taxed on the basement part, from what I understand?
Well, the basement, I mean, I don't believe in Sarah Krikor. The state bills don't discuss basement square footage, right? So, you know, we would count the basement as FAR.
And towards the requirement.
Yeah.
So you'd still have to meet the 800-square-foot requirement there.
But basements don't count for FAR today?
They do, in excess, yeah, for...
For ADUs?
Well, for detached, detached AD, accessory structures, basements do count for FAR.
Okay, so I could have some, so I could have something with a 400-square-foot footprint, have it two stories, get my 800, and then be, dig down two feet so that I can have the height requirement met, and do a flat, do a flat roof?
Well, we don't allow, so we have discretion not to allow. The state doesn't say you have to allow a new two-story. You can convert existing second-story or principal unit, or even accessory structure. But a brand-new detached ADU, you cannot have a, you can't make it, there's nothing obligating us to approve a two-story.
But do you, what can you say to, that they, to not approve it? I mean, it's within the 16-foot height limit. I don't understand, like, what legal basis would you have to deny it if they're, they're meeting the square footage requirements and they're meeting your height requirements? Or is that, I mean, something we can talk about another time?
Yeah, I think, I don't want to get us on too far on this point. Note that they still have to meet all building code requirements. And so I have questions about whether they'd be able to actually do that within that height limit. It's possible, but, yeah, so I don't have much further to say on that point right now.
Okay, well, one of the, the new territories for accessory dwelling uses, now that the state's allowing them within multifamily development, as we discussed earlier. And so, two types of ADUs within multifamily development is the internal conversion of non-livable space. And what does that mean, non-livable space? We define that as, like boiler rooms, passageways, and whatever else, too. So if someone has, I don't know, like a 30-unit apartment building, they can't subdivide or demise those 30 units to be 60 units or something like that. But if there's a parking structure next to the apartment complex, if there's an unused boiler room, as the example used in the state bills, they can convert those to accessory dwelling units, as long as they meet the building code, health and fire codes as well. They are able to do that.
So if I owned a fourplex and the hallway in between that takes the stairways up, right, or an eightplex, right? And I want to convert that hallway in between to become another unit and get four more units from two on top and two on the bottom, so I only provide it access, staircases to the other places as a door, I can do that, is what that's saying.
And you, your example is an eightplex or fourplex?
Sorry, I'm going to use a, I'm going to use an eightplex, right? So four here, four here. Normally, you have a staircase in the middle, and I want to convert the area in the staircase into two units on each floor. I can do that in this model.
Assuming so, yeah. It means the building code, but you also have to remember that can't exceed 25% of the existing...
It won't, the staircases don't, right? And so I provide staircases in for them on the side.
But the number of units you add is limited to 25%.
So, you still have to have ingress and egress that meets building code for your existing units.
I'll provide new stairs.
And we don't have to allow new stairs on the outside units. So we don't have to allow modifications to your existing multifamily building in order to allow a streamlined ADU to be built within that multifamily structure.
All right, we better be clear on these things, that's why.
But the 25% limit means you can only build two additional units?
Yes, exactly. So it's for an eightplex, you can only get up to two ADUs.
Is it a percentage of square foot or a percentage of units?
Percentage of units.
Got it, thank you. All right, are we going into business? Let's go.
Detached ADUs, you are allowed to detach accessory dwelling units any permitted lot. I do, I do have to correct myself on this presentation. It is 1,200, the limit is 1,200 square feet per ADU, not 800 square feet. I do apologize for that. And again, same as the, same as the, the single-family setback standard is four feet. So the next category is the non-streamlined ADUs and single-family development. These are ones we have a little bit more discretion on in terms of size and whatnot. There are two types of, of non-streamlined ADUs. You have the attached, which is the, is basically added square footage to an existing principal dwelling unit, and detached. The state says we can, that studios one-bedroom cannot exceed 850 square feet, and that more than one-bedroom cannot exceed 1,000 square feet. Actually, the state, I believe, says 1,200 square feet for, for multi-bedroom ADUs, but we do have discretion to say only 1,000 square feet. So we're taking a more conservative approach to just eliminate it to 1,000 square feet for the multi-bedroom ADUs. If you're...
Excuse me, where did the 1,000-square-foot number come from? Because I do recall seeing the 1,200 maybe a year or two ago.
Yeah, so it's in, it's in the news, state law, it's in Section 65852.2 subsection C. It's terrible that I know all these by heart, but it's been a lot. And that specifically now has a modification to the maximum size. It actually, in some ways, provides more clarity to state, or to cities about how they can regulate up to maximum sizes, and gave us that 850 for studio one-bedroom, and then the 1,000 for greater than one.
All right, thank you.
In many ways, it's actually more restrictive than what we have. If you want to go through all, any type of example that we can come up with, yeah, so it's maybe, it's consistent with our older ordinance, and like I said, some, in many ways, in some ways, more restrictive. Attached, attached to existing single-family dwellings, should exceed 50% of the existing single-family dwelling, which is consistent with what we had already, and that, that's just the habitable area, I believe, does not include the garage space. Four units, 800 square feet above, we do have limits on lot coverage, floor area ratio, and open space. So even non-streamlined ADUs under 800 square feet aren't affected by FAR lock coverage and those standards. But anything above, we do have limits on lot coverage, FAR, and an open space.
May I ask, what are the limits on lot coverage and how do they differ from just having a regular single-family home?
Good question. So, basically, 45% is the standard in Lebanon, R1 neighborhood, correct? So, that 45% would include the FAR or the footprint, or the enclosed area of the, of the, let's say, the ADU, or, and/or the attached ADU or the detached ADU, say. So if you come with an 805 detached ADU, that will be included in the, in the principal dwelling units, the square footage as well.
Okay, I'm going to have to do this slower. So, are you saying it's exactly the same, whether it's an R1 with the ADU or without it? The same amount of lot coverage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With the exception that we can't use lot coverage to drop someone down below 800 square feet.
Can you explain that again?
Sure. So, what state law says is that cities can still impose their FAR, their lot coverage, their open space requirements. However, property owners are entitled to build up to an 800-square-foot unit. And so, the example, a little bit hard doing math on the fly, but the example that I will give is, you have a 5,000-square-foot lot, and let's just assume for math purposes that they have a lot coverage requirement of 50%. And their existing single-family house is already at that 50% limit. So the existing single-family house is 2,500 square feet. If they come in with an ADU application for an attached ADU, before, we could say, well, I'm sorry, you're at the lot coverage requirement, you can't build your ADU. You're already at that exact maximum. But now, we have to allow them to build an ADU up to 800 square feet. But if they came in and said, I want a 1,000-foot, square-foot ADU, we would say, well, we're going to use the lot coverage to drop you back down to 800. Does that make sense? We could do lots of math problems, which we've done with staff.
The reason why I went down on that tangent about, about that issue is, because I was thinking today, which I mentioned earlier, about doing runoff flow from the lot and looking at, you know, it's a very simple equation. It's flow, Q, equals CIA, where C is your runoff coefficient, and it's point, around point two if you have grass, and then it's like point nine, you know, for a roof. And if you, if you're going to be converting too much of that property, so you're going to end up with much more runoff. So it's sounding like you're able to keep it restricted so that you wouldn't have that great of an impact from this, from this, these new laws?
Because the, because they're on, you're only allowed to get up to 800 square foot. It's not like someone could take their entire lot and cover it in an ADU. So we still will have some open space. It will just be smaller than our 50% or 45% coverage.
Would it be possible to impose a impervial surface restriction? Because that's not written in any of the legislation.
We, well...
Well, I, I think that would, I'm correct if I'm wrong, Sarah, that would be part of the lot coverage. I mean, you could, you could say that having a perviable surface or impervial surface is a lot coverage restriction.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So we could apply something similar, it would likely look similar to what we have for lot coverage for these non-streamlined ADUs. Unfortunately, we can't use lot coverage or impermeable surface or any other local development standards for streamlined.
Those would be the same restrictions if I were, you know, there's a landscaping restriction to get your permit passed. So it's the same restriction there that would exist otherwise, right? In terms of, you know, like concrete, impervious patio, that kind of thing.
So the bottom line is, I can't put a shut-up, but I can put an ADU in?
That's correct.
You could find a thousand loopholes to this thing to get what you want, but... Okay. All right. Some revisions to the draft ordinance that, you know, we go, again, this, we're going through this every day to see, just to ensure that we've, we've accomplished everything. And we also have a thousand questions, like I'm sure you guys do, too. This is, it's a lot, and Sarah's done a commendable job of walking us through the process. So a couple of things is that we want to ensure that any new ADU is really an independent living unit, that there's no connection with the, with the principal dwelling unit, and that someone's just not abusing the ADU ordinance to just get that man cave, just get that game room, just get that TV room, whatever else, too. So we added to, three tables in the ADU ordinance, language about separation from the principal dwelling unit. And so, they basically read the same with the exception of the first table, and I'll read out loud, if it's too hard to read from the audience, I do apologize. The conversion must result in an independent unit. With, with the exception of a JADU, no interior doors or other connections between the units are permitted. JADUs do allow some connection, especially if you're going to use your JADU to have shared bathroom facilities, you're going to need that internal connection anyway. But any other type of ADU, whether it be a streamlined internal conversion, that's not a JADU, or a detached ADU, streamlined, non-streamlined, or an attached ADU, there has to be some type of separation between the units.
May I rent out my ADU as an office, as an office space? In a commercial home office?
Well, to someone outside?
Yeah.
Well, you can't do, yeah, so to be a home occupation, to have a home occupation license, business license, you have to be the resident to do it. So I can't, so, yeah, I mean, that's, we're not changing that.
I'm just curious, I'm just asking that because...
I mean, you can do illegally.
I'm asking questions, I'm asking questions so that the, it's apparent to the public what all the options are and the implications, so...
No, I mean, that's, that's a whole different chapter. It's a home occupation chapter, and that's covered in there. Again, the Housing Commission heard this on January 10th of this year. A couple of comments, you know, as, as parking, the parking requirements become less and less for these ADUs, is there a way, their recommendation was for staff at some point, not necessarily before we go to council, but at some point in the near future, try to find ways to incentivize someone building ADU to provide the parking on site, if they could, and to incent, have some incentives in exchange for affordable deed restrictions on the ADU, too. You know, our recommendation is that the planning commission adopted the draft resolution, recommended the city council adopt an ordinance to find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA, and amend the chapters as, as stated on the slide. And our next public hearing dates, city council's February 18th, 2020. Pending council's approval of the first reading, we would go to March 3rd for the second reading. Any questions?
So we begin with the planning commission, any questions for staff? And then we'll open up for public comment, and then have some further discussion and a vote, I believe.
No, go ahead.
Commissioner Fung?
Yeah, excuse me. So, first of all, I think the last time this came up, it was actually as part of a, part of a different discussion, I had asked the question. The previous staff report had showed that, that short-term rentals were prohibited in ADUs as a result of the new legislation, which I think was not correct. So the first thing, I think that the staff report reads more correctly, the impact of the law is that the permit process prohibits short-term rentalist intended use. So I, so I want to thank you for clarifying that. I believe it's clarified. And, and then, and then just to identify that, you know, of course, I think it is clear that the state allows, you know, a local government to have, you know, full prohibition on short-term rental units in ADUs, but that is, that is city discretion, not, not forced by state law. So I just, just for the record, because I think that there would be some people who might, you know, protest that. Can we talk a little bit more about how the multifamily dwelling limit works? So for R2 and R3, it sounds like, my read of this was, that you could have, you could add two external, non-attached ADUs, or the, the, the number, the internal number. And so I'm curious, the intention there, it's conversion of spaces, do things like, if I wanted to have JADUs in those units, is that, do those count that way as well? Is that just complete, is it, this is just the conversion of external space, or unused space?
It's, you know, JADUs are only in the single-family types of them. So that's, yeah. So, converge, so in a multifamily, it would just be internal conversion?
Yeah, okay, so that, so that, so then in effect for a R2, you know, a duplex, or then they have the opportunity to have two non-attached ADUs, but, or the, the conversion of unused space?
Correct, correct.
Okay. I did want to ask about, this is an item that I've raised in the past, currently, both, well, currently ADUs count toward the RENA moderate numbers. I'm curious if that is any different under this?
I believe this can continue being a moderate.
Okay, and then, is that true for JADU as well?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, and then I'll just, as a, you know, as a comment that I've raised before, that, you know, I actually don't think it's appropriate that non, you know, non-rent restricted, you know, if there's, does not exist a affordable deed restriction on the property, that I think it's probably inappropriate that those be counted toward the RENA moderate number. Although, counting it toward the RENA market rate units is, I would have no objection to. And then I'm curious, do you believe there are any changes? I believe the staff report basically was saying that there are no changes as a result of the new laws to the construction of attached ADUs. Is that correct or not from prior?
Just made it more lenient, I believe, too. I mean, attached ADUs, again, aren't streamlined, but again, the standards have become more lenient in most cases.
Right. So, so the actual, we actually did a numeric example where you were adding 800 square feet, you know, basically, it was a bonus of 800 square feet onto the allowable FAR. So the, you know, the alternative kind of case is, if I had something that was going to be, if I, if we're going to add 800 square feet of attached ADU, and there was 200 hangovers, so I had 600, 600 square feet of available FAR capacity, then, then that would be an example of, of, it's not streamlined, but it's, it's allowed under the new, under the law, the change in the laws here.
Correct, and it wouldn't be affecting your FAR.
Okay, I mean, I would, you know, just as a side comment, so in some respects, I maybe should hold these until after the public comment, but just a side comment because we're in that territory. Because FAR applies more to, you know, it has more of an effect on attached ADUs, that right now, it's a, I believe in a somewhat disadvantaged state, and I suspect for most people, that would actually be an area where you would want to create an incentive, because you stay closer to the original FAR, the original building mass, than you would under the detached. So that's just a consideration for what's written in there. Yeah?
So I, I want to make sure that we're clear, that the FAR restrictions can't be applied to impact the ADU, but let's say someone was under their FAR by 800 square feet, and they came in and built an 800-square-foot ADU, they couldn't then say, well, my ADU was the part that was counting towards that 800, I now get to build an 800-square-foot extension of my house, in my, you know, the extension of my single-family house. So it's only, our limitations of applying FAR are only for the permit for the accessory dwelling unit.
Everything streamlined.
Everything streamlined is not covered at that point in time, right?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Although, just, just for the purpose of, you know, this hypothetical, if I, if I made those applications in the opposite order, then I could do that.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Just two more, I think. One of them was that there was previously, there was for attached ADUs, there was a conversion factor of 150 feet that you could add to create the external entry. Is that, is that not, it doesn't appear to be present here?
Yeah, it's in there. If you go to the draft resolution, should be under the streamlined internal conversion.
Oh, okay.
So we do allow for 150-foot, we will still consider it an internal conversion if you add under 150, 150 square feet, as long as it's for access purposes, too. In our discussion with the building department, there's a, well, is there any scenario that would, that you would see this? And they're really hard-pressed to find a scenario that where you would need 150 square foot, or 140 square foot addition to facilitate access of internal conversion, so...
Covered walkway with a screened door?
If it's required. That's the thing, if it's required.
Find a medical reason. Good. And that, I think that's it for me at this time.
I do want to clarify, on the 150 square foot, that addition is only for additions to accessory structures, it's actually not for the additions to the principal residence.
Separate line of thought, can I apply rental rate restrictions on ADUs? The city, can I, if ADUs go up, can I apply certain types of requirements, like rental rate restrictions, or certain percentage for any kind of below-market rate, or can I, can I say, okay, you know, to pass that, can I apply that on top of that?
I don't believe so with respect to the streamlined accessory dwelling units, it's possible with respect to the, the non-streamlined, I would have to look into that more. I will note that some cities I've seen, much in line with the recommendations from the Housing Commission, have created significant incentives for accessory dwelling units that do meet, you know, that agree to that, but it's not a requirement.
Okay. And it's super hypothetical, but just to illustrate a point and exaggerate it, I could create a corporation that goes out and plops anything under 800 in a streamlined ADU, go to every neighborhood, go to every neighbor in my neighborhood and say, let me drop an ADU here, I will manage, operate, run it like a VBRO for you, and be able to get away with it.
Well, that would be a short-term rental.
Yeah.
But it would be a long-term, I'm going to set up, let's not do VBRO, but that's, I'll be a rental leasing company and just drop containers everywhere in everybody's home, so that they can just manage this. So I'll drop 100 containers, first 100 folks take it for free, I'll give you a 50% cut, and we'll go in. I mean, that's basically what this law allows me to do.
Um, yes.
You all want to get into business now? I mean, this is basically what we've got here, I mean...
Whether that will happen, I think is somewhat far-fetched, but we are living in new times.
There's a lot of money out there. That's a new, we work for, I'm just kidding, but...
Well, one thing on that, too, for a JADU also, one of, if you do a JADU, one of those units has to be occupied by the owner of the principal dwelling unit.
I'll create a joint venture agreement. No, I'm just telling you, I mean, I just want people to understand the implications of this law, what is it going to do to single-family home neighborhoods, and what it means to the R1 environment, and what it means to density, and what it might mean to your quality of life. I just really wanted to point that out, so...
Yeah.
Was there a time limit for these, for these laws, you know, do they expire in 2025, something like that?
The only one that I know that has a sunset clause is the owner occupancy requirement for all ADUs, where you have to require someone to either, the property owner to either live in the ADU or the principal dwelling unit.
And that's for detached, right?
That's for any ADU.
Okay.
Yeah, and, but that requirement for JDUs is on sunset, I believe, that one's, as for that, in perpetuity, unless changed.
Commissioner Saxina, would you like to make some comments?
No, I really don't have any comments, I think.
Okay. Commissioner Takahashi?
Question, the four-foot setback, that's in the legislation. Yeah, just want to confirm that.
Okay, so my questions have been covered, I'd like to open this up for public comment, and we first have Jennifer Griffin.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I have never in 25 years seen such unconstitutional laws. I didn't get to vote on this. This is a clear abuse of property rights in the state. This is a land grab, it is a political seizure, it has happened all over the state. Any senators that wrote these bills, aided and abetted, ought to be recalled immediately. We need to repeal every single one of these ADU bills, they are unconstitutional. We fought for 20 years in my city to stabilize the FARs, and now, with one sign of the governor in October, we have invalidated everything? Are there no laws left in California? This is not the future that we saw 20 years ago, or 10 years ago, or five years ago. This is politicians who hate their constituents in the state, they are abusing their constituents, there are senators that used their cities to get to a level of power in Sacramento. Scott Weiner has used San Francisco as a stepping stone to get power in Sacramento and turned his back on San Francisco. I cannot begin to say how horrifying these bills are. A four-foot setback from the back property line, 16 feet tall, do you realize there are five-foot PG&E clearances on many property lines? So we're going to build ADUs on top of PG&E easements? That means that every single lot is going to have to be recertified to check the PG&E clearances. Okay, so if the state wanted to screw up life in the state, they have done it. This is the worst group abuse of power in California in 175 years. I have never even seen anything like this. This is a power grab. I, I can't condone this, these are completely unconstitutional. This affects property value, it affects safety, you can have ADUs in apartment complexes, that little gym came up, that only profits the apartment owner, it doesn't help anyone. And what about seniors now that are grappling with their HOAs being limited? Oh, so we allow ADUs in HOA communities, but we limit the board. Oh, how orchestrated is that? This is such a land grab, and it's such a big bogus farce. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Lisa Warren.
Hi, I just have a clarification question. On one of the slides, it was the slide before the non-streamline, where it, anyway, it referred to two ADUs per lot, or whatever it said. And I remember, I thought here, but also in an LRC meeting when they were reviewing all these bills before they were passed or right after they were passed, correct me if I'm wrong, it has, you can have one ADU and one junior ADU, you cannot have two ADUs, is that correct? Can you go back to that slide and see if that, if it's right, then? It just said two ADUs, and maybe I'm confusing something.
So on the single-family, in single-family lots, you can have one streamlined detached ADU and one JADU.
Okay, I think it was before, there was somewhere it said two.
Yeah, on the multifamily streamline, you can have two.
Oh, okay, thank you for that. I was panicked. Could you tell? And then, as far as the four-foot setback, can there be some clarification for me on that? It's from the side property line, the back property line, what's the limit of the setback between structures?
Chair, may I answer that?
Of course.
It's still, it's still five, no, it's still five feet eve to eve, so that, so remember that...
Okay, eve to eve, five feet?
Yeah.
Like it's always been, probably?
Yes.
And then, is that four feet eve to property line, or wall to property line?
Wall.
Holy crap, okay, thank you.
Thank you, that closes the public comment on item five, and we will have our discussion.
Sure, if I may, I think it may be better in the future reference to just collect the public comment, and if you wish for staff to respond to a certain portion of the public comment, we can certainly do that, as opposed to having a dialogue with the public.
Okay, thank you. You know, I do have one question, and that was regarding the easements, are, I would assume that you are not allowed to build over those easements.
That's correct. So if there's a public utility easement, that's 10 feet wide in your rear, in your rear lot line, next to your rear lot line, you can't build within that.
I do, perhaps, a suggestion before this goes to City Council would be that some worst-case scenario diagrams, perhaps, could be made for the City Council, because I think that's really ultimately what people want to know, it's like, how, how big can, can you build, how close to the property line, how tall can it be? And then, what, it doesn't sound like there's any restrictions that we can do in terms of privacy requirements, like, like we can't ask for obscured glass, anything like that, so that people understand that. And unfortunately, I think ideally, we should have had this information when these, when these were just bills, been before they were passed, so that we could have been able to write something, or suggest that City Council write something, to have them amended, perhaps, to make them more amenable to the residents.
I just have a general legal question, Chair Moore, can I ask? So a general legal question, and this goes to a point that was raised in the public and in many of these situations, if we truly have a non-constitutional law that comes to us, right, and, and we're asked to be forcing it into our municipal code when the constitutionality has not been proven at the moment, are we required to adopt this? Like, what's the precedent that allows to say, that's unconstitutional? We would like to create a sanctuary city against X because it's unconstitutional? Like, can you do something like that?
Sure. So I believe the proper path forward in that would be to seek judicial recourse and to, to ask for declaratory judgment from the courts. To be clear, I don't see anything in this law that is unconstitutional. I understand that there's concerns about the lack of control, lack of local control, and it is shifting the balance between what is traditionally seen as municipal control over land use, and what is traditionally seen as state control over land use. However, I don't believe this falls outside of the scope of what is permitted in that balance. And so, that's my evaluation, I haven't seen any move from cities to try and challenge this, but we can keep you apprised if something does come up.
Okay, no, it's good for this and future bills that are coming down the pike, because I think there are different interpretations of land use rights right now, so thank you.
Sarah, I was wondering if you have some estimate for the, I'm sorry to ask this, for the, for the cost of analysis of this collection of laws, just on the ADUs, for the city, because I know we have a very sophisticated legal team that has been looking at it, and I'm wondering, and then multiplied across all the cities in the state, what, what have these actually cost us, just in terms of legal analysis?
Yeah, so this is one of the places where Cupertino is an advantage of having a city attorney that also represents other cities, so I have been working on ADU ordinances for four jurisdictions, and so you kind of get to share in the costs of at least the underlying analysis, but I will tell you that a significant portion of my time has, over the last three months, has been spent on ADU-related ordinances for multiple jurisdictions. And I suspect that as we move from drafting ordinances into implementations, there will be continued legal questions, because these laws are so unclear. So I, it's a question that I've been thinking about, too, and whether, apologies for deviating slightly outside of the realm of pure legal advice, but because you posed the question, you know, it is a significant amount of time and resources spent in updating codes, and whether that could be allocated differently is a question, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Takahashi, do you have any further comments?
No.
Commissioner Saxina?
Nope.
Vice Chair?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Fung?
So I was just gonna, you know, I think that, you know, we have a longstanding general plan, general plan policy to incentivize the creation of ADUs. So, you know, I think that in some respects, I mean, you know, this is, this is an exercise of that, I think that, you know, I believe that the historical permits over the last, you know, five years have been such small numbers, that even if you had a 10x increase, you're talking about a 1% overall increase on the number of dwelling units in the city. So I think that, I suspect that, that, you know, there are many different ways that we can pursue addressing housing, I think the constitutionality of the law is somewhat founded in the finding from the Assembly that there is a housing crisis. So I think that, I think this is, you know, relatively low-impact way to do this without, you know, without massive changes to the way your neighborhood appears, or, you know, to the amount of, you know, the amount of traffic there. While, you know, one of the things that's different than, than on kind of a larger-scale project, is that the homeowners are the ones who, who gain the revenue from this, you know, gain the value from that, and that's, you know, as, as a city government, I think, you know, to allow that to those who want to do that is a good thing. So, let's see, so, so my main part was just to underline that, that I think, you know, as a comment to take from, from me at least, that, you know, that I believe that this will lead to more ADUs, but probably not a massive impact. The other thing I would also say is that I, this may not be the appropriate time to discuss the, the counting of these ADU units as, you know, in the RENA guideline against, you know, against the affordable category, you know, of course, that's in review as well, so there's an opportunity to make that right. I have no objection to counting, counting ADUs as, as part of the market rate, but I think that, I think that that's actually something that's, the treatment of that is... But I think that, I think that that's actually something that's, the treatment of that is, is ranked, you know, is effectively as affordable units where there is no deed restriction on rent is probably something that we should endeavor to remove. Thanks.
I do have a question for staff. Where did the affordable by design definition come from? Is that from HCD that the, that it would be counted in that way? So there should be some statute that's, that's creating this or some guideline from HCD? Just wondering where the source of that is.
I don't have that available right now, but I'm sure by, by council, if you want, including the council presentation, we can, we can find that.
In the previous HCD technical guidance, this was on, two years ago, their technical guidance specifically called ADUs affordable by design. It may be elsewhere as well, but I know it's at least in that HCD document.
Yeah, it hasn't been codified, but they've said it.
I think the ADUs, that, that ADUs are affordable by design is something that's been longstanding from HCD. But whether that qualifies them to count, you know, in the moderate RENA is, is a different thing entirely. And, and in fact, I mean, you know, it makes it challenging if you, well, I don't know, if you wanted to accept a restriction to address a different level or... No, actually, that's another area that, you know, not part of the, not part of the resolution, but that's something for the city to consider, you know, if, you know, if there was a path where they would want to offer some sort of incentive for, you know, for affordable deed restriction. And that's, maybe that's actually in the housing policy rather than, rather than here. But that's, again, something where I think there is an opportunity there for that to, to work quite well.
Just a clarification. Would that be in any way considered rent control if you were essentially regulating maximum rents? In which case, I think you're going into a whole another legal entanglement.
Yeah, that, that's accurate. Specifically, if you were, rent control is usually used to refer to the rental market. I think here we could, well, I mean, these are all going to be rentals, so...
Right, all rentals, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yes.
But they're new, so from a rent, rent control standpoint, that wouldn't apply for 15 years or whatever.
Yeah, but they're actually technically, so ADUs don't, aren't protected under the new AB 1482 statewide rent control because they're part of a single-family residence, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation, recommended items. I'll second that.
Vote with your lights.
Just, as part of the motion, we did have, staff did have some recommended revisions to the red lines, so if you incorporate that.
And incorporate the staff revisions.
Would we like to have a full reading of the resolution for this motion or is the abbreviated form adequate? Meaning, do we need to read this entire paragraph to be more accurate?
Can you, do you want to bring that slide back up? That maybe that's...
You should read at least the resolution number.
Okay, is this, it doesn't have a resolution number?
It doesn't.
Yeah, it was... Thought there was on the...
It's on there.
Slides or the MCA.
MCA 201804.
Oh, very good. Okay, Vice Chair, would you like to read it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, whoa, that's flying through fast, MCA 20...
In fact, yeah.
amend the chapter...
Vice Chair, if you could actually include the SEQA provision in the reading.
I'd like to make the recommendation that we find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA and amend chapter 19.112 accessory dwelling units, chapter 1920 permitted, condition-excluded uses in agriculture and residential zones, and chapter 19.08 definition of the Modneetsbook Code. As amended. Is there a second?
I second?
Yeah. I could, I seconded it again. Okay. All right.
Please vote with your lights. And the motion carries 5-0 unanimous. We are going to take a 10-minute break and then return. Thank you.
Welcome back to the Cupertino Planning Commission meeting. We are at new business item six, the subject Planning Commission Work Program for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, recommended action, discuss topics and ideas to recommend that the city council incorporate into the planning commission's work program for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, and we will begin with a staff report.
Chair Moore, I think you basically said everything I was gonna say. I don't actually have a PowerPoint for you. I think we have some attachments, but basically you said it so adequately, that's exactly why we're here today is in this progress process to basically seek planning commission's input on any items that you wish for the department to develop. Once we collect all the input from all the commissions, this is for all the departments, the directors of each department will discuss with the city manager, discuss resources, and come up with a priority. What I ask for you tonight, if you could, is at least come to a consensus to a few top items that you think the commission wish for the department to pursue. That doesn't limit you on the number of items you wish to be placed for consideration, right? But I think there should be some consensus on at least the top three or something like that, but I'm happy to answer any questions if any.
Okay, so I would like to begin with looking at the fiscal year 2019 to 20 work plan program which we had, and we can also go over what progress was made in that. So there was a very, very excellent spreadsheet in the, in the package, I believe it's item three.
Yeah, so I can actually try to pull that up. Am I close? This is referring to? Sure, so, so we, the city, with the city manager will be going through the effort of looking at these items and addressing them and identifying the completeness of each item through an exercise and present them to the city, city council at upcoming special meeting, but I'm happy to kind of go over these with you as well. I would rather not to spend too much time on it if we don't have to, since it's still kind of mid-year, we're not quite at the end of fiscal year yet, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, so we can probably just go through the project titles. It's about three pages long and we, there, there are not that many, you know, different projects to look at, so we can probably go through this pretty quickly, at least get a sense if we have actually completed a project or, or not, because we have the current status column already prepared for us. If you would just read through the project title list and the current status.
Sure, so the first item on the project title list is incentives to build accessory dwelling unit ADUs. The objective of this is to obviously provide some kind of incentive to build ADUs. As you've seen through presentation, we provided tonight some updates and also some potentially looking at some fee adjustments, hopefully that will provide some incentives to, to build more and more ADUs as well. And the second one, we have the legislative update on ADU units, and that's also kind of part, partly what you've seen tonight as well, we kind of put these two kind of together. Obviously, that's a continu- continuous item, we'll keep coming back, and through this particular experience with you, we will bring it back probably towards the end of, of each year or beginning of the next year, anticipating future legislations being passed, so. So that would be, we're hoping that would be ongoing item, whether we need to put ongoing items or efforts on the work program or not, that's something that we have to kind of think about, because if it becomes our standard practice and operation, then we may not be on the work program. Next one is the update to the municipal code, provide parking incentives. This one, council has placed on the work program, but put a hold on it just based on the shared amount of items that we have on the work program for our department. It's pretty, I would say, massive for the kind of resource we have, so this is kind of put on hold, we can continue to roll this over to the next year's work program if commission wishes to do that, we can consider that as well. So this one, we have not done, it's on hold, okay? And stop me anytime if you guys have any questions. Next one, we have penalties for violation of conditions approval. This one's in progress, but we are looking to bring this to a public meeting in upcoming meetings, so this should be concluded prior to the end of the current fiscal year. This, this one right here, this is the for co-enforcement and best practices. So you haven't actually seen a draft or a study session of this, we've been working very closely with the city attorney's office, making sure that we do meet all legal requirements, and so we will bring, we're estimating bring that back and completing this before the end of fiscal year.
With regards to this item, is there a fairly simple, you know, here's the problem that we're trying to solve by, you know, with this, you know, statement that you can make about it?
Sure, I think the idea is, is co-enforcement in, in the city is, could sometimes be a challenging exercise, so we're looking at increasing, potentially increasing the penalties so that we have better, a better tool, leverage, if you will, to, to request for voluntary compliance. So that's really kind of one of the goals to have, and also there are a lot, a lot of other items such as providing entrance to, to the units and things like that, is just to name a couple that comes off the top of my head.
Okay, right, thank you.
Short-term rentals, you guys have heard that last, at the last hearing, I think we're going forward with your recommendation and some modifications to city council this, I believe, late spring, so this will be completed by the end of fiscal year. Part of city plan, this one is also on hold, there's been a lot of discussions on this one, so we're, we're hoping sometime in the very near future, we'll have the resources to do sort of complete evaluation overhaul of this particular item, but this has been on hold of anyone who's been tracking our work program over the years, been on hold for many years, but we're hoping to get to this soon. We have the review and update general plan, this one, you've seen part of it through the exercises and previously, and sort of kind of morphed into a little bit of what we're, we'll be doing on the next item as well, and something we've been continuing to do for the last few months and also continue on for the next month or so. So you have been seeing this, obviously, we're anticipating for this to, or has to kind of finalize by the end of fiscal year, end of June. Develop, development accountability, this is one of the priority setting items, the task was to analyze methods to somehow limit the implementation timeline, we're kind of looking at this, I believe we're still studying and researching on best practices, whether it's DA agreements through the condition of approval, so we have not had an opportunity to take this any further in terms of study session, things like that's one item that, even though it's a priority item, we're still currently working on, on developing that. Question?
Yes, I'm just kind of wondering, so it says analyze methods to limit the implementation timeline for entitled slash future projects and encourage development. So I was wondering, you know, who suggested this item, and what is it that they're trying to solve, and is there, is there a size of the project that is targeted, what, you know, a little more about this, what is, what is this?
Sure, great, great question, I can't recall exactly the individual that actually brought up this one as a suggestion, all I know is through the exercise that council had last year, the goal-setting exercise we had last year at Quinlan Center, this was placed on their, our work program to, to evaluate, so we're sort of still in the process of researching and developing, working out some ideas, but we're not, we're not close to coming to you yet.
Just to clarify, I believe the, the main thrust of this item is around some projects are entitled with a long development agreement, and that was, you know, the issue raised was that
That's correct.
The Hamptons, the Hamptons has a long, long tail to.
That's correct, not, not to single out any one particular project, but that particular project does have a long DA, that's correct, so that, that is an example, but generally speaking, I think in the region, we are looking at projects that are taking longer to build, and there's some economy involved, some cost, some labor and cost of land and things like that, so it's, it's a little challenging coming up with a set of tools or methods that we can use as leverage to work with the developers, so this one's taking a little bit longer.
And then just on the, the prior point, just as a sideline, I don't believe we've had any development, any projects come with a development agreement in the time, you know, the past year, so not really in, not really an issue where that would have been applied.
Well, the hotels, I believe, had development agreements.
They have DA?
Yeah, they had a DA, obviously not quite extensive as, as the Hamptons that you mentioned as an example, but yeah, they had DAs. Okay. This one, I believe this one was recommended by one of the commissioners for comparative studies of design standards for mixed-use development and, and/or high-density residential guidelines, so, and this one is just evaluating our existing standards, policy, and also compare with industry standards. So we are concluding our research and compiling data right now, so this one, for sure, we'll be able to come back to, to present our findings. So this one, the goal is just kind of a production of a matrix and description each result, description each results, and we kind of have a healthy discussion about that. So this one, for sure, we'll have, we'll be back before the end of fiscal year. Dark sky, dark sky policy and bird safe design guidelines, we'll kind of group these two into one category, because in many, many cases, they're, they're sort of very, very related, and if you haven't already received, you should have been receiving our citywide postcard for a public outreach meeting, I will say that we're, we're taking a more creative design approach for that particular postcard to kind of gather some additional interest for city government, so that's something we've kind of been working on with our planning team and planning manager as well. So that, that for sure, again, going to come back to you and the city council prior to the end of fiscal year in June. I think the last item speaks for itself, and we completed an item some months ago, so. And that concludes our lengthy list of work programs for the current fiscal year that ends at the end of June.
Okay, so we, there's a number of items which are not completed on the list, so we could collect those perhaps, and have those, you know, be like the core of, of where we begin, and then we're going to have some discussion here, open it up for public comment, and then we'll have an opportunity to form our list, they wanted 10 items, and the top three, what I'm a little bit concerned about is like, for instance, we've got the general plan update and review, and in the municipal code, that, that is our duty, so should it be on, as a work plan item when it's, you know, it's codified that that's what we're supposed to do, do we lose, you know, one of our top three slots simply by having to, you know, being forced to put that on our list?
Yeah, I, I think that's something you, you, you can discuss, it certainly is our standard sort of operational and standard project, but the commission can say that this particular standard project to us is, has extra value and importance, and we want to highlight it. If you don't want to highlight as your top three, you can certainly highlight as your top 10, so, so that it makes you sure that, again, that list doesn't expire, it's not that we're just gonna throw away the list, right, we're gonna keep that list, so it'll be, it will be kept on record that that's an item that's of importance to you, and then making sure our department does proceed with completing that item.
I mean, technically, you could just have one item that says general plan, because it covers everything.
Sure.
And.
Up to the planning commission.
And, and, right, and we could leave it really ambiguous and vague, and just to add in things as the year goes on, but.
We're just here to take notes, so you let us know.
So my comment on that would be that making things vague generally doesn't help them get done. I think that what I would, what I would suggest, though, is that I think that because that is close to the core charter of the planning commission, that I would hate to waste, you know, the top three items that are getting the most consideration on that, however, I think that that, this is actually driven from your side as to how mu, you know, how much funding you can devote to that effort. I think that we've spent much, much more staff time on this this year than we would in, you know, under normal circumstances, so, so that would, you know, that kind of warrants it being higher in the list, but I would hope we could prioritize it downward.
Commissioner Takahashi, do you have some comments?
I mean, given it's, it's deemed a key element of, of our responsibility, does it, I guess, just debating whether or not it does need to be issued as a priority, given we're, we're going to go through that process, so.
If I may, I think there was a higher urgency this past year for this particular item in light of projects that have been around the city, one large one in particular, so I think maybe that was a way to kind of highlight this and getting the objective standards and those kind of things moving forward, so.
I would also add that, you know, the, those are the points of the, of the general plan that, you know, will still be the general plan next year, so I, I would hope that we don't try to, you know, make this a regular, you know, spend five or six meetings going through, going through the document where it, it won't really change, you know, from year to year. It's still, still an item of, still an item of, you know, that, something that we need to focus on, again, I just would not prioritize it as a high one.
Vice Chair?
I think we're, I think we're in agreement, I mean, that's, that's part of our standard duties, but there are some things that we will pull out, that maybe, that might be a unique area out of there. For example, for me, one of the things I'm very worried about is having food deserts, taking available shopping center and commercial areas that suddenly become residential with not enough food for a neighborhood, or people need to see a doctor's office, or dental office, or pharmacy, and, and that's one of the areas I think we are going to face a crisis when we have lots of jobs, lots of homes, but no places to buy food, no places to see a doctor, no places to get basic services, and more importantly, no places to get medicine. So that's, you know, that would be one of those things I'd pull out, but yes, it's part of our job is, is reviewing the general plan. And those would be like, you know, you know, more than LU5, let's see where, I'll look for it, LU51, and then some of the areas like LU25 with these weird non-conforming, I don't know what you call these things, LU261, right, non, other non-residential mixed-use special areas that suddenly get usurped, like Tin Tin Plaza, or Foothill Market, or 7-Eleven at Bub, like those were to disappear, I mean, I think those are gonna create some issues, so I just, I think that's, you know, that's one thing I'd pull out of there.
So how do we want to handle this? Do we want to start adding, adding our additional ideas to the work plan now and then, and then add, then have the public comment, bring it, bring it all together, and then
That's good, sure.
Try to order things up? Okay, let's do that, and would anyone like to go first?
I think I gave mine, I mean, that's, that's the main one for me, so, just making sure we preserve places that support activities of daily living, so.
So I've got a few, some of them are pretty small, and some of them are pretty big.
So we can continue, so as you, as you're speaking, you're gonna see me frantically typing, I'm gonna do my best to, to capture these things in the new project task column. At the end of all your items, I'll put this on the overhead, and we can go through the exercises of coming up some objectives, if you will, how has been, how, how does it being amended in this case, be playing commission, for example, and your estimate, your best guess of resources that may be needed, whether it be a number of hours or people and whatnot, so we'll go through the excess at the, at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so the first one is a relatively small one, and small in scope, but actually, I think quite a lot of impact, that was to look at the changes, changes to balcony and upper floor deck regulate, regulations. We have this repeating problem that comes up here, the current, the current plan says that an upper floor deck doesn't count toward, toward FAR or, you know, FAR or the living space, we oughta, we oughta take a look at that. The next item, another one that we have regularly received, had hearings for, this is to look at the default hours for conditional use, so I suggest that we would investigate looking at the current conditional use categories, and to see whether the hours are appropriate or whether they should be amended. And the examples here that would be, the one that we regularly see would be coffee shops opening before 7:00 AM, things like gyms. The next one is on July 20, on July 1st of this year, EIRs will, will be driven with VMT rather than level of service. I think I've asked the last two years that we have a review on that to talk a little about, there are design implications for designing for VMT, and I think it's appropriate that we have a session to talk about that. Now, it's interesting, right, we can't, maybe that's almost a request for this, this fiscal year, because by the time it's in next year, we're already, we're already under that, that change in the law. Then to get up to a little bit bigger one, this one might be a little early, but I think that, I think that it's important to start talking about the housing element. In 2023, we'll start a new RENA cycle, but that actually means that we'll have to be working, you know, that means an adoption in 2022, which means you probably have to start working on it in 2021, which is sort of, you know, the next fiscal year. So I think that, you know, I, I believe from my read on, you know, how things are looking here, that we're likely to see a larger number, we're likely to see fewer places to develop in, so, so I would, I think I would, I think that, that this is an area that's important to start studying early, to understand how we would meet the RENA requirement of the next housing element cycle. In particular, there's a kind of recurring mistake that, that the city makes in planning, that is to treat the RENA minimums as maximums. So one of the problems that you have is that, that, for instance, if the inclusionary affordable rate is 15%. So one of the problems that you have is that, that, for instance, if the inclusionary affordable rate is 15%, you can't, and, and the RENA requirement is four, is a thousand, but it's actually eight hundred affordable units, BMR units, then it is not going to be sufficient ever to entitle just enough, not just enough housing build to catch a one thousand or fourteen hundred. You actually need to be probably a three thousand to make that, to make that number. So there needs to be a reconciliation there about how to do that so that we can effectively have a chance at meeting the RENA requirement. This is controversial and that's why it's worth talking about way in advance. This is one of the areas where Santa Clara has actually strangely made quite a lot of progress there. And, and so it, we ought to do something where we don't come up, you know, I think out of the pipe, the city had a RENA requirement of thousand twenty-four or so, entitled fourteen hundred. And then out of the pipe with the, with the entitlements that were granted, you were, it was already impossible to meet the actual production of affordable housing. Then the final one that I had on here from my list would be to look at city transit needs. And this has popped up in the past to look at, to look at what, you know, to make sure that we're in sync and communicating with VTA about what the city's needs are. And then I think that there are a number of things that are happening right now in relation to, well, one of the things is Plan B area twenty fifty is doing something that they call the Horizon Initiative, where they're reviewing projects, projects that will be part of the, the next cycle. Those include things, Transform, the Transform Nonprofit has worked on a thing called the Regional Express Plan, REX, which is, actually would include a transit hub in Cupertino in their plan. That's one of the things that's, that's been adopted into the, the Horizon, Horizon Initiative took in a number of projects for, for consideration as part of the overall plan. That was one of them. So I think it would be good to at least start to think about where those things are and, and, you know, what, what our role is in, in participating with those things. That the Horizon goals were affordable, connected, diverse, healthy and vibrant. You know, those are all things that, that, you know, we need to figure out what is, what is the way for that to play out right for Cupertino.
So who would like to go next?
So in terms of intersecting with kind of a lot of the elements that Commissioner Feng just brought up, I guess it's, it's more of a study of the transportation system in the city. So there's a lot of different elements and really understanding what's that impact on land use. So, so a more global study of transportation planning and what are the current transportation organizations' plans and how do they intersect with, with what we think our needs are? And so I think that is, is one that I would advocate for. Another one is R1 second story additions. Those tend to come to us as a relatively common element because there's a lot of contention in the neighborhood associated with that. So if there's anything we can do to, to mitigate that and/or make that process less contentious. I don't know if there's a way to do that, but, you know, clearly there, I don't know, it's probably been four or five that I can remember now. And, and anyway, that, that was another one. Agree with Commissioner Feng on, on the, on the housing element, getting started on that earlier. I guess, how do we, is there any way to somewhat anticipate what our allocation might be? That's a, right, is it, are we talking 20% increase or are we talking 5X type of increase? Because understanding at least where we think that might end up will, will at least give us some runway to figure out what, what is the realm of the possible. But I would agree, starting sooner rather than later would be a, a good thing. And that's, oh, the VMT, that was interesting too. I think that's a. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Takahashi. Commissioner Wong, Vice Chair?
I think I said most of what was important there. I think there's one other element that I've always wanted to know, which is, would it make sense at some point for the planning commission to look at oversight over public works? And, and I think that's a big issue and a big conversation because right now, public works has no oversight. And if there's a logical place for that, that might come in through the planning commission and public, and rename kind of area, so.
Vice Chair, do you have something more specific that you, like a problem that you would be trying to solve with that? Or what you're, what you're thinking about?
I'm thinking about, because a lot of what we do is, is tied back. And, and part of the reason is the alignment and in terms of infrastructure with what we're trying to do with planning. So anything from, you know, streetlights to anything back to what we do with roadways and transportation back to that area, especially what both Commissioner Feng and Commissioner Takahashi have been talking about. Those things don't have citizen oversight, right? And you see that in some city councils and some planning commissions where, where public works is part of planning and others it's broken out and split out. Today, we have no oversight today for public works. So just something to think about. And then the additional thing I said earlier about avoiding food deserts and preserving those types of areas and space for, for activities of daily living, essential services, from grocery to healthcare to being able to access food convenience.
Okay, so I, I agree with the, with the VMT issue and a study session I definitely think is in order. I am also concerned with the RENA cycle and I think that our numbers are going to be shocking and, and difficult to achieve. One, one potential issue that we might have with it is that if they're basing it off of projected jobs growth in Cupertino, that I, that we, I are currently kind of maxed out with our job growth. We don't have a large parcel like we did with the Apple headquarters change there. And we're, you know, we are looking at, at Valco, but the, the, the city council removed the office component and they would need to do some kinds of negotiation to put that back. So I'm, I, I could, you, we could potentially have RENA numbers which have no connection to job growth in the city, that we have RENA numbers which are far greater than, than what we're, we're going to be seeing coming down the pipe. With that, there was a study session on homelessness for city council last week and that might be something that we would take an interest in, an interest in. There, to my knowledge, there's only one home for victims of domestic violence in the area which we are supporting. And I would like to see us look into expanding that. Also, a mental health support in the community, I don't know what we can do with that. And there is another housing law coming through the pipes right now, which was mentioned by Jennifer Griffin, and that is the SB fifty law. And we might want to be reviewing that should it get passed through. And again, any other, any other legislation like we had last year, if we're going to be looking at another slew of housing laws, that we need to get on top of those and make our comments early and be looking at it to see if there are issues with the law, which, which we need to address. Let's see, I'm also concerned about our fiscal future and this, this connects into a few things. One of them being, you know, with the new, the new housing laws, if the city is, is going to be limited for what it can build that will generate income, if we're going to be losing space. So that, I think maybe a study session which would get into the, the economics of the city could help. And I'd like to see an infrastructure assessment that would go over sewer, water and street and traffic. So for instance, you know, what's going on with our local sewage treatment plants? You know, where are they located? What can, what condition are they in? When are they going to need to be replaced? Same with the water and the water treatment. And we might want to have some ideas about, for instance, with the tertiary treated water, we might want to have it, have a policy or, or support a policy that we would be doing groundwater recharge with that. Because it's, it's very expensive and if you're going to be increasing the population, do you, what do we think? Does it need to be watering landscape or being put in the groundwater for wells and for people to be drinking? And then, of course, we're, I think we're all agreement on looking at the street and, and traffic and that turns into a whole, a whole study on that. And then, you know, a little local issue that we've had come up is with school traffic. And there's, you know, I've heard some proposal about altering some of the traffic around one of the local high schools. And it, it may be that we want to tie that into having some coordination with the Fremont Union High School District and possibly Cupertino Union School District to discuss school traffic and school safety. And, and there was, there, there are two other issues. One of them, and I don't know how to fit it in, one of them has to do with the import of soil to Lehigh Cement and what the county has for standards for acceptance for contaminants in the soil. That's one, one item of concern. And another is, you know, and I don't know if, I'd like to hear more about it, but it would be the Bay Area Air Quality Management District standards that we have on our air quality. I'd like to hear more about that and how it compares to other regions in, in the state. And with that, if there's no further early comments?
Just a follow-up, some of the things that you brought up do seem like public safety and potentially safety commission elements. So either that should be joint discussion or, or determine which, which commission would, would be best suited to weigh in on, on those elements. Just a comment.
I think staff can help, you know, coordinate and direct those, those items. And, you know, I think it might be a good idea if we actually do start having some joint sessions, either with city council or, or with the safety commission and possibly also sustainability. You know, we, we had one item on the electric vehicle charging stations, but there's also people who are supportive of the hydrogen fuel cell vehicles. And so there's, there's other issues that we can look into, but that gets into sustainability, I believe.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to attempt to put this on the overhead here of the list of project tasks. The conversation kind of resulted in me sort of grouping some of the items together. So don't be offended if you don't see your exact wording somewhere up there and we can certainly add and modify. Yes, ma'am.
Shall we go to public comment to see if we have any other items to add on to the list for you? Okay, great. So I do have a speaker card from Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I had made some notes as you all were talking along and I'm glad that Mr. Wong mentioned the food deserts because I had actually written several letters to the city council a while ago because West San Jose has been eliminating gas stations and we have lost so many markets. We've lost, at El Paso, we lost a grocery store, we lost a grocery store at Westgate. I think there was another one, they're under constant threat. And gas stations, there are cer, and pharmacies, we have to make sure that we don't wind up like a big city where you have to go 12 miles to find a grocery store. I don't want to live in a city like that. I'm going to be here when I'm 90 years old and I don't, I don't want my city to be like that. The other thing I'm going to talk about it is, and Kitty had sort of gone into this, is we, what we are living through now is unprecedented. The housing bills, the abuse of the cities by Sacramento, the, the HB two oh oh one and the HB twenty-seven eighty that is being proposed for Washington State. Now it was introduced and it is an SB fifty for Washington State. These are unprecedented. We don't know what we're dealing with. I want to find out if there is some way that we can have planning to determine the city's rights to self-governance and not to have their ability to self-govern being stripped away at the state level. I never thought we would be put to something like this and I don't even know what this goes under. But the city in my mind is a unit of community and I will put my mother's area in there. She's an aptus and she is a unit of the county. I grew up in the county, we had no city, we had the county. So when, when, when things happen and the state level, things happen at the state level where they are treading upon the rights of cities. And some of our cities in California have preceded the United States. They have gone through Spain, Mexico and California and the United States. I'm talking about Santa Cruz, San Jose, San Francisco, San Diego. They are older than the United States possessions. So therefore, I look, and the counties too, I look at them as having inalienable rights. And we, yes, one of the mottos is don't tread upon me, but we need to start planning this and finding out how do we protect ourselves from the abuse from Sacramento, such as these housing and ADU bills. I don't know where that goes under, but it, the city has the right to exist as does the county. We need to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. So right now, Steph, Ben, you'll be listing our items for us? Great.
Our list here is my, I'm a slow typer, so my best attempt to put this together and merge in some of the items as you guys have, the commission has agreed on a certain, certain items, so I can merge them together. Looking for some assistance, if you want to expand the project task language, this document doesn't self spell check, so I'll have to work on that.
Okay, did you, did you have a chance to, to pull the items from the previous spreadsheet?
No, I have not, I have not done that yet. I can certainly do that at the end. I want to make sure I captured this first because that's, that's an easier exercise. I can just cut and paste, right? So.
Okay.
So the first one I have, and this is sort of expanding, or maybe condensing what, what Vice Chair Wong had indicated, to preserve places that support, supports daily living, such as, you know, avoiding food deserts and having a basic farm, yeah, basic services like pharmacies, gas stations. So, I mean, I'm looking for, I think that the direction we received is for the commission to come to consensus for all these columns. But I think if you have a general direction, depending on the time, how much you want to spend on this, we can certainly pin down to the details or, or, or just give the general direction. It's up to you. So I'm looking at project objective.
There were some common ones that came up on a recurring, recurring basis. So VMT, for instance, I would suggest that we consider, you know,
Two checkmarks, two hashes?
To prioritize that higher.
Okay, so maybe what I can do is just go down the project tasks and then you can prioritize that right now. And then we can kind of expand the calls. Maybe that's a better way to do that. So, because we do have that coming up. So the second one is changes, Commissioner Feng, changes to balconies and deck regulations. We have the review default hours of operation for CUP. Study session for the impact of utilizing VMT instead of LS for EIR. Study session for the impact and requirement for the next RENA cycle. Review city transit needs. Study of the transportation of the city and impact on land use. Review the existing R1 second story additions. Oversight of public works department by the planning commission. Study session on homelessness, homeless with domestic violence and support of the mental health community. Review upcoming housing bills and address any legal issues. Evaluation of city's fiscal feature. Infrastructure of the city's sewer plan and water treatment. Study of the existing school traffic and safety and potential improvement measures. Import of soil to Lehigh Cement Plant and the contamination. Explore joint session with other commissions and/or. Explore joint session with other commissions and/or City Council. And add an extra one from the public, examine the potential to self-governance, sort of roughly what.
I, I might put item 19 and combine that with the existing school traffic and safety. I think that was, that comment was, was associated with item 17. So perhaps just combine all that together. Basically, what I'm saying is that the, the study would, could be a joint session with another commission.
So, so was the intent not to explore other joint sessions with other commissions on other topics? Which I'm fine with, I just want to make that clear.
I think on a point-by-point basis, we would make that decision if we wanted to, you know, if it was, if it was relevant to do a joint study session. For instance, like with, with the ERC, with the report that I mentioned earlier, that that was something that I felt it would be great if it was, if it was conducted again and done as a joint session to educate the Planning Commission and the City Council on the ERC requirements. In fact, I kind of like that to be an item, actually, now that I mention it. If we could add that. It would be the, the ERC presentation, do a joint session of the ERC requirement presentation that was, that was shown to the committee last, I believe it was maybe June. Right, so it'd be a joint session with the Planning Commission, so PC and CCC. And that way it would get recorded and we can use it kind of like as a training tool in the future.
You're talking about the sequel presentation in August or is?
Yeah, so it's not really ERC, ERC requirements, but rather the sequel requirements.
It was, right, it was the, it was the sequel requirements that were presented to the ERC. Thank you, okay. And then, and that way if it's recorded, then we can just refer, you know, individuals to it in the future so that we've got this training guide.
Is ERC not recorded?
ERC is not, the recording does not.
Published?
Published.
Right, because I've attended before and they were recording.
There's action, action minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Get from this is you would get the slideshow and the discussion that would, you know, follow. And if it was a joint session between the Planning Commission and the City Council, you'd get all of the questions all together. And what we found in the ERC is that there, everybody had questions. It was, it was really good, yeah.
So, so one of the things that Commissioner Takahashi touched on this, I think, given, given that the goal of this is to develop a list of priorities from the, from our commission to, to look for funding. I worry about these things that are, a number of the, number of these items, they're, they're valuable, but I think they're out of scope for, for the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission's charter, and they may also be out of scope for the Planning Commission's staff. So for instance, it's not to say that homelessness or domestic violence shelters are, I mean, that's, that's an important thing, but I think we're, we're not well situated to have anything, you know, productive to say there relative to the Housing Commission or, or other organizations in the, in the community. So I, I would just take that as a, we can have a lot of effect on R1 zoning, the second floor in R1 zoning and we'd have very little effect on, you know, the school traffic situation is heavily studied by the, by many groups within the city.
I will just remind the commission, point one taken hours, remind the commission that is, it, as much as you, you can either go in a direction of fine point direction, items, things that you think that are really realistic for, for you to, for us to perform, which that would be a much lengthier discussion that we can have and also involves on the operations of department, which we will have with City Manager. So I think having a sort of running list of a wish list, if you will, doesn't necessarily hurt, but that's for the commission to discuss. It's, it's out of my, my realm, but I'm just want to point that out.
Just process question to the chair and to everyone here. We put this proposal in and then when does it get prioritized? Do we put a prioritization and then send it to the City Council? Is that what the process is?
So you, you will prioritize, yes, thank you, Vice Chair Wong. You will prioritize your top three out of this list of, I think, 15 or 16 items?
Today?
Today, correct. And, and the department head, so as typical with every commission, as the, the affected, the affected impact of department, the department head will obviously discuss with the City Manager and discuss resources. There will be a final consolidated list of priorities for, from all the commissions and all the departments and that final list will be presented to, to the City Council.
Okay, so when we have a finished list, can you send that to us in Excel so we can actually all look at it in real time real quick?
Well, we're gonna finish it right here.
Finish it here, so.
Doing it here, okay, because I want to scroll down, I can't.
Yeah, you're gonna vote for those tonight. So I can minimize it if you want to see more, but I think the text may be.
Actually, Ben, if there's a way, can you, do you have Excel on your machine? Because if you took those lines and just put them in columns.
This is the Excel.
Even wider than that.
Even wider than that.
Since there isn't anything else right now.
There we go.
Thank you, Bill Gates. Actually, you want to pick the left, pick the, the entire column on the left and then, and then set the height. Set the height to 14 or something, if you can do that. Just click on the A.
What are you guys saying?
There's a, there's, there's a column A at the top, close that menu.
There's a column A?
This thing, pick that. Yeah, and that'll select that entire, oh, well.
Yeah?
There you go. Now right-click on the, if you have any windows yet.
Yeah, I think I might need some technical assistance here. Someone's a little faster than me. Pugos, planning manager to the rescue here.
There you go. Thank you.
Scroll upward.
Well, there's more.
The first column is, is anchored, yeah.
Yeah. We're closed.
I think it's all there. I think if you, please stay.
Can we, can we add in from the other spreadsheet now if we've?
Well, I don't know.
Got an entire list?
Maybe we could pop back on that and see if there's anything we wanted to carry forward.
I think we would automatically carry forward the items which were not completed and then we can review.
But then we'll prioritize them down so they don't get, they don't.
They never get.
You know, I, I don't know. We had one before about, you know, sidewalk restaurants that kept showing up. I don't think we, I don't think we need to do that. I mean, it's just not going to, it's not going to cut, make the cut.
Okay, so we do have like, on the, on the first page, you have penalties for violation of conditions of approval. Perhaps that one would pull forward?
I'll join you on that.
Well, that, this, this was one that was, that was, it was to be completed, right? So, oh, yeah, there it is.
There it is, right there again.
Oh, that's, parking incentives for EVs.
Unless you want to.
I really don't quite understand why the parking incentives are, were bundled together without outdoor seating.
The reason for that, the reason for that is that they are, that this was actually a, what do you call it? When you modify parking spaces into restaurant space, that was what was, the parklet. Yeah, parklets. It was a, this was the, the translation of a parklet item.
So, on, on, in, in Los Gatos, they actually did a, as the summer, you know, street closing on one, one half of the street. And you didn't happen to talk to anybody from that area of comments for it? It looked like people were using it, but I, I don't know that we have an area in town that, that would be appropriate considering the amount of traffic and.
Yeah, historically, historically, this was, it's the conglomeration of a discussion about parklets, looking at parklet opportunities and electric, you know, the electric charging infrastructure.
Have, have there been any proposals as to where specifically a parklet might make sense?
I think it was, well, I think that the, the answer to that is.
The trade is typically parking, street parking.
Yeah.
Like I know, in the city of Placerville, they, they took out a couple parks and put it in just as really small places. And it actually seemed to be enjoyed by the residents.
Los Gatos, they went one way on the, down, you know, the main street and the university.
That was actually temporary. It was actually a pretty innovative idea. So they had the temporary, I guess, column K walls and the umbrellas on one side. And then it was, it was all gone at the end of the summer.
Potentially there's a seasonal element to that as well, right? Because it's something you would enjoy during the summer versus the winter.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the problem is today that if you happen to have a suitable space, there wasn't a way to do a parklet. And that's actually what the driving force was, to look at creating a parklet regulation. But I don't think it rates, it doesn't rate on the list of three and it doesn't rate on the list of 10 either. So I would, I would, you know, I can put it on the list, but.
Well, maybe that's the Parks and Rec.
Can I, can I clarify? As much as we love the discussion about parklet, it's actually not in.
By your jurisdiction.
Well, no, it's actually not on the list of the previous list. That was parking incentives and outdoor seating for restaurants. So neither of those were actually parklets, which we can also add as a new item if you want.
Yeah, but the, I mean, you know, this, this was an old Jeff Paulson thing. It was, parklets, parklets, parklets are the way you create outdoor eating space.
I'm just saying parklets have never actually been on our work program.
I think in the interest of time that none of us are going to consider this as a high priority item. Back to your point, Commissioner Feng.
There are many, there are many.
Discussion onto another item.
We could talk about it in great depth, but there's no point.
If I may, just to add some history behind the encouraged outdoor seating, it was related to the number of conditional use permits that the Planning Commission was seeing for. Outdoor, outdoor seating, because there is a requirement in the municipal code that says that you can't have more than 20% of your indoor seats as outdoor seats. And so we had a couple of restaurants that came through with conditional use, requesting conditional use permits to allow more than 20% of the indoor seats as outdoor seating. And that's why it ended up as a work program item, but we haven't had one since 2014.
We have a conditional use permit review here, so if we want to pick it up, we can do it there.
Well, I, I think that the comments we've been getting from, sorry for the resetting of the system here, I think is on a timer. I apologize.
I think we can agree to eliminate that one, how about that?
Well, the, the, the outdoor seating, it's, it's, it's also to, yes, we have a use permit process right now as Pew stated, but there's, we're looking at additional cost and time for operation that's either permitted already or it's already in, in use. So we haven't seen up spike of those kind of permits because restaurants are just choosing to stay within the limitations, even though there is a huge need and demand for that.
So, so I would just say, I would, I would actually say that although I would not put my own conditional use permit review on this, I think there is sufficient input to the department that it actually probably is justified as something to try to bring on the work plan to just say, hey, we've taken, we've gotten a lot of public input about, about conditional use permits. You know, I don't know, I talked to the people from what is Orange, the fitness, Orange, whatever that was. Orange Theory, yeah. You know, I think it costs $16,000 to come and, and, and have the hearing here so that they can open up before 7:00 AM. It's just not, this doesn't make sense.
That's stupid.
Same with Starbucks, right? And so it, it really, you know, those are things, those are places where, you know, I think that it's a good use of the, it's a good use of the staff time, it's good use of the commission's time, good use of, you know.
It's a win-win for residents and business.
Yeah, it actually, it actually addresses Ray's, Ray's issue around, you know, there are many things that we do under conditional use permits that cause it to be difficult to have things like services.
What was I saying? Also, if you're talking about hours of operation, I think Commissioners Takahashi and Feng were on when, when Main Street, we had an operator, Meat Fresh, it came forward to, to actually extend their hours operation to a little bit later than I think 10 or 11 PM or something like that. And, and since it kind of puts up against some residential uses, there were some public comments. So in that particular case, that's, that's a helpful process to have.
Right, so, so can it be more written in proximity to private residence? As, as an exception or, and/or, right? Because if it's, if it's, if it's a business that's, that's on the other end, then nobody's really going to have an issue and do we really want to make them come for a.
So, so I, I just think the time is, it's a good time to actually come and look at those, at those issues. You know, that, the case, the case for Main Street, for instance, is that's a P-zone. So perhaps the P-zone regulations need, you know, for conditional use to be different than, you know, than if it were elsewhere. Although I guess they're all in P-zones, right?
Okay, so if, if the, if the question is, do we want to have the, the conditional use permit be a study session topic? I think there's, there's quite a bit of.
I would actually say not, not study session, but to actually, this would be one where we would look to.
Change.
Yeah, it's to reform, you know, to update on the conditional use, conditional use permit condition.
Specifically the hours of operation?
If I may, just for our understanding, you're basically suggesting that we roll in the issue about outdoor seating into that review of the conditional uses in the municipal code?
I think it makes more sense to put it there, but I'm also wondering if the electric vehicles, if incentives for electric vehicles, could that be something that the Sustainability Commission looks at? Or did, you know, should that stay? Because it doesn't seem to me like that is a very large project.
I think there has actually been newer state law that's kind of, there were certain quirks in the system of how it was being applied by different cities. And, you know, new state law basically says if there is electric, it streamlined that piece of it for infrastructure related to electric vehicles.
Okay, put, they've, they've codified it, how many, how many electric vehicle charging stations that you need to have?
I think they made it easier to ha, put them in. They don't necessarily say that you got to provide these many electric vehicles, but they may also have that and I, maybe I don't know about that. But they've certainly streamlined the process of allowing the infrastructure related to electric vehicles.
Okay, I, I think that, I think that perhaps Roger Lee had spoken about this. This did come up maybe sometime last year. There was a question about what the requirements were for electrical vehicle charging stations. So I think this could perhaps just be coordinated with a question of staff and then, and, and we can bring it up in the future.
I'd like to propose we take out the encouraged outdoor seating in restaurants, create a separate one that has to do with the issue around these ordinances and conditional use permits.
And that should be a bigger one. Separate them.
So I would, I would just say, think big about this and really look at what are the things, what are the areas we want to approach on conditional use permits broadly.
Yes.
Outdoor seating is one where if there was feedback from businesses that they would like to have, to have a different standard, then this would be the time to look at it.
Yeah, I think we'd like to split it up.
And then one of my, one of my items from last year that didn't get very far on the list was, was actually, you know, all-electric and reach code stuff, which ended up coming back as a council initiative. That actually would be, I think, the appropriate place for things like charging policy. Of course, for us, there were changes in the law with the new, the new building code, the statewide building code to increase the amount of electrical chargers in, in, you know, new construction. But, you know, on a broader thing, and there was an issue, Roger was here. He did actually talk about the fact there was a problem where there are many grants to have electrical charging stations installed, but they couldn't provide the internet connectivity. So, you, you know, I think that, again, this is one of those, if we want to have, if we want to improve the electrical infrastructure in Cupertino, I mean, that's a, that's a good, I mean, I think it's a good discussion topic. Maybe not, again, super high on, on the list, but I, I think that that's in the scope of the kinds of things that we, you know, we can, we can give to the department and say, hey, you know, can you go, go get funding to figure out what is, what is, what is best practice for, for having more charging? And what, and how will we implement it here?
There is, there have been several projects where that has been a question with regard to when we look at the parking and the plans for parking and recommending implementation of more EV charging stations. But whether or not that translates into actual implementation is a whole different thing. Because I remember like. Cause I remember like just the, the Target remodel, um, I think they stated they were going to put 30 EV charging stations along SAGE and don't know if that's going to happen or not. So it was in the plan.
Yeah, we, we are out of EV charging capacity in Cupertino.
It is possible that you could add, like with the electricity, you could put it into an infrastructure assessment topic. And so item 16, infrastructure, the city sewer plan and water treatment. I was looking also sewer, water, it looks like we've got street and traffic broken down as a separate item. And maybe the city transit needs and the VMT, uh, and if, um, let's see, could all be put together, so just under one heading of transportation.
I think that the, I think that the importance of having, you know, having, uh, having a discussion about VMT, because that's a immediate change, a significant immediate change, that one ranks separately. And I think that it was mentioned by enough people that I think that this may be in the, in the top three. It may actually be in this year still, so I, I don't know. You know, the most, the most useful time to have it is before the law starts to take effect. But, you know, if, if it's not on your work plan now, then it, then the next year is the best, next best we can do. I worry a little about the infrastructure. I think that there are, there are parts of it that are applicable and then a lot of things, the, the items here are okay. Some of the, some of the things around, um, water reclamation, probably regional and probably not within the scope of what, um, of what the city can do.
Well, we, we do have a section, you know, coming up in the general plan regarding our, our regional coordination. So this, it, it is something that we need to be working on. We are, you know, just like with the transportation, we're not an island where we are connected and everything that the cities around us are doing are in, is there, it's impacting us. So for instance, if you, if you've been driving Lawrence, you're well aware of how the development up and down a Lawrence Expressway has been impacting, um, that, that traffic. It's, it's really incredible. And then, uh, you know, there was some mention about, maybe it was Santa Clara, but, uh, it is City Place, Santa Clara. The, the traffic impacts from that project, which is, it's another one that's got way too much office, not enough housing. The traffic impacts came all the way into Cupertino. And, you know, I don't even think we wrote a letter to, to the city of Santa Clara commenting on, on what it was going to be doing to Cupertino.
I don't, I don't disagree, but at the same time, I think that there is, the opportunity for having an effect is very minimal. You know, uh, it's, it's important, it's important to have regional cooperation. Part of that is to have a plan, but I don't know that I would spend a lot of staff, you know, there's a, you know, City Place is all the way is across the street from Levi's Stadium. So I, I just, it's hard to see that there would be a way that would justify, um, spending, spending Cupertino staff, staff time, you know, staff time and dollars on, on doing that. I'm working on that.
So, I mean, it seems like we can debate a lot of these for a long time. Maybe just kind of at least get our top five or six and then we can try to whittle it down from there. I think that would probably be a, because I think there's some obvious ones that we're all, we all agree are, are high priorities.
As, as part of the process and just to simplify to remove one item, can we put R1 second story along with the balconies and decks? As one item?
Yeah.
So let's group, let's group things first and see where things make sense. And let's eliminate things we agree that shouldn't be on here. And I think we can get to like a shorter list.
Yep.
So, so I think from my, from where, from where I'm at, I would see that as something related to understanding the, this is a issue of what is counted as living space related to, related to the second story. I think that, I think there's no issue with people having a patio on ground level. So, uh, just so that it's sufficiently narrow. Oh.
Vice Chair, I was wondering if you had some ideas of how to go about preserving places that support daily living? The item three, um, how that, how that would come about?
Uh, Chairmore, I think line item three is probably something that is going to require some creative legal protections for these areas. And so I think it's, it's a, it's a study session to see what laws are in place to protect these kind of areas or designate them as special zones, um, that, that, that may be out of, um, state jurisdiction.
So. You know, I, I think that supporting gas stations might, um, be something that maybe the Sustainability Commission would want to, want to discuss as well. Uh, because you're getting into energy sources.
Wouldn't get rid of them, but.
And, and honestly, yeah, right. And I have, I have some trouble with, with that language things.
Let's call that, um, that supports daily living such as, uh, such as access to grocery stores, pharmacies, um, healthcare, yeah, and, and, and sources of energy.
And, you know, while, while the gas stations were mentioned, you know, and I, one thing that comes to mind is if we do have a, a natural disaster, that if, if you've densified the area so much and you've gotten rid of so many grocery stores that you will run up with a run on food. And then we've, so many of us have gone to electrical vehicles. If, if the, the power grid is down, how are we going to charge our vehicle? And then you, you, and we've also been limiting the number of gas stations that we have, so I could see.
And I can't put a generator in my backyard because I put an ADU and so.
Okay, so, and, and if we could also go back to the previous work program and see if there's any other items that we can pull into our current program?
Yeah, I think, I think those are actually the same thing.
Yeah, can't put eight and nine together? I think they're the same.
I believe they're pulling, they're looking at the, the previous work program, the, the green sheet, right?
Got it, got it, got it.
Okay, so are we going to pull the, the penalties for violation of condition of approval and code enforcement best practices?
This year, right?
It's just, it's in progress.
That's coming, that's.
Let's leave it there.
Okay.
It'll be completed.
What else is on hold? Let's scroll down.
Heart of City.
You can put it down, put it down there, I mean, you know.
Right. And the general plan update.
Yeah, we're doing that right now.
We don't have that on the first list.
Yeah, but I think.
That one's already in progress.
But I, I don't know, I mean, I really, I really feel like that is one of the ones that we should prioritize low. You know, prior, it should be there. You shouldn't, if you, if the planning department can't, doesn't have, doesn't have funding to support our review of the general plan, there's something wrong, but it isn't something that we highlight as a high priority.
I think it was highlighted because of the whole object of standard discussion. Like I said, it's, it's a unique year last year, that's why we highlighted that.
It's not a, it's, that's not a discussion to be repeated, so.
Actually, well, we, it shouldn't be as, as granular as what we've had to do this year, that's for sure. But we have to do a general plan review and a status update by law each year. And the problem is, is that this year was the first, uh, to my knowledge, that that is, has been done. Is that correct?
It's just, it's the first time it's been done in this way.
By the, by the planning commission.
No, it's the first, it's been done every year.
This way, yes, this is the fir, first time since 2013, I want to say.
So, well, we're doing well for this year.
It's, I think it's the first time since the last general plan was approved that it was reviewed in this way. But we did get, we did have updates.
Will not disagree with that statement.
As part of that, as part of that annual report, yeah. I mean, it came here, it comes here before it went to the council, but it was, you know, it was an hour of discussion, not, you know, 40 hours.
In, in all fairness, we, we did have a number of new planning commissioners and I thought it was very helpful. So I really appreciate the investment in time.
And it's coming up on the next item at 10 o'clock tonight. Oh, it's already 10 o'clock.
Okay, and the development accountability priority setting item. It was written last year as a proposed work program item.
That was.
But that was, that was been done, right? Right, this is.
No, this, this one is still on, uh, an ongoing item, has been mentioned previously.
Remember, this is the one where we're looking at trying to incentivize developers to build after they're receiving entitlements and approvals. So that's the one we had a little bit of discussion earlier about.
This, this would be development agreement.
This, this could be a development agreement or any other sort of methods or leverage.
That's, that's the prior point. I mean, are we talking about the green point here? Development approval process?
No, we're talking about development accountability.
Accountability, okay. I don't know. A number of these, a number of these items are, the, the economics of the world works a certain way.
Yeah.
And there isn't, you know, you can't, you can't make grocery stores appear. I mean, there's just nothing you can do unless you want to run a grocery store.
Yeah, however, you can, you can restrict the way people remove grocery stores and take them out because they're being bought out and then being replaced with nothing but grocery stores. So, so there's, there's a place there, right? So right now, like, hey, maybe I should buy up every shopping center and turn it into a large mixed use. Oh, wait, oh, all right, sorry about that.
Okay, so have we gotten to the third page of the?
Even if you did that.
Have we gotten to the third page of the 2019?
Get a grocery store out of it.
No, we have not, I'm still waiting to see if you, if you wanted to keep the development accountability or if you want us to, to remove that from upcoming.
This is something that was, has been mentioned by city council members. So I think we should keep it and they might take it on themselves.
Good, fair enough.
And remove it from, from our list. Great, I like the split screen, that's, that's very helpful. Okay, so I think we can move down to the third page of the 2019, um, green sheet. Yeah, there's one more.
These are all.
These are all either completed or will be completed.
Great, so we can look at the, just the single sheet on the left side. We're done looking at the 2019 work items. Okay, so we could remove, if we could, remove the right side and open up the page, make it a little wider. That's great. Okay, now if we could just go over the items and see what we can combine if possible, because we need to get down to 10 and prioritize the top three.
I will say you don't have to limit to 10. If you feel like all 15 deserve to be on the list, we can do that, but it's important to have your top three. That's probably more important.
Is there anything on this list that no one really cares to work on this year or sees that it rises to the level of needing to be worked on this year?
I would remove 18.
Okay, and, uh, why would you remove that?
Out of, out of, uh, out of our jurisdiction.
How is that, how is that out of our jurisdiction? I just, just for clarity sake.
Lehigh is not in, Lehigh is not in Cupertino.
Okay, well, that's interesting because it gets into the issue of the environmental review committee and one of the things that we were trying to do was to, um, increase the, the powers of that committee so that it could look at, at sites that were outside of the, outside of the city and including Danza College, um, any improvements that they would be doing there. But we have water that's being pumped out in that area. There's wells in that area and they, um, the soil import will, uh, there is water at the, at the bottom of the pit, which will be touched and I think it's.
I'm not saying that this is not an issue, that it's not an issue. I just think that if we're ranking our top three or our top 10, this is not one of them.
Okay, well, you know, to our, to our credit, or actually to the credit of our county supervisor, we will be having the annual meeting, uh, in February on Lehigh cement, um, so.
And it's, and it's his jurisdiction. It's a county, the county is having a meeting about something that's in their jurisdiction.
Well, are we going to protect the rights of our residents? You know, and, and one of the issues here, the, the import of the soil, the question is, what are the, what are the screening levels for acceptance of the soil that would go into Lehigh cement? And what I've been told is that it's going to take some exorbitant number of years to even, and, and, and huge number of truck trips in order to fill, and, and in order to fill the pit. So the question is, you know, well, I mean, do we have any input? Can, do we have any say in the matter for what screening levels are accepted there? And who in the county is, um, determining what those are?
But you're, but you know we don't, so, you know.
I'm not sure legally that we don't. You know, we're residents of the county. There, we, shouldn't we be able to have some say about what the screening levels are for.
As a resident of the county, as a resident of the county, you do. You know, when the county takes action, they will always reach out to the, to the jurisdictions that are affected. That's, that's normal. It's not, it's not, it's not odd to have a thing. I think that there's a lot of action happening in public works, uh, in that territory. And I'm just not sure whether, you know, I believe that the, uh, whether the planning department has a lot to contribute there.
Okay, so whether or not they get listened to or not, who do you feel is the, is the best, you know, committee, commission, council? Who do you think is the, the, the most appropriate place for this, uh, for this item to be, to be the voice for Cupertino about this matter?
I just don't think it's the planning commission.
Could be sustainability, could be safety. I mean, yeah, could PRC, I mean, there's.
So this is an item we could, we could put on the bottom and say, you know, we need to find, we need to find. Yeah, right, because, you know, it is important, where does it go? And, and city council would tell us where, where the most appropriate place is. You good with that?
I'd support you with that, Commissioner, I mean, Chairmore. We can do that at, but I mean, I, I want to get back, I mean, look, if, if there's, we can do it, make it very quickly. We support that. There's, I get a second support on it, but there's anything here that has no support here. Like it's, I mean, let's just go line by line real quick and I think that would be the fastest way. And then if we want to go deeper, let's go deeper on each ones and place a hole.
You know, I even think that the, the, the homes for the domestic violence victims and support for the mental health community. I, I think the support for the mental health committee, community should probably go to city council. Homes for domestic violence to the, and the homelessness, um, would go to the housing commission. And, and they already had a study session on homelessness at both of those, uh, city council and, um, the housing commission. So, you know, leave it to city council to decide if they were, if we're going to be doing anything, if the planning commission would need to be involved, so that can, we can remove that item, um, and then.
That's a delete.
Yeah.
Or.
Delete for number 12, homes for domestic violence, that one?
11 and 12 should be.
I would, I would not necessarily delete it, I would put it on the bottom and.
Recommend to.
And it's like another item for city council to make a decision on where those.
Question on process? Can we just make a recommendation now and say, we'd like to suggest these to city council, put on a different committee? Or do we need to put it in this list?
You have to put it in this list.
Before we make that recommendation?
Well, your, your recommendation is for, yeah, for city council consideration. But like I said, the department heads, we, we will evaluate the list with the city manager, look at resources, come up with a final, uh, list. In that discussion, we'll also talk to other departments and see if there's room for certain things to be placed in the correct department or commission. So I, I would say unless you have no interest, we need to delete it, otherwise we can place it kind of low. What Pew is doing now.
I would place it on a different list.
So. So we have one list, so you see what Pew is doing now for column A is attempting to potentially ranking them priority wise. Right, the three you mentioned are fairly low on the list, so we're putting them on 15, 16, 17.
I agree with Commissioner Feng's idea of just put it on a separate list for referral. Don't even look, put it on here.
Because it gives the impression that we do not care about homelessness. We don't care about, uh, this contamination and I don't want to send that message.
So then, then that the best way is to keep it on this list, right? If you, there's no other list, there's, there's one list with your top three priorities.
I think that, I think that, you know, the, the top goal when you're set, when you're doing goal setting is to do things that are actionable. These are not actionable. So there are concerns. I think that there, there's something that we can highlight this as, somebody ought to take a look at this. Right? It's just like, it's just like, it's just like public safety has a log list of things that they would like us to look at. I'm happy to receive the list. You know, you guys should talk about it at, at the staff level, but.
The housing commission already has homelessness as one of their, um, work program items, I believe.
So we can move it, just strike it.
We could strike that.
Okay, so for the, in this, this item probably should go to the housing commission, but it was, uh, funding an additional quadplex for, uh, domestic violence victims. Because to my. for domestic violence victims. Because to my knowledge, there is only, we're, we support one in the, in the area and it has, it's got four units only. And this is a huge place.
Yeah, that, that is currently on the housing commission work program as well, so.
I mean, that's, that is the use of the community block grant, right? So, one of the, one of the focus of the community development block grant.
We're looking at a variety of different ways to, to fund that.
Yeah, so.
Good, so I mean.
Would be a delete?
We're deleting it because we are insured that it is being taken care of. Now, support for the mental health community, how about that issue? Where does that best fit? And if we can move it off of our list and, or to the bottom of our list and, and ensure that it is being handled somewhere. It almost seems like that's something that city, that the city manager and city staff would have a webpage of, of information and resources available, that that, it wouldn't necessarily, because if, if we're just trying to dispense information for resources to people, that that, I would think that city, that that's like a city manager issue instead.
West Valley Community Services.
Okay. Well, again, it would be like pointing, just, just having a pointer on the, on the website to that, where it's not necessarily, it's not really a work item for us, but alerting city council that perhaps add that, you know, on the website that you, you know, just point people in that direction. Because we have other, other services listed, but maybe not very clearly about mental health assistance.
This potentially could end up in the city manager's office work program, for example, some other, so as we have that internal discussion, these items, like I said, could get shifted to the appropriate departments.
I think the city manager's office manages the city's relationship with groups like West Valley Community Service. So that's where, you know.
So, so we can pull, so we can pull it off?
Yeah.
And ensure that, that, that staff goes and speaks to the city manager about that one. Okay, so the idea is that, that staff is going to speak with the manager about this item and that it will be removed from our potential list. Is there anything else that we can combine? So we're removing support of the mental health community because it's going to be handled internally, right? Right?
That's correct. Can we, is eight and nine so different that they're separate today? Am I missing something?
Yeah, so could we combine eight and nine?
Yeah, are they the same? Was there some nuance in eight or nine that I'm missing here, that we're missing?
I think we can define something that's a combination of the two, so.
Let's do that.
Does, does anyone know if the Legislative Review Committee is still, is still formed because the review of the upcoming housing bills would be something under their purview? It, I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it was abolished at the end of last year. It's still going?
Not to my knowledge. Yeah, it is still part of the whole city process.
Okay, so we could, we could remove that and if at some point we want to discuss SB fifty, then we can, we can pull that back in. Okay.
So, so just as a.
Okay with doing that?
Just as a, just as a comment there, you know, in the, in twenty eighteen, following the, the passage of the, the housing legislation, at that time, we got a presentation from the city attorney's office. We did, this didn't happen in the last year. So I think that that's actually something I, I would put aside. This is, this is, I would actually say that putting aside, putting aside a legislative review, whether that happens here, I, I think that normally happens at the council. Will happen at the council level rather than here, but that would be an item that, that would be something that's not completely out of bounds for us, but maybe something that, you know, that happened somewhere else. So I, I don't know. I don't really have a problem with, with keeping that, keeping that on as a lower priority.
I'm sorry, we already deleted that, so it's not coming back.
I mean, you know, that, that's just an ongoing, you know, there are, there are new laws every year, so, you know, and, and they tend to be, they tend to happen at the end of the legislative calendar, so I think that that's something that.
Should be scheduled.
Yeah.
It's like on, it's like a standing session.
I'm, I'm still wanting to combine the item eight and item six, the, the study session, only because they both do discuss transportation and I'm trying to shrink our list.
Well.
And, and we can have this be.
Before you do that, before you do that.
What do you lose?
There, there are two, there are two very different things. One of them is that the, the VMT, this VMT discussion is about how we can effectively judge an EIR, a new EIR that were to come through. That's separate from talking about, you know, what is the plan, what is VTA's plan for transit on Stevens Creek? Or transit on, on Deanser Boulevard. So I, I think those are two, those are two separate things. One of which has, has a short, a shorter term need and the other is a longer term one.
Well, you know, that's actually kind of an interesting item that you're bringing up, which is to how you analyze an EIR. And one of the things that I've, I've wondered is that, you know, the Environmental Review Committee, it will make a determination if you need a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR. But then it's, it's unclear if that final product should return to the, the ERC for, for review or as, and I'm not sure if this has been consistent, but it goes then to, to the planning commission afterwards. And so if, if you are going to do a study session which is going to demonstrate and explain how to do the SEQA review of the transportation section of, of an EIR, I think, you know, I'd like to see that be a joint session with the ERC. So maybe, you know, star that, that, you know, do that with the ERC so that those members are also able to see that, that.
I just think this is, this is something where, you know, every, every major project will come with a EIR at some level, whether it's a, you know, you know, whether, you know, whether it's IS, whatever. So, so I think that, I don't know, I've, I've had, so I've sat, I've had the San Jose presentation of this. And, you know, what it comes down to is that the kinds of things, the nature of what you build is quite different because of the change in, the change in evaluation. So I think that's the interesting thing, what you would expect to see, the kinds of differences you expect to see in a project as a result of this change is actually something that's very valuable for this commission.
Well, I think it's, you're kind of opening a can of worms here when you put the, the SEQA review item on any of these. And, and the reason why I say that is because there's so many parts in, in the environmental impact report. And when, now that you've brought this up, I would like to have actually a study session on how to go over an, an EIR or a mitigated negative declaration so that we are being effective in our review process. And no one's, to my knowledge, no one's, you know, taught the planning commission how to go through the EIRs. And at the Planning Commission Academy, they have a SEQA basics course, and then last year, they had an advanced SEQA course, which was the first time that they had conducted that. And it may be that to our benefit, if we have something very similar, it was Placeworks. One of the people from Placeworks had conducted it. And I know Placeworks has done a couple of the, the environmental SEQA studies here. We might want to have a study session on the SEQA process. And I think, I think a lot of people in the community would be really interested in that, just what the process is. And, and put that down as a, as a separate item. But, but specifically.
Again, I just, I, I, you know, the, the review and discussion of SEQA broadly is, is a huge topic versus a relatively focused but critical change that's happening in the legislation now. So, you know, I, I don't know. There's value, there's value in that. I think from a planning commission standpoint, you know, we, we go, we go to the academy, you know, to have the opportunity to look at things like, like SEQA. I don't think that, you know, having, you know, having a twenty hour course is not something we're going to do in here, in this, you know, in this, you know, from the, in the, in a planning commission meeting. So if you're talking about, well, you know, we're going to, we're going to talk about for a half hour or forty-five minute presentation, you know, I don't know. I, I just think that in, when you see the San Jose presentation, which they were giving, Jay, it must be almost two years ago now, about VMT versus, versus LOS, they, this is illustrated typically with a map. And the way that, the way that you, you know, the way you do development approvals, the locations on the map change quite radically because of that. And that's actually, I think, what we're trying, what I would think would be useful to, to capture here.
Is it appropriate for the study sessions to be on our work plan when it's, when it's more of an educational session? You know, like, like, you know, teaching the, the planning commission about the SEQA process? Is that, should that really be a work plan item?
Yes, because there will be some resources and the costs required to consider in addition to standard practice.
So we're, we are potentially looking at some EIRs coming to us this year. And, you know, if one could be Valco, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. But I would, I would think that given the size of that project, that we would want to have a, a study session. And also for the public so that they're able to make comments for, to the EIR which, which are effective. And I think sometimes, you know, people make comments like, I like the project, I don't like the project, but those aren't really things that are going to be addressed in the EIR comment period, so to redirect the public. The, the courses were not twenty hours at the Planning Commission Academy. They were just a couple of hours. So it's, it's not an extended period of time. And I would.
I, I, I'm aware of that, but, but I, you know, I would just say that if our goal was to have.
Point of order, right? Yeah, you've, you've been talking over me. Please, Commissioner Feng.
Well, so I, you know, it's, if it is, you know, I don't think it's our intention to have a two hour class. I don't think that we necessarily feel that the two hour class is sufficient to, to make a judgment on, on SEQA. So I'm, I'm just, it's not clear what the objective here is. You know, spending an hour of time, spending an hour of time talking about the, the process, I think is valuable for the community. That actually is part in the, in the scoping session. That's one of the things they always, always cover.
So, planning commission, if I may, I, I sense that there's a lot of passion in this particular topic. I don't see the harm of leaving that on the list for the city and the city manager and the director to consider and to expand. There may be some other methods that we can bring that item back. So, but, I mean, it doesn't hurt to leave it on the, on the list. You don't necessarily have to reduce the list down to a certain number and, and, you know, this is a discussion and, and sort of information gathering, right? So as much as you want to put in here, that, that really helps us in looking at our resources. And you're only looking at column one. We have probably eight more columns to go, right? So I think if, if it's okay with you, I think, I, I hear you. I certainly feel the emotions and the necessity on this particular item. So I don't know if it really hurts to leave it on the, on the list for us to consider.
Point of inquiry to Commissioner Moore and the staff. What, do we, are we budgeting for things like study sessions? Do we answer that question? And is that separate from some of the things that are project and task?
That's probably four columns over to the right. So, you know, so I think what's really important here is if you want to prioritize the current list, would you reduce quite a bit? Get to your top three, we can, we can continue to move towards the right columns and fill this out before the night ends.
Okay, all right. So, okay, Chair, is it? I, I was going to ask, so if we know that there's going to be at some point a study at the, for Valco at some point, should we budget for that as well in here? Was that the other question? Should that be a study item in terms of the review?
I think it depends on the project, depends on the review. That may be something that the department will have to.
You'll have to do it anyways.
To consider as a function and budget for, right? So it's up to you if you want to place that at a higher priority for your consideration.
They have to put it on this list and prioritize it, given it's going to come to us by way of the process of approving that project?
What? Good, Chair.
Well, okay, there's a way, there's a way that you can do it similar to how it was, how, how the ERC was instructed, where at the start of the review that we're, that we are going to be doing on it, at the start of that meeting, you have someone from, you know, Placeworks, for instance, do a presentation and they.
So just make it part of, of that agenda item. Is that right? As far as a part of the staff report effectively to, to educate something along those lines?
Yeah, but it could end up with being a very long meeting for that particular, if we're talking that project.
Yeah, I think that, that's the expectation anyway on that topic.
And then the thing that, that could become a problem is if people in the, in the audience, if the public were, became educated on how they should have made their comments, that now you've got some people who are, who realize, oh, wow, my comments weren't really effective or I need to alter them. And now they're caught at the eleventh hour trying to, you know, change their statements, something like that. So, I mean, there is a point, I mean, you can ask for it to be kind of bundled together and have like one, one meeting before the, the EIR is presented, go through a review process. And it's, and like the, the one that was given for the ERC, it would be a, it should be, you know, a singular event that is, you know, it's recorded and it's something that can be referred to in the future. So we just, we're going to do this once, we're going to have it in the records and then, and then it can be referred to, you know, something like that. You know, and it's really, it's, it's for education purposes and, you know, and, and for people who are, you know, they're doing interviews, they did interviews, you know, last night and, and tonight for the, for the commissions, for people who are interested in being on the planning commission, they need to know what it entails. And that, you know, you are going to have, you know, a few thousand pages of environmental impact report that you're going to need to be reading and what are the parts of it? And I, I don't, I think, you know, for the last Valco project EIR, I think some people were, were quite surprised at how much went into it. I know I was. You know, I think maybe the whole thing was about thirteen thousand pages, all the documents, when all, all was said and done. So, yeah, I, I think it's, it's something worth, you know, having a study session for.
So we're adding, adding that or not adding that? Or is it coming to us? Either way.
Well, if there's a hearing, then it will come to us.
Of course.
And then, and then I think that what's, you know, we would hopefully be able to give a direction if there's something that needs to be done as a preface to that. You know, staff would know if such, such a thing were coming. There's no certainty that that will actually happen. So, you know, I, I, you know, I don't really see, I don't really see this as something that, that is a high priority.
So we've got it down to fifteen. I guess the staff is saying we should move to different columns.
Okay, so.
Well, do we want to get the top three first?
Let's talk, let's talk about a few more of these. Number nine, you know, I think it's, it's interesting. What happens is the practice, the past practice has been the public works department comes with many projects to the Parks and Recs Commission because they don't have a public commission. Again, I would say this highly, highly likely to be out of scope for what, for us to put this in as an objective, try to fund it and actually be successful. So I would suggest that we remove that.
I, I think I'd like to understand the item a little bit better. I, if you, if Vice Chair has some more comments on this item to, you know, flesh it out a little bit better?
I do. I think, I think a number of items outside of Park and Recs, I mean, there are things where it's traffic studies, it's lighting, it's things that. I, I'm getting worried about one thing and, and this is happening more and more and you see it, is, is all this rash of break-ins that are misdemeanors that don't get enforced. And I think that's going to increase with density. It's going to increase with what we see over time and.
And, and there's gonna be at some point where the, the planning commission or someone's gonna be asked to say, hey, you know, I know Public Safety is in charge of this, but are there things we can do in zoning or things we can do in planning that would make it easier to fight crime or make it easier in traffic to make things, you know, or lighting or things like that that would come up to us? So I, and, and maybe it's something we blanket-wise do in certain, you know, planning zones, right? So it's just something that I was thinking about. It's, and, and the fact that it is the only department that does not have oversight, so it's just something to raise.
If, if I may, um, the commissioners, commissions don't technically have oversight of departments. You, you have oversight, you have insight to, um, to project types, for example. So Public Works does have a commission, I believe they have the Bike and Ped Commission. So, so they deal with, with those kind of topics. In terms of oversight of departments, that's the city manager's office that will have oversight for operations.
So, so actually, so I actually, I completely agree with you on the need. When you look at many of the capital projects, right, whether it is, you know, Ragnar Creek Trail or, you know, working on storm drains, those things actually, um, given the scope and impact on the community, those actually would benefit from having a public hearing. They just don't have the mechanism to do that. So I think that's something to be addressed, but it's not a, I don't think it's a planning commission thing.
I believe CIPs are, are approved by the city council.
Well, ultimately, yeah. They are, they are so that there's a hearing there, but that's the only level that that happens at, so.
Well, the city council ultimately has the decision for all the items anyway, right?
Right.
I'm okay if you prioritize it lower, but I think it's good to explain what it is so it gets on the agenda for the next three to four years, like the parklets.
So the parklets, I heard that again, that's not on the list.
It's off, but historically it's now interesting, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Takahashi, you were talking about prioritization of that. Chair Moore, are you ready?
Just your top three.
Well, do you want to go down the line?
I think that the evaluation of cities fiscal future is actually the same one as the, the food desert one, but.
I find them very different because when I look at the evaluation of the city's fiscal future, I believe that's how do we tie our planning process to taxable revenue? And how do we tie our planning process to mitigating costs and being much more efficient? So I, I looked at it differently, but if someone who put it on there looked at it differently, let me know.
Excuse me, Vice Chair, I was wondering if you could please, um, state the project objective for infrastructure of the city, uh, I'm sorry, evaluation of the city's fiscal future. Uh, I like the way you put that, um, if you could repeat, if you could repeat the, the project objective.
Oh, it wasn't mine, actually, I, so I don't know.
Oh, I know, no, I did, I, I put it there, I put it there. But I, you, you stated a project objective which very clearly for it.
Oh, I would like to understand how, how planning affects the revenue, uh, tax retail, uh, the tax revenue for the city and also how it, how it mitigates or creates efficiencies in terms of cost.
So the, yeah, okay, so for evaluation of the city's, uh, no, no, support of the mental health community, that was something that, uh, for project objective, we have website, um, for mental health resources or about something like that. Do, what's, what are in the next columns? And are we ready to shrink down the first column?
I thought, uh, Chair Moore, I, I thought we were going to prioritize and give our first three so we can move along. And then, and then, and then go to the right as we go from there.
Well, with regards to support of the mental health community, I think we were trying to move it off the list and have it be a staff manager issue?
Yes, that's the intention of- That's what we're seeing CMO, because I just want to keep it on this list, we remove it, I'm not gonna remember that, right? So we, CMO, so it's not being ranked, it's number 11, it's not being ranked, it's just CMO, potentially.
We're attempting to rank-
We just need your top three.
Okay.
Just one, two, and three.
We have, we have a representative to VTA from city council, right? So is it, is it technically would city council be directing any transportation studies, um, citywide? Or they would be working regionally? I, I, I'm not sure what we're going to be accomplishing with reviewing the city transit needs. Like, you, you know, that seems like it's something for the, for a general plan EIR would be, would be looking at.
The way, the way the VTA works is that there's a rep from, there's a rep, but it may not be, there's a rep from the council, but there isn't one from every city in the county. So we share with other towns around us, I don't know who the rep is right now.
And, right, and there was, there was a, there was a study, um, essentially saying that it had not been as effective as it, as it could be. And they, they're working on that for how to improve the, the VTA, uh, organization. So let's see, review city transit needs and study the transportation of the city and impact on land use. So we combined two items here and, and now it's a little bit confusing.
Yeah, so one of those items was, was mine, which was actually near-term. There are, um, there are a lot of transit efforts that are going, they're funneling into, you know, the, the next Plumb Bay area, for instance. So it's really a discussion of that and understanding where those are. Are those compatible with the, you know, development goals for the city? It's difficult, you know, when you're trying to make a determination about land use, the, the next general plan is a long way out. But, um, when you're trying to make a, um, determination of land use, you know, one of the biggest factors is going to be transportation.
Right.
So, so that means, you know, there's a regional question, but there's also the question of what are the pieces that are within the city?
Yeah, I have a little, I have some problems with this, the project objective, the ensure that the city is consistent with the county and other cities. I mean, you could look at it and say, well, are we consistent with San Jose? No, and do we want to be, you know, consistent? What does that, what does that word even mean?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, you could say consistent means that your traffic is completely dead stopped, you have no infrastructure and, you know, those sorts of things. And I don't really, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's, uh, that we're consistent with something that we're wanting to be, you know, striving towards. Especially, you know, when you consider like with the jobs-to-housing balance, that a lot of these new projects have been, uh, getting approved with, um, that we don't want to be consistent with what they're doing and that they're, they're worsening the housing shortage. So I am, I have trouble with that.
My point when I brought this, the first part before it got blended, was, was really that we, as a planning commission, understand what all of the transportation elements that either VTA and/or other elements, including, you know, our own little shuttle, how those are put together and how those would intersect with decisions we're making on land use. So, so kind of the, the bigger picture of how things are going together, then, then we can understand what all those plans are.
And I would say from my part, from my contribution to that, I would actually say that it's not to be consistent, but to be proactive about identifying the, the city's needs and making sure that those are being incorporated, you know, in the regional plan. So for instance, you know, you, you need to make a decision around, is there something that's going to carry more people? Is there a transit center? You know, those sorts of, those sorts of questions. And that's something that's informed by the thinking that's, that's done at a regional level. But it also, you know, they will seek that input from us as well.
Yeah, so I think this is, this looks a bit like a Trojan horse to me. And the reason why is that, you know, we have Apple headquarters, which has, you know, a huge transit center. It's, it's a private transit center and, but you have to, you know, admit, it is, it is a, an excellent transit center. And they have, you know, impeccable, um, you know, buses and shuttles that, that they are driving all over the, over the region. So we already on the east side of Cupertino have that. And you have a, an aging population and declining enrollment along with it on the west side of Cupertino. And the densification is all happening on the east side of Cupertino. So I, you know, you're mentioning a transit hub, um, you know, at what location was that being discussed at? I'm, I'm curious about that.
That's exactly why we'd want to have this discussion.
Okay, so at issue is that, you know, if the densification's all on the east side, I know that there's been discussions about, you know, increasing, um, public transportation along Stevens Creek Boulevard to Danza College. But if you look at Danza College in the west side of Cupertino, it, it does not have the density in order to make it viable, the, the extreme cost, um, to, to put that in. So I, I think, I think that I would keep it more, more general, but I would not make it, you know, as a slam dunk that there's going to be a transit hub on the west side of Cupertino, that they're, that, that Cupertino will attract the transportation dollars from VTA here. Uh, I, I think that that's pretty questionable. And, you know, and especially considering how low the density is. If we're about 5,600 residents per square mile and you need to have between 8,000 and 11,000 residents per square mile to make your, make, you know, a rapid transit system, you know, really viable, even with these housing laws, we're not going to be nearly doubling our population. It, it isn't going to happen and I, so anyway, I would, I, I think I'm in agreement. Let's, let's look at the city transit needs, what the solution is gonna be and, and if the money is there to even do it.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't recommending that the planning commission adopt a transportation plan and come up with ideas as much as understand what are the current plans by the other organizations such that we can factor that in in terms of, of our decisions with regard to land use. If you're thinking, no, I think we want to play a more active role in actually determining the transportation strategies, that, that's a different element than, than kind of what, what, what I put forth, which was really just making sure we're in the know about what those long-term transit plans are versus influencing what those transit plans are, two different things. And I'm just saying, and we could, we could discuss, do we want to play a role in the, the, the broader picture of determining what those, those long-term transit strategies are? So that, that was just differentiating the, the two elements.
Vice Chair?
Commissioner Takahashi, would that be better as a study session?
Yes.
Could you define that study session, the parameters a little bit?
Well, again, it's, now, now we're talking about two different elements. So the first, the one I brought up really was a, a study to, to assess and understand all of the current and intersecting ongoing transportation plans that are in front of us as, as we currently know them, right? What does the VTA have planned? What, what is the city council thinking of any expansion of shuttles? Just so that we have that, that consolidated view of transportation. That, that's what I was, was, was advocating. The next step is who in the city really is trying to drive an integrated transportation plan that looks forward, that makes recommendations based on travel patterns and needs? So that's a different thing and is that something we want to, to, to bring forward as?
I believe those are two items, there are two individuals that are advocating that on the council. I believe Vice Mayor Paul and council member Sinks are advocates for that. So we do have some support there.
So, so I would just, I would just say that, that part of that is at the core of understanding, uh, of understanding transfer and being able to be, I don't know, so I'm, I'm the side of that which is really saying, take a bigger picture. You know, how do we, how do we be proactive on that? You know, what you do at the Oaks might be different if you, uh, if you, you know, if the, if you saw the growth pattern of the city, it'd be different. So I think that that's actually a discussion that's important to have. The, from a VTA standpoint, you know, the presence of Danza College is what drives the transit line there.
Right.
So I mean, there, there are other things, there are things along the way as well, but the presence of Danza College is what drives it. So, you know, because that's the interminus, you know, that, that, it's a natural place to live. But, but I, I think those are things that are, it's important to kind of collect up. If you have a chance to see the transform plan, the one that's, that's part of the Plan Bay, the Horizon, um, projects, there's actually a, there's actually a, uh, a long-to-short-term transit hub that would be, you know, in, in the core of Cupertino. Again, driven largely by the VTA, some of the VTA long, long-distance plans and the presence of Danza College. So, you know, that may, nothing may happen there, but, but that's, that's why it's, it's important to, um, study it.
Okay, so could we, um, please move the study session for the impact requirement for the next RENA cycle away from the, um, transportation items and consolidate so that we've got them all, all three grouped together? And I'm not sure we went in the right direction, uh, adding another item on transportation. But certainly, I, I think it demonstrates that we're in agreement that that needs to be pretty high on our list. So it, does anyone, um, object to seeing the batch of three go to the top? Does anyone object to that? And then I-
Chair Moore, I, I actually do kind of object, but I, I think it might be a more of a process objection. For me, like, my, my top three are, are item, line number three, study session for the, to preserve places.
Wait, hold on a second, because we're, let us adjust that really quick. So Chair Moore, you have wanted us to relocate Arena Cycle items so it doesn't get sandwiched in into transportation items. So we're attempting to do that right now, it's gonna get renumbered a little bit. We, in the discussion, uh, we pulled out the transportation to have a study session to understand existing transportation plans. So that's something you want to think about, you want to remove, keep, or merge?
Yeah, I was just saying priority items, like, for me, like, I, I, number three is something I'm very passionate about. I want to, I, I, something I think we should do a study session. Number four, something we can do easily, right? And number eight, I, I, I really do want to understand how that impacts us because there are huge planning implications on circulation when you look at that. So that, that's all I was trying to say, but, you know, I, I, if you bundled all the transportation, making the first three items in priority, that, or was it more processing, just leave them all together so we can all look at it? If it was the latter that made sense, if it was like, that was our prioritization for all three items were all transportation, that was the only thing we're going after, I kind of objected.
Is, is the RENA cycle, is it premature to be looking at it, one? And two, can we send that to housing?
RENA is actually, it's actually us, is it premature, it probably is. So maybe it's not a top three, maybe it just remains on the list as a, as a reminder.
I would just, so I, I would say actually, this is, this is for the fiscal year, which starts in the summer of 2020 and ends in 2021. You're very close at that point to where you have to be having a decision about what you're trying to approve in the housing element, in the next housing element.
We still have numbers though, right, at that point?
We, we should get numbers by April 2020, uh, by April 2020. Draft numbers by April 2020 and adopted numbers by the beginning of next year.
Yeah, so, so I think that that's, that's actually, um, in particular, if you want to meet the, if you want to meet the actual objective of what RENA is trying to say, we actually must entunnel many more homes. And, and we actually have to do that in an environment where there is, you know, uh, where you have to be looking at significant redevelopments in places that haven't been contemplated. So, uh, you know, I don't know, I would, I would actually, I would prioritize that one as my top, my top item. Although I think that, you know, in terms of actually being able to get anything, you know, to come to a conclusion on it, this is a multi-year effort.
So we wouldn't have final numbers until about this time next year, is that right?
That is my understanding at this point.
Generally, how do the numbers shift between preliminary and final? What have we seen that trend look like?
It's very hard to tell, it just depends on, you know, the draft numbers are based on a draft formula. And then it, I believe HCD has additional, um, abilities to amend that formula this time around as well. So, um, there, we really won't know what the numbers are until the very end. But with that said, um, I believe in Southern California, numbers have gone up by, up to 300%.
Yeah, I'm just, if we get preliminary numbers in April, how much can we act on that number and understand the risk of it changing at the end of the year such that we've wasted that effort? In other words, if the preliminary numbers are plus or minus 20% or something along those lines, then, um, it's worth our while to, to, to assess that versus if they, if it's, the preliminary number is- Versus if they, if it's, the preliminary number is X, and the final number could be anything from 3X to .5X, then does it, does it really merit us spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to hit a number that's a totally moving target? That, that's, that was the genesis of my question.
I think it would depend on the strategy that the city takes to accommodate the numbers that are given to us, because it could be a matter of considering densification versus seriously considering a lot of densification.
Just another thought on this. So if we get a preliminary number, and is the process in terms of the final number and the equation to get to the final number, you mentioned that the, the local jurisdiction's going to have some input into that, correct? So if we, as we look at the preliminary number, and we look at the potential sites and the potential densities of those sites, and say, we said, okay, your, your preliminary number is X, we've kind of more or less identified .5X, would that be able to influence the final number? In which case, it's, it's very valuable work to do that.
I'm sorry, it's way too early to speculate. I, we won't be able to give you a response.
I would, I would like to see this item dropped much lower on the list. And kind of like the discussion we had last year, you know, we turned out to be spot on about the ADUs to let's, let's wait and see what's going to happen. I think that when these, when these numbers, the preliminary numbers come out, there, you're going to hear quite an uproar in the area, you know, especially looking at the composition of that, the MTC, AAG board. You know, because I've been up there and I've, you know, I saw the list of names. And so I expect it's going to be a pretty jolting, you know, number that we're, that we're going to get. And the other issue is, you know, like I mentioned before, we had such an increase in, in jobs in Cupertino. And if they're going to use, you know, past performance and try to predict our future, you know, for, for what we need for housing based on, on, you know, the past, and we are not seeing anything in the future looking, looking similarly, that they, they could give us numbers which are, you know, like you're saying, if we get a number that's 300% higher, that has no connection to what we actually see in our future or what we have in our, in our general plan allocations currently. So I, you know, I would not jump the gun on saying, oh, we need to make, you know, put all these other sites and put them all in the housing element, because we might get a, we might get a number which has no connection to reality. So let's change the entire city planning. I would, I would wait and see. And, and don't even put it, don't even put, put it up high. Let city council make their decision when they see the numbers. And they, at any time, they can, you know, spot deliver a project on us and leave it at that and let them be, they're in charge, they're the leaders, let them make the decision for us.
Isn't what you just said rationale to actually get started earlier?
Oh, no, no. It's let, let, look at the numbers when they come out. Let city council look at it. One, if it's, if the number is completely unrealistic, it has nothing to do with, you know, reality, there's no, no math will make what they give us make any sense whatsoever, then the city council is going to need to be, you know, contacting MTC and AAG and letting them know, getting probably the city attorneys involved and, you know, writing up, you know, reasons for why, their rationale for why that what we were given for numbers makes no sense.
Right, but I would counter that with, if we do some work to determine what is the realm of the possible, independent of whatever that number is, that's going to be a valuable piece of information. Just from the standpoint of, based on our, the way our city's laid out, available space and available redevelopable parcels, this is the realm of the possible.
Well, we have, we have scenario B, we have the scenario B sites also to, to consider. But, you know, there's also this, this other, you know, sort of elephant in the room is that the developers have these allocations or they have these approvals and they're not doing anything with them. And, you know, it's, it's very frustrating. And, and we get hit with the housing bills, you know, because they're, because they're not building, we're not meeting our numbers. And anyway, that, going off on a tangent there. But I would not be, you know, stirring up a potential that we, we don't know is going to happen. Let's, you know, let city council look at it and follow their leadership.
So again, I think those things all point toward, we ought to be looking at it and understand, you know, understand. So the kinds of questions that are very useful to know when you're posed with a challenge is, you know, what does the inventory of developable sites look like? What does the model of how development looks, you know, five years from now? You know, because the density will be higher than 35 units per acre. And those sorts of things allow us to have an answer, rather than just kind of going, oh, my God, it's too big. We need to freak out with no information. This is what we're here for.
I think, I just want to suggest, I think we're at a point where, I mean, a lot of the arguments are made. It'd be good to find out what everyone's priorities are, and then we can start moving on to the columns, so.
So we've heard Commissioner Feng, number six as your, yeah, Commissioner Feng, number six as your, one of your priorities. Do you have two more you'd like to?
Yeah, sure. I think that I would actually put the, I'm trying to think of the right transit one here to do. Well, so I'd say one of the practical ones for me, I think my top one is RENA. The second one would be line five, the conditional use review. And line six, or not line six.
One starts before the other.
Yeah. Well, so I would say eight, just because that's, again, more actionable than nine.
Could you do nine without eight?
You could do either one without each other. But I think nine is, nine is closed, nine is more focused in, in size. So.
Nine is more focused than eight, is that what we're saying? No?
Oh, no, eight is more focused than nine, excuse me.
Right, nine is kind of boiling the ocean, solving world hunger, yeah.
Commissioner Takahashi, do you have your top three?
Yeah, I would agree eight. I think we want some quick wins. So I would agree the CUP. I think that's when we could actually get done.
If we're really any, acting in the interest of the community, we would pick four. Everybody should pick four as the first one, and then just take care of it really quick. But, you know, that's okay.
Yeah.
I would make that my number four.
Number and four for me would be my third.
I, I think we should have five, honestly, not just, not just the three here. And do I have agreement on that? Can we, can we increase our, our list to five? Because it's a pretty small list that we've ended up here with. So I'd like to go back to the other commissioners. Could you please add two more items to your three?
So right now, we have total 10 items, taking out line 10 and 12. We also had a public comment, which is, I think, line, see, there's more, right?
Put my name on the conditional use, add me there.
Well, I guess my, my point is, I, I think I would prefer if we stick with three, because we do have a list more than 10.
We did 15, 13 last year, right?
But the direction this year is?
Do less.
Three and 10. So.
I thought the direction said we could do more, though.
You can do a total number more, right? If we end up with 10, 15, 20, 30, 100, that's fine. But we want to focus on a few that we can digest.
Spread them out, baby.
But if there's consensus for the commission, you want to do five, you want to do five.
It makes sense to the council, right? Because they have the,
Well, if we each do three, I think we'll come up with five, right? In other words, right? At least, let's get Commissioner, Chair Moore, get yours in there. Yeah, exactly.
I, I don't know that, you know, doubling up on the item eight is, is a reasonable use of my vote if I'm only given three at this point, is that right?
Correct. So, so spread them out, and I might support you another one, so you can even it out.
We're going with three votes still, right?
Right, for now.
Commissioner Wong, you have to take, if you're going to,
Wait, it's, so, okay, so it's taking, it takes three votes to get it in the top three, you're saying?
No, no, I'm just saying, you each, you each pick your top three. And then we see how many we have against votes, and you can decide how many you want to keep.
Okay, so eight's, eight's already, eight's already in pretty much. And so we're going to go with five items, so eight's in, four and five are in, right? Those are already set, so I don't need to vote on either of those, correct?
No, not necessarily. I think what I thought you guys had talked about is you each pick your top three, whatever your top three are, right? And because right now, Chair, if you were to pick a different top three than the ones already have a name to it, you end up with, you know, seven items, for example.
Which is what we're trying to do, actually.
There is a method to this. We're, we're, see, we've been looking at the, the ADU rules too long. We're getting too clever for our own good. Okay, so I, I still take issue with separating out the transportation. I think that it was to our advantage if we kept it all under one and just did it as bullet points, because we could have gotten a lot more out of it. And now we've split our votes into three items. So I'm going to go with, I'm going to add the, let's see, I'll add seven, the study session on the VMT, and, let's see. And, you know, I, while I do agree with the R1 second-story addition item, I'm not sure that's the best use of a vote. And let's see, okay, I'm, I will go with that. Item four, review existing second-story additions. Let's see. And against my comments, I do go with item six, study session for the next RENA cycle.
So that would, just a quick look, that, there's four there that have at least two votes. So can we just go with those and call it a day?
Well, yeah. I've got a caught Bangler at midnight, so I'm okay.
Perfect, moving on to column C.
Would the individual, okay, so this first one, Ray Wong, would you please identify the project objective for that?
Yeah, identify potential areas in the general plan that are at risk. Develop, develop a, develop a plan to,
Specific businesses or area or zoning areas?
Zoning areas, zoning areas. So identify potential zoning areas in the general plan that are at risk, identify mitigation measures, and develop policies to, and develop policies to preserve these areas.
I would say that, that one is to streamline the process, gather community input to streamline the process for R1, for additions, for amendments to the CMC.
For line four?
Line four.
Oh, well, yeah. I mean, I think we actually can, can talk about, you know, we've identified an issue here where this is contentious in the community. The current, the current FAR rules are contentious related to the second floor, are contentious in the community, and we'd like to review them.
Commissioner Feng, could you just, you know, flesh out a little more for why it is contentious? I know we had that great example this year.
That was the best way to say that.
Was the balcony counted as square footage? There was an issue with that, and I think we just, if we can state that.
I think there's a, yeah, there's a general. Let me, let me speak to it and see if we can condense it.
Sure.
The current, the current building code favors development on the second floor because, because it doesn't count on the FAR. Favors development of decks and second-floor space, which leads to a lot of,
Strife.
Which leads to neighborhood issues. So I, I think that it's interesting here. I think that, another way to say it is, we see a pattern, we see a pattern of community issues with second-floor development, second-floor additions. And we'd like to look at the code to be more responsive to address those issues.
Would you like to mention privacy being an item in particular? Privacy and then, and then for that particular project, it was the size of the balcony, too. And, you know, proximity, looking over the backyard of the neighbors, all of that. So I think it just boils down to make it less contentious with regards to privacy, perhaps?
Again, if I could speak generally to it, I mean, I think that, that the city, the city code actually addresses things like the second, a second-story addition fairly well in terms of requiring screening, requiring window placement, requiring a number of different things. But those are not reflected in the regulations for decks, decks and balconies.
How about this way? Because I'm, I'm thinking about all the sides of the issue when we went through that. Identify a balance between property rights and privacy in specific communities. And I say that because each community is set up in a different way, and there's different norms in terms of how they view their space. So, something like that.
I know what you're saying. I think that it's interesting that the, it seems to me that in particular, the fact that architects turn to having a second-floor balcony because, because of the way it's counted, actually turns out to be, I believe, the highest issue, issue from the neighbors.
I live in a community where a lot of people do have the second-floor balconies. And the process that was made to talk to neighbors through that process to make it work seemed to be reasonable.
But those were added after the fact?
Those were all additions after the fact. They were all after the fact. But the challenge is that in some communities where they haven't gone through second-floor additions or in that kind of way, there, there's been a lot of resistance. So it's, I, I think it's, it's a very sensitive issue, because it is a balance of property rights. I paid a lot for the property, I'm going to do an addition. And, wait, I've lived here forever, and, wait, you're looking into my kitchen, right? So I think that's, I don't know how to put that in a more elegant way.
I think it does boil down to, to privacy. I just want the, the project objective to be, have enough information here that when this goes to city council, that they know what we're talking about. So when we're saying, we have a statement here that says, it makes it less contentious. So I think we need to be more, more specific about, you know, what about it is making it, what about it is contentious? And so, for instance, with the balconies, for instance, can create privacy issues with the neighbors. Maybe just something simple like that.
How to find a balance between property rights and privacy. I think that's what we're talking about here.
I think, I think that that statement, you know, as long as you get the word privacy in, in there, that they, they'll be able to follow, city council will be able to follow what, what the issue is and what our objective is. Commissioner Feng, would you please, you know, put the project objective for the municipal code conditional uses item?
I think that this is to, to look at an update of conditional, of the parameters of conditional use.
Hours of operations, do you want to be specific or just?
Yeah, for instance, hours of operation and,
Let me just steal this and just move it over. Like take this part and just move it over to here, and I'll just save you some time.
Yeah. I, I think the other things we want to look at there is to look at, to look at current practice, you know, current, current best practice. This is one that, it's an interesting one because, because of the nature of,
This is one that, it's an interesting one, because, because of the nature of conditional use permit approval, this, the council doesn't see that. So, you know, we haven't had a lot this year, but in the past, we have had a lot of these. Where, you know, I think that the issue is largely, you know, that we had something which may have been outdated for the kinds of uses, current uses.
I think we have enough information on that item, so the next item, study session for the impact and requirements for the next arena cycle. So we're going to be looking at the preliminary arena numbers and potential, how we're going to resolve those, those numbers with what we have in our general plan. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, review preliminary arena numbers and extrapolate what impacts future arena or final arena numbers may have. Yeah, actually, I, I think we actually want to look at strategies for meeting, the arena requirement, arena requirements in the future.
High level, high level.
Yeah. And that, including looking at, looking at potential developmental sites. And
I don't know necessarily that we're, we're gonna be at the point where we're evaluating high-level strategies, we're gonna be creating them, you know, generate strategies to accommodate these new numbers.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's really a matter of how do we, how do we effectively, you know, it's to look at the possibilities of how we would, how we would meet those.
Repeat that last part?
It's looking at the strategies, at strategies and possibilities to, for arena compliance.
I don't know that we necessarily need more for item seven. Let's wait a second. There, joint session with ERC.
Actually, before, before you go off of six, I think, can we add, if you can add a notation in there about what, what we believe the timeframe to be? Which is, you know, we expect arena numbers at a certain time, and that we would be working on the housing element at a certain time.
Yeah, I think we'll have another column later on.
I, I think, I think perhaps the, the project objective for this item, item seven should not necessarily be joint session with ERC, but that would be more of like how it's gonna get implemented. So the, the project objective, because it's a study session, is, is it simply to understand the difference of VMT versus LOS? Or, you know, what would you like to see here, Commissioner Feng?
This is to understand the, the difference in building form resulting from a change from LOS to VMT. And I would add to understand the impact of not calculating LOS.
I'm not sure how you get to differences in building form when you're looking at a, a difference in a, in a transportation study. I don't, I don't get the jump to building form.
In San Jose, what happens is that it is, you know, much higher, much greater densification. What VMT does is it creates a higher densification and assumes that your neighborhood does not believe in cars or modes of vehicle transportation, and assumes that mass transit will take over. Whereas LOS considers the fact that the reality in your neighborhood may actually have more cars than, than what people are looking on VMT. And that's the trade-off, even though the state has already made their decision. As planning commissioners, it's important that we actually think about the facts and study objectively, see what the impact is on what people are facing today over the next three, five, seven, maybe in 10 years. And, and so by having both on, both, both metrics there, you understand the impact of not calculating LOS when you're looking at VMT and what your current situation is, so you can plan for the future.
Wow.
I, I wouldn't actually agree with some of the, some of the comments with the cars. I, I think that, you know.
Could we move on to the next project objective and see if we're okay with that? Because that sounds like it's a hot topic. So item eight, study session, to understand existing transportation plans. So we already have a project objective, understand how VTA and our local transit intersects and how it affects local land use decisions. Are we all good with that project objective?
I would just say current directions in VTA and local transit development.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Are you trying to change the project objective, or delete it and reinsert, you know, some other language there?
Oh, no, so the goal is, the goal is to not, it is, I don't want to say this. This is the distinction between the two points. One was proactively trying to, trying to drive, drive transportation planning, and this is more to understand things that are in the pipe. So I, I think it's really, that's the current, current efforts, or, you know, or near-future efforts.
Essentially, what's in the pipeline.
Yes.
Plan, planned efforts. Oh, so, so change existing to planned?
Is that good?
So we're on item nine, correct? Study the transfer, study of, how about study the, study the city transportation? No, no, no. Study of the transportation of the city and impact on land use. We need to fix that sentence.
Talking about transportation elements here? This is the proactive version of that.
Of circulation.
Will you start, will you start to talk about, what are the things, what are the things we need, and how do we? How do we shift our plan to match that?
Are you okay with adding, for item nine, proactively study? Transport, you have to fix the rest of the sentence.
Yeah, yeah, we need to fix the wording.
Yeah. How about identify implementation measures for transportation of the city and impact on land use? Because eight says, here's what happened. Nine says, hey, here's what you should be doing.
Yeah.
Why don't we just call it future of transportation? Or future transportation planning?
I would just say that it's a needs analysis, you know, it's kind of a needs analysis is what's driving that. This one is, this one is a low priority on, on the overall list, so I don't, I don't know that we need to put a lot of effort into it. I think that, yeah, it's good.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. So our next one is, is low priority, oversight of public works department by the planning commission, and there's some question of our, our authority there. And we do have a project objective to ensure collaboration and citizen oversight and consistency of projects. Anyway, it's, that has a low priority, if, if anyone wants to add more to the project objective to make it clearer.
I do. Project objective, study, make a recommendation to council as to where public works oversight should be and what items the planning commission should take. Not oversight, input, using the wrong word here. It's, it's more about the, where, where we should have some input, or citizen input representation.
You're, you're referring to public works projects?
Number 10.
Yeah, projects, right?
I'm actually thinking bigger than projects, but I think what will happen is, they will have to divide some of their projects into existing commissions, or we'll, there will be a new commission created, or one commission will take that over. But I think that's up to council to figure out, but I want to raise that point.
Sorry, you said, something bigger than projects? What's bigger than projects?
Well, it might be oversight of the entire, not oversight, well, we're using the word oversight here, but there needs to be an equivalent on the, on the, at a department level to commission alignment. You know, Ben, we have a public review process to approve a building project, but it's, it's different for the, the, you know, some of the things, the capital projects and things are different than that. So there, there's, there is a review process. I mean, it comes here, we, we do talk about, about things on that list, but it's a different.
Sure. So just to help us finish that sentence, to make a recommendation to city council on?
Make a, make a recommendation to city council on where public works projects and plans fit within planning oversight, I guess. Is that what we're saying? If you're gonna make a recommendation, I think it is, you know, to consider having a public works commission. I would say, consider having a public works commission, or where public works projects belong in other commissions such as planning. Yeah, public works commission, or distribute, or distribute, yeah.
That actually makes more sense.
For public review.
Good. Okay, and item 11, study session related to legislative review. You know, I, I actually appreciate that this item was, was saved. The project objective, however, is this, are we, what kind of legislative review, what are we looking for here specifically?
I, I think what we're asking here, Chair Moore, is that, that we are ahead of the legislative issues that occur. And, and it's almost as, we're saying, if the legislative review committee is there, is getting a study session or getting at least a monthly update on legislative changes that may impact us. I think that's what the objective was. I, I wasn't sure. If there's another way to communicate it without having a study session, or if the objective is here to actually share with the public what that is, so that it's distributed much more broadly, then, then it makes sense to have it here.
Okay, so, do I have this right? We have a project objective for it currently saying ongoing annual study session. Is that, is that what we want to do? Maybe something in the summer?
The frequency is a little bit higher, but, but we won't know, because most of the bills are passed at a certain point.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, so I would actually. Tends to be at the January 1st.
I would actually say rather than, rather than before they pass, that there is a, there is a value in having a, this is actually what passed. And because of the legislative schedule, where these typically will happen, you know, they typically get passed at the end of September. That's an appropriate time to have a, you know, here is a, you know, CAO's office review of new legislation.
Right. It's been passed, it's coming.
Yeah. Right. And then, you know, and that divides up by different, different categories, so.
I, I think I'd kind of like to see an earlier, an earlier study session. And the reason, and, and I know we're focused on housing, but there, you know, there's, there's SEQA changes that are, that are made. And, you know, other, you know, like, like the, the VMT came through.
Yeah, it's not just housing. I mean, it could be marijuana, it could be other things. It could be like drug use, it could be, you know, I mean, other things that pop up.
Oh, absolutely, because there was one, and I, I believe it was stalled off, but the last I heard, it was to require that for every, every six liquor licenses that you had in a city, you needed to provide a, one marijuana dispensary, and it originally came out as being four. It was, and that, that one did get stopped, but it, it might, that might get, put, get going again. So the, the only reason why I mentioned having it earlier in the year is if we want to, you know, suggest to city council, or just to get the information out to get public involvement. For instance, if SB 50 is moving through this year, and we might want the public to be more informed about it in case they, you know, want to write the, the senators about it. Or if there's other, other laws that, other bills that we want the public to, to know about, so that they can get involved. I think that, that rather than doing it after the fact, we might be helping the community out better if we catch, catch some of these in midstream. I don't know what you think about that. So essentially, you would have two.
In, in concept, I, I, I would agree with that. I think the challenge is going to be, legislation changes dramatically from proposed to what's, what's, what's actually passed. And so, we'd be, we'd be after a moving target, so, and as well as some just die, right, and, and don't get passed. So I don't want us to create a, a lot of extra effort when it, it might not be applicable. So just, that's the balance, I think, we need to strike.
Well, okay, so it could be that, you know, we, we leave it in the hands of the legislative review committee and, and have them, like they did last year, because, you know, and I, and I also followed these bills through. And, and they did change, and some of them, and some of them died, you know, for instance, we started with 200 housing bills, we ended up with 18 in the end.
Right.
And, and like the, the one Jennifer Griffin mentioned, that started as, I think it was 827, and it died, and then they gutted and amended another bill. And it, and then that one was stopped, and now we've got SB 50 resurrected again, and we're looking at it. So, yeah, it goes through all sorts of changes.
That would be, seems like a.
So let the legislative review committee look at it, and we're just gonna look at it at the end.
Right.
Okay, good. So one after October 1st, most likely.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, whatever time is appropriate, but I would bound that for, for our purpose to land use-related legislation.
Land use includes SEQA. Land use, yeah.
It does, but it probably doesn't include cannabis.
Land use, though. It gets into land use.
For retail.
Any updates to the project objectives for number 11? Which is what you're talking about just now? Yeah, is that good?
That's good.
All right.
Perfect. Okay, support of the mental health community website, yes. Does anyone have any changes for item 12? Evaluation of the city's fiscal future, project objective, how does the planning affect the tax revenue for the city, and how it mitigates efficiencies in terms of cost? And I, I agree with that project objective. Any changes? Item 14, infrastructure of the city's sewer plan and water treatment. I actually said sewer, water, street, and traffic, and then I added electric. If we could just add electric onto that, and the project objective is simply to get a status update of, you know, are we, are we near capacity? And are there any policy items that we want to change?
I, I would, I would add things like connectivity, like 5G in here as well, if you're gonna hit all the infrastructure.
Tick. That gets into tick. I don't, I don't know if we want to touch that.
Okay, we'll stay out of their business.
You know, I, I don't think it's, it's a bad idea to find out what, you know, tick is looking at, because they are talking about all of these sensors.
When it comes to the cell tower.
That's why I'm asking, actually, but.
Well, you could add that for infrastructure.
Cell towers.
Cell towers, yes.
Transmission towers.
Do we want more on project objectives for that, for item 14, or updates?
Maybe we can say provide updates?
Provide updates. Yeah, status updates.
Status update. Provide status update, update.
Okay. So item 16, I'm not sure. So the project objective is simply to find out what the environmental screening levels are going to be for the import of soil at Lehigh.
So it was skip 15.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The lines kind of merged.
That one was a problem. Should that, are we gonna keep that one on the list?
I would like to keep item 15 on the list, but it's gotta be a little bit broader, and I think that's one example of something that's happening today. I would say in the, in the emails today that I received, there was a notice given to 10 homes, or five homes off of Lori in Rancho in Canada, and they basically were told that, you know, we're, we're thinking about putting a gate, you know, next to your open area, so kids can come in and out. And by the way, you know, someone discovered it was more than a gate, and that was kind of a problem. And so the question is, like, how do we handle those kind of situations where we intersect between school district and neighborhood rights, and what's the jurisdiction, what's the planning? So I think, I think there's a bigger issue there, and this is just one example of it.
So can, Vice Chair, are you able to articulate a project objective for that?
Well, there's definitely many efforts currently ongoing with probably the teen commission, the safety commission, and maybe bike ped as well. So, understanding what all those are, to some, something that's a cohesive assessment of that. I don't know what our role is, to be honest, in terms of, of this, because it's, it's, I mean, it's definitely an issue, but there's a lot of people that are weighing in to some, in some way, shape, or form.
I think Commissioner. Well, I think Commissioner Hachey has a good point. I, I think, I don't personally have time to watch all the videos for all the commissions, and not all the commissions have videos and meeting minutes. And I don't have time to attend all of them, but it might be a good idea at some point where we bring common commissions together to this meeting, as a way to kind of share information. And then use that as a vehicle to then address problems like this.
How about if we say, provide status updates?
I would say that's probably not enough, but I think it's a good start. I would say that not only provide status updates, but maybe bring. I would say that's probably not enough, but I think it's a good start. I would say that not only provide status updates, but maybe bring some commissions here, just so that we improve the collaboration. Because we don't always get to see everybody at different times, so.
That's good.
Maybe also an increase collaboration with other commissions.
Yeah, I actually, I actually think that some of what he's talking about here is interagency. So there's generally an issue around, how do you handle, you know, this is, the Lehigh thing is the same way. It is across jurisdiction.
This, this, you're right on the bigger issue. This one's just within our own jurisdiction.
Well, if you're talking with a school, it's not.
As a city.
Yeah, if you're talking with the schools, it's not, though. So, so I think that this actually, you know, interjurisdictional things, interagency things, pretty much live in the council until they send it somewhere else. So, I don't know, I-
It's out of our jurisdiction.
I would, I would, I would suspect so. I mean, I would, I would not prioritize it high enough that this is a, you know, you know, an issue for a planning commissioner for the Community Development Department.
I think you already have your top four, right, and the rest will just be in a second category.
All right, could someone let me know what item we are on right now?
Number 16.
16, okay. So I was a little confused about what that previous comment was regarding. Okay, so, item 16, the import of soil to Lehigh Cement Plant and the contamination. The project objective is simply to determine what the environmental screening levels are for imported soil. And that's it. Anyone want to add to that? Okay, so item 17, joint session by the commissions of the SEQA requirement presentation as, sorry, previously presented. Actually, we kind of broadened this during the discussion, that, you know, like if we have a project, a large project like the Valco project, that we would want to have an overview of the environmental impact report for the public and the process. And, and provide some instruction for, for their feedback as well, in order to, you know, educate both the commission and the public. And it should probably happen during the noticing period, when it's, when the item is out for public comment, if we're, if we're going to be doing that. And that, that's something that, you know, I think city council would probably need to weigh in on, because it's going to, that would take a lot of resources to put together. So the project objective would be educate the public on the SEQA process.
As a resident of the Lehigh Valley for 16 years, just saying on line 16, Lehigh spelled without an I, so it's just L-E-H-I-G-H. And lived with Lehigh Cement for 16 years.
Actually, you know, it's interesting, when, when a large project comes for a scoping session, EIR scoping session, are you guys organizing that? Or somebody else? Is the city manager's office? You know, it's often a consultant doing it, so.
Yeah, it is the planning department that arranges the scoping session, and then the comment meeting as well, during the public comment review period.
I think that this actually would be, this would be addressed by, you know, enhancing the content of the scoping session introduction.
That's, that's actually a great idea, because I, we had some, some public comment sessions that, basically you walked into the room, and there was just a mic set up, and we were recorded. And, and it would have been great to have some more education about the process that we were, that we were entering into. Now, could someone remind me what item 18, development accountability is? Oh, this has to do with developer agreements, correct?
Yeah, that was from the previous year. We could copy over what language we had previously.
Let's do that.
Let's do that.
And then you have one last item that was taken from the public. I don't know if you want, you want to keep that, or, number 19.
So, item 19 is examine the potential for self-governance. Does, does anyone have some more information about that?
I, I would actually like that to be a council issue, but not necessarily a planning commission issue. I think that's actually not within our jurisdiction, but we should look at that as an option. I think a number of cities across California are looking at that at the moment, to get out of the current restrictive and very abusive practices that are going on in Sacramento. So I, I'd just say that, that's recommend that to council for them, but I don't think we should have this on this list right now.
Is this, is this item suggesting changing from a general law city? Is that, is that what you're looking at? Because-
Going deeper than that, right? Can we bring her up? Yeah, your chair can-
Up to you, Chair.
Jennifer Griffin, will you please help explain this item for us? And because this is a study session, there's technically not a time limit on this comment.
Oh, this is good. I keep looking. Is this PowerPoint? Yeah, I, I did this at some point. Okay, so this one, my comment was, when I brought this up originally during the comment period, it was the bill, examine the city's rights to self-governance and not to have their ability to self-govern be stripped away at the state level. Now, I don't know whether, in terms of a charter city versus the general law, I know a little bit about that. But what my goal here was, that cities have inalienable rights as community units, such as the counties also. And what, what can we do to protect the city, the rights of cities? Maybe that's where we're going. The rights, the right of Cupertino to exist as a city with its own rules and regulations, and not have that be stripped away at the state level. The protection of the city as a city unit, the protection of the county areas as county units, and not have their rights be trampled upon by Sacramento. We've never done this before. This is happening in, in Oregon right now, because the cities are being forced to examine their boundaries. This is an issue in Oregon, because the municipal cities cannot expand their boundaries by law. We don't have that problem. We are, we have the right to protect ourselves as a city unit and not be trampled upon and messed with by the state.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jennifer.
I would say, oh, sorry, I would say the objective here, and it's just coming from the National League of Cities, and I think it's a, it's a great title, restoring city rights in the era of preemption. That's your objective.
Okay, all right. I, I do want to add a point about this.
Era of preemption.
Regarding the litigation that they had over the Housing Accountability Act in San Mateo County. And in, in that lawsuit, the judge commented that, that it was unconstitutional. And the Attorney General, to my knowledge, the governor has directed the Attorney General to look into that case. They are a charter city, and I, I think there was some attempt to, you know, to, to claim that the charter cities did not have to follow some of these laws. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'd like to also know if, if becoming a charter city does protect us or not. And it's, I, I had thought at one point that it would have, but now, after seeing this, the Attorney General getting involved, that I don't, not entirely sure. So that would need some, probably our city attorney's office would need to let us know about that.
We also could be a sanctuary city for some of these housing laws. That's something that people looked at, so.
I'll, I'll just come with the text of, a lot of the legislation does explicitly call out that the problem is of a state, state interest in it, the laws therefore apply to both general law and charter cities.
Which is one legal, which is one legal interpretation, so, yes.
So the next column is, next column is driven by, may I just suggest driven by the planning commission, as it is from the planning commission, and we can move on to column E.
May I ask how this, the, these headings were derived, or is this just like how it's, convention, how it was done last year?
I think it's part, partially based on how it was done last year, as well as an attempt to, I guess, modifying the study. Is this somewhat of a new process for the city? So, it's a work in progress.
And, and I'm not sure that we're, I think, I don't know that we are the best judge for the resources needed for some of these items.
Yes, you are. So, so the direction given to us is that, for all these items that the city really wants, the commission to take considerations of the resources. When you make certain decisions or recommendations, so, obviously, you don't need to know exactly what it needs, it just kind of ballpark what you think that might require for these items. And, and you're not, you're not bound by the number. Let's say you say it needs 100 hours and 25 employees, but, well, you know, that may not be the most realistic. But it's just an exercise to get you, so to get used to thinking about these things.
Okay, so, so for item four, review the existing R1 second-story additions and consider including second-story balconies and decks as far. You know, I could be completely way off, but I think it could take, you know, half a day at most.
Yep.
To make a municipal code change for that, and that's, that's all I think. Now, what if the reality is, no, it takes, you know, it, it's going to be an ongoing process, it's going to take three weeks, and you're going to need to have, you know, two, two different attorneys to, to look at it. And it's going to be, you know, 20 hours.
So that would be my, that would be my job, right, as well as city manager's job to kind of fine tune that particular item. So it's not like the item will be strictly, and then no longer exist. We'll, we'll find a way to kind of fine tune that. And I understand that you may not know exactly what that will entail, but it's, again, it's an exercise that the city will like, council will like commissions to consider, so.
Okay, well, we can also game the system and put some somewhat borderline fake numbers on these items, in order to give them the impression that, that these items are really simple, and that they should, you know, go along with our prioritization.
Turn it up to you. I think the Vice Chair has, has it up?
Chair Moore, I, and Director Fu, I would actually push back on this and say, we will defer to your judgment, because we really don't know, like, how much legal review is going to require, how much planning staff time, how much work you guys have done already in the past that can support that. And for us to put a guess out there, I, I think would be a disservice to you. So we would take your recommendation, so.
When, when, when the department heads and also the city manager get together and evaluate these projects, that's, that's when we'll evaluate all these different columns, right? So, the other commissions have begun to assess all the columns. So if you want, if you wish to leave, just leave a blank. That's, that's, that's up to you.
Okay, so for item three, Vice Chair, you've got the study session to preserve places that support daily living, such as pharmacies, grocery stores, hospitals, and energy sources, avoid a food desert. So, I think you could think about the different, the, the kinds of data that you would need to be collected, and then you're also looking at some kind of policies that you, you're wanting to go along with that. So you need to know, this is, this is the existing situation, and this is what you, I want to see preserved, and this is the, the policies, the legislation that, that you think needs to go along with that. So, try to, try to come up with a number for it.
Well, as, as a-
Well, we're just guessing. I mean, we're totally just guessing.
Well, as a, as a, as a former management consultant, I would say that, you know, you're, you're going to spend at least 40 hours to review, you know, existing, you know, existing, existing areas, right? To identify existing areas. It's going to take you another 40 hours to at least come up with a policy or a plan to get there, right? Then you're going to have a series of public input sessions. I don't know what those take, so add your public input sessions in there, right? And then if I had to scope this in, like, I, I think you're going to have some legal review and legal challenges, and you're going to burn at least 100 hours of legal time, right? But I have no idea what that costs, and even then, I think I'm underestimating this by a lot. So, but if I had to scope something on the fly, that's what I would say, that, that's how much you're going to use. And then you have outside consultants that are also going to play a role here, right, because we're, we're doing something a little bit new here, so.
So, so now you feel my pain as we go through the whole program for, for departments, or stuff like this.
Totally, I mean, this is a study session. We're just pulling numbers out of our, right?
Correct.
So, I say it's, it's one hour of work. So what are you going to do with that?
Right.
I mean, so, this, this is, to go through this whole list and go through this process, to me, seems like, I, I opt for the leave it blank strategy.
And, and that would be a feedback we can provide back to the city manager's office as well for next year.
Because we really don't, we've got these grand concepts, but, but to really understand what it's going to take, we need, we need somebody that is paid to do this and assess this. And, and, because we don't have all the understandings and ins and outs associated with that, and it's, we're definitely not paid to do that.
Right. Please respectfully tell the city manager that we trust and defer to your judgment.
I think it's from the city council, but, so, 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 as, as an example, last year, our department had a huge list of work items, that's planning, building, housing, and code enforcement. So all four divisions within one department, and a, a lot of those items, resources were not necessarily considered in, in great detail, right? So when it ends up on the list, then we have to, I and staff, we have to go through and look at those and evaluate the resource needed, whether it's consultants, and X number of dollars, and staffing to, to support that effort. But, but in that exercise, it was almost too late of an exercise to remove anything from the item. So, this has been a very challenging year to, to basically meet, I want to say 90% of those items with limited staff we have, the budget, and the consultants, right? So I think what this exercise is trying to do for, for the council is for everybody in the city to kind of start thinking about, what, what does that request potentially could mean? Obviously, you don't have the expertise for that, and so if you want to leave a blank, I understand, we'll, that be the feedback we'll provide back.
Yeah. So, so my feedback is that last year, this was not a process we did in one shot. So I would actually say that, I think we've given you a good understanding of what we expect these points to mean. It would be great to come back with an estimate, a guesstimate.
Guesstimate.
Yeah, so we're not coming back. So last year, it was a one shot. Every year, it's always a one shot, right? Every year, we're always one shot. We go over the list casually for last year, and we talk about items for this year, we'll put on there, we forward it to city council, city council then will look at a city as a whole, and approve a list for, for every commission.
We, we did a prioritizing exercise across multiple, multiple sessions, though, and that was very early in the, in the year, right?
I, I think, I think some of us weren't here, that's why.
I think that was, that was just one, but, I mean-
Well, so, so I would just say that one of the things that's an important part, an important part of the input there, is if, if you come back with estimates of how much this costs, that may actually change our priority.
Is it really worth that much of city's resources for this one element versus another element below it? That might be one-tenth the cost, and we would say, no, we, we feel like we should rearrange those priorities. So, so can we make a, something along the lines of a statement of utilizing the costs associated with each of these efforts to help prioritize, or something along those lines? If that makes sense?
What's the, what's the point that you're trying to make with that?
Trying to make, okay, so, so, each of these has a cost that, that we really don't know what that cost is, right? So, as staff estimates that cost, because we just do not have the ability to estimate that cost, and, and there's, right? I mean, I think we're all pretty smart, but we're totally guessing, and, and everybody's guess is very different. But can staff, as they, as opposed to being locked into these priorities, and this is our demand, that some level of rational thinking with regard to cost to implement some of these be weighed at either city council? Or as city manager looks at all of these together?
Sure, I think that's a great comment. If we can, if you can repeat that, we can actually type that in that column and have that reflected on the entire column, right?
Right, so, okay, so.
Wait a minute. So, does that mean we're not going to even, you know, take a stab at this? You know, because I, I could probably, at this point, go down the list and just throw, throw hours on these things, you know, say 20 hours on four, you know?
Yeah, I don't know what the point of that is, though, because we, we don't, we're, I have, I have an issue with just guessing.
Well, we can kind of comparatively come up with-
Commissioner Moore, you, you have a rough idea, right? You're not just guessing.
Right, right, so I mean, for, for your-
I'm Chair Moore, sorry.
Right, right, for, for your study session, you can say, what do you have, 40, 40, public input, 100 legal, 100 legal, plus legal. So you could say, what do you got, 200, 200 hours? And just say, basically what that number is saying is, I think this is going to take a lot of resources. And then the next one, say, put 20 on there.
Well, do we want to do it that way, or just say resource, believe resource is high, medium, or low?
We're going HML?
I like that.
Okay, let's go HML, and then defer to staff. But, but I'll, I'll give you an example, and, and it's not, not because it's late and I really want us to get us past midnight, which is not what I'm trying to do. But, but review conditional uses in municipal code. There's one way to do it, is take all the input from all the business leaders, go to like three places that actually represent the Chamber of Commerce, the people that interested businesses, and say, hey, what's not working? And then review your list, right, and that's really just like three meetings, and, and then, you know, rest is actually staff time trying to figure out, hey, how to implement that, and, and something in place. Or it could actually be even more comprehensive than that, and that's- And that's, that's why it's kind of interesting, because once you know the cost, you can figure out how to scale, scale down.
Yes.
Or scale up.
Right.
We can certainly do the, the, the high, medium, and low.
Sure.
We want staff of that. So let's start with item line three.
Okay, so, so basically what we're saying is we need, we're, are we going to have some statement here that says that, that we, you know, we do not feel comfortable providing, you know, the hours and actual funding amounts?
So we'll, we'll communicate that.
Great. Okay, so do we agree that this is high on this item?
Hold on, before we, before we do that, high, like, so how many hours is low? How many hours is medium? And how many hours is high in your opinion? And that will help us think what high, medium, low might look like. Right, so is a thousand hours like high or is that medium?
Well, a thousand hours will be high. So for example, you chime in too, right? So for line three, for example, for example, if you want to say 400 hours plus outside consultants, right? To me, that's, that's fairly high in terms of hours and the cost.
Now, isn't this something that you probably are more knowledgeable about putting those than we are?
But that's a different exercise, right? This is for the planning commission exercise.
So you want, we're going to make, we're going to take a stab at it.
Yes.
You're going to look at it.
Yes.
And probably laugh a little bit.
Not at all. No, no.
And then you're going to put the real, the real quantities on there.
I, I think the real, not real, because it's still an estimate, right?
But a professional estimate.
So for example, look at.
I think it's, it's a way for us to communicate how we believe the scale of the projects are relative to each other. I think that that, that has some value, but I don't know. You know, it's interesting, right? Three is.
Sounds a bit like a 70s game show. You know, how much does it cost? And we don't, yeah, there you go.
And you've won a trip too.
All right, okay, so for item three, is that, is that high?
I, I think it could be medium.
I think it's a medium.
Okay, so, all right, so we've got medium on three. Item four.
Low.
Low, we're all good. Five, I mean, let's see, we have three, four, five.
So low is like, what, under 100 hours?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, let's say, let's just draw the line there.
50?
I'm just going to say one thing, just to put this in perspective. Last time we opened up the R1 ordinance, it took about a year to get that done and that was.
Two years, I'm hearing from the peanut gallery.
Probably closer to two. So I just wanted to put that in perspective. When you said low, I had one eyebrow that I can't raise, but I want to know that. But I just wanted to put that in perspective before you made that decision.
I, I actually was, I was actually thinking about a medium there where I think that, I would actually say that some of these things which are a single point, study session may be qualified for low, but any, anything that's, that's involving, involving the code, I would actually suggest that we move that to a medium or medium low if you.
Now, we're not going to a five scale?
Yeah, if you, if it's a scale of five, then, then I would say it's medium low.
Okay, do we just keep it medium?
I actually think three is really bad.
Let's just leave it medium since we're really guessing. Let's not specifically guess. Great. So five, do we have medium on that one also?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, six, study session, Rena cycle.
Is large.
High.
Could be.
Takes away your one hour study session argument.
Study session for VMT instead of LOS.
That's medium.
Yeah, probably, medium?
Yeah, sure.
I actually, I wonder, you know, if you guys want to correct that to low, that's okay. I think that it, it's interesting, right? This is a, this is a known thing, so, so if it's a matter of finding a consultant who comes and gives that presentation, that may have been the.
So I, I would say that it is a known thing if you agree with VMT. It is, it takes a little bit harder if you're trying to put the LOS back in and, and argue that side. That's why it takes a little bit longer. But for a lot of these study sessions, actually, as, we were talking about this earlier, kind of in a sidebar, like, it's almost like, why are we having a consultant here? Like, people actually physically have to come see it. Just put in a Linda course and then just bring the guy in for Q and A or girl in for Q and A. It'd be so much faster and cheaper for everybody, right? So here's the video, here's three videos you can watch and we're going to bring an expert in just do Q and A and save everybody some time.
Yeah, it's just, whether that video exists or not is the, the challenge.
Only make it once and they can make tons of money on it later.
So do we have an agreement on the resources needed, medium or low?
Well, if you do the video, it's low. If it's, if it's a little bit something else, it'd be like medium.
Well, so I think that one of the things, and this, this comes through repeatedly on a number of these points, if we are having a presentation, an educational presentation, then that, that is lower than something where it is intended to be advocacy. So in that respect, I don't think that, you know, I don't agree that with the advocacy.
Well, either way, it is advocacy, depending on your point of view, right?
Is this, are we having a debate for whether this should be medium or low?
I think so.
Yes, we are. We actually are. Because depending on how far you, that's what I'm saying, like, each of these are, let, let's go with low, medium for now. That's fine.
Commissioner Takahashi, do you prefer medium or low for this item?
I think it's going to turn into a medium.
Okay.
I think we're, I think it's going to be low, but I think it'll turn into a medium.
I agree with medium, so, medium.
You can, you can just change that to medium. I mean, I think it's conceivable. I don't, I don't think that's the most, when it moves from low to medium, that's when it becomes a less useful, a less useful presentation for the community, but.
Okay, well, we've, we've put in, put a value there and, and staff can correct it.
Yep.
Okay, so item eight, study session to understand existing transportation plans. Under, okay, so the project objective is to understand how planned VTA service and local transit intersects and how it affects local land use decisions. That seems kind of complicated to me.
Well, if it's just a presentation, then it's pretty low, back to Commissioner Fung's point, right? I mean, they're going to present, we're going to ask some questions, they're going to say, ah, MTCs, that's how it's going to work.
Right, it's, there's two levels there. One is to collect information about what those projects are. The other is a wrapper around it that says, you know, how does this fit with the, you know, with the, with the way we're approaching planning here, right? Either way, I think that this is getting to be the category where it can be a low or a low medium.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, so Commissioner Fung, do you, do you view item eight as being the lower cost item than item nine? So that if we make item eight the low, then, then nine would become medium? Does that sound right? Nine is the future, future transportation needs. So you're looking at medium or possibly high for that or?
I think that, I think that nine is higher than eight, would be one step higher than eight.
Okay, so we've got low, okay, great. So eight low, nine medium, and oversight of public works department by the planning Vice Chair?
I would say that's probably medium.
Other estimates? I have no idea either.
It could be a very fast decision by council, so.
Okay, just medium seems safe there. Okay, study session related to the legislative review of land use. Because there's already a legislative review committee, I would say that this should be low.
Low.
I would agree with low.
I, I think this is something that if it, if it's done by the CAO's office, then this is something that they'll be doing for multiple places, you know, whether they bring somebody in or whatever, it's for multiple places. So I think this is a low. It's largely scheduling.
So I think we agree on low for that, item 11. So we're on item 12, website for mental health resources. I would assume that would be low.
I would assume that's out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, this is, this helps emphasize some of these things where, you know, should we even be putting resources in? I mean, we already put this in city manager's office, so we can put that as none.
I think we identified, we just put CMO just so that we, we can remember, but it's going to come off your list.
So we're going to, we're going to make that a.
It's not actually on your list.
Yep, all right.
Or not applicable.
Okay, item 13, evaluation of the city's fiscal future, which is ironic because we're looking at the cost of values right now. I don't know. I would say medium, but.
Could, could require some consultant work. I think medium is probably a safe place to start.
Right, I mean, basically what it is, is it's forecasting tax revenues going forward, forecasting available land uses that are available to increase tax uses, and then forecasting population growth, layering the population growth on top. I mean, there's, there's work there that people.
But there's also retail trends.
Retail trends.
Yeah.
So this, this rapidly turns into the, you know, so, you know, it would, then high from, from the impact to put this together and, I don't know.
I think I agree with that, that it's high, yeah, great. Okay, so item 14, it's a, a status update on the, on the city's infrastructure. I'm going to assume medium, anyone else?
Low, maybe?
Yeah, I think, I think that this one, we want to give the direction that it'd be low so that it is status, it's a status update, you know, that comes on a, on a regular basis as that information is available, rather than something that's a big.
To do.
Development, developmental project.
All right, so we're in agreement to have it be low?
Yep.
Okay, great, great. Item 15, study existing school traffic and safety.
Chair Moore, can I make a suggestion?
This is more collaboration.
I think the project objective and the project task need to be switched.
Or 15?
And, and, and that's one item, school traffic and safety, like, and you can just list other commissions in there, I guess. Well, I don't know, actually, hold on, don't change anything. I think the intent was to improve collaboration with other commissions and we happen to have one issue that was representative of that. I don't think we defined it well.
This is not one of your top four. It's, it won't, it won't kill it if you leave it the way it is, so we move on to the next column. It's up to you.
Great.
Low, maybe?
Low, sure. Low?
We got to start over again, so, oh, no, just kidding.
How many more columns?
Have you hit file save? There's 45.
Two more columns. Control S, control S, control S, control S.
Okay, so we'll not be on this call in Bangalore.
So I, line 16 is also not on your proposal. It's just a earmark for us to remember to correspond. So line 17, please.
Okay, so we're at 17, joint session by the commissions for the SEQA requirements presentation. I would say low. But it could, it could go to medium, but I'm going to say low, yeah.
Once, once again, that's another one where I'm like, show the video, bring the person in, and do Q and A. I mean, like, it's easier.
So we are on item 18, development accountability.
We, we can actually move, so for that whole item, if you, if you're okay with it, we can kind of just copy what we had done last year and put it over here, so you don't have to worry about that line.
We're good with that. Great. So anyone have a guess on that, lower, medium?
You're just copying it over, right?
Yeah.
Did they have one from last, what was it last year, just so we know?
Um, what is that one? Development standards, accountability? I haven't, I haven't. So that one last year, I think we have a medium, roughly a medium, 100 hours plus costs, which turned out to be a little bit more than, but.
So 100 hours is a medium.
Well, no, I'm just saying that's what we, our forecast was.
Oh, okay.
But it turned out to be a lot more.
So what's in column G, by the way? We're just seeing a little bit and we can let a few ideas percolate. Measurement criteria, this is the, oh, metrics. Okay, all right, so we're on column F, estimated completion date now, maybe updated by the department as appropriate.
Now we really have to start over.
Okay, there we go. All right, so first, first item, it's study session to preserve places that support daily living, estimated completion date.
Can we do this by quarters, that kind of thing?
Sure, you can do it by, by season. We, we've done fall, winter, those kind of things, give you a little three month.
All right, spring 2021. And how we measure it is, is basically inventory list, inventory list of identified zones of I would try this one in the first part, in the first quarter.
Like now?
So, say that by.
So summer of.
Uh, fall of, fall of 2020.
Fall of 2020.
Yeah.
Okay. 2020, yeah.
CMC update.
Yes, proposed. I would make this one winter 2020.
Would it take that long to do?
This is when?
Would it take that long?
No, but it was just to spread it.
Oh, okay, spread it out, got it. And that's the same thing, proposed CMC update.
So this, the, the Rena numbers come out in April, so we could begin, so it'd be like a, a, you know, start April, I guess, and then it's, yeah, we're going.
More ongoing?
Oh, it would have to be, right? So it would be, it would go into January of 2021.
It's a multi-fiscal year thing, right?
Can we put down this as multi-year?
Until the expiration date 2023.
Most of this activity is not going to be in.
Well, one, it's, one, it's a study session, right? Two, the Rena cycle is going to be a multi-year project, so most likely the next fiscal year you have some item that's similar to this, so.
Why don't we complete the study session is what you're asking?
Right, because that's what the language is right now, it's a study session, so.
When, when is the earliest we could do it and when is the latest we have to do?
Maybe fall or winter 2020. It's a study session, so.
I would actually say it was more useful for it to be reactive to, to, I mean, you know, you're, so you're kind of building it on the early numbers. I would build it on the, well.
That's fine, good.
Well, no, that, that is a good point, right? Do we build it on the early numbers, which is the preliminary, or do we fight back and get a different number in fall, right? So, but, and we'll, we can also look at timing to see if all the projects we have here, what is it, slot, right? That might also be your, your criteria.
Well, so maybe in, in that light, if there, if there are numbers to discuss, then I would say winter 2020, you know, end of this year. Just so that there's, you know, the whole point of this was to start talking early about the kinds of strategies you would have to adopt to be successful. So, you know, even if it's a sketch at that point.
I think we could have a report, we, you know, an initial report, you know, these are the numbers, let us know in, you know, April or, or May. And then, I don't, I think that the public, if you're looking at targeting sites, I think the public would not appreciate being away for the summer if we were to conduct meetings on this particular topic during the summer while people were not around. And then you could, maybe in September, when people are back, then start really looking at how we're gonna strategize to, to solve things. So, one, you know, first, first figure out, this, this is what we're dealt with, and then, and then after the summer, this is how we're gonna work on it. What do you think?
So, two, two sessions?
Well, one really isn't, it's just to be informed. This is, these are the numbers, and then also city council would get, get those numbers too, and, and see what they wanna do.
It seems like for each of these, just to save time on the objectives, it's complete study session and provide initial report. It'll save you time on the measurement criteria for any study session.
Yeah, I don't know, I think the value, the value of the, the most valuable thing to provide is, these are what, you know, these are the first cut numbers, the preliminary numbers, and these are the ways in which, in which you might meet that strategy. Without necessarily tacking on, you know, and here's a list of forty sites that need to be evaluated. That, that really, that really can come later. So.
We're on item seven, study session for the impact of utilizing VMT. Instead of level of service for CQ review. Do you wanna do that before the summer starts?
Because this is effective, you know, in July, you wanna do this as early as possible in the.
Summer twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And how about the essentially report on the existing transportation plans? That, that should be something that could be pulled together now. It's, it's, well, it's the end of January. So, spring, spring, summer, or some other time?
Well, these are starting in, starting in the summer of this year.
July one twenty twenty.
Yeah, this is for the next planning cycle.
You like fall twenty twenty?
Yeah. I'm good with that, fall twenty twenty.
And what about the future transportation needs?
That, this would be a twenty twenty-one. You know, kind of, spring twenty twenty-one. Or winter twenty, well, maybe, maybe winter twenty twenty-one.
You just have to delay it, because the expectation of winter twenty twenty is actually December of twenty twenty, right?
Correct.
I think?
Yeah, that's what we're thinking, if it's gonna be winter twenty twenty, that will be starting from, I think, late November, right? December, all the way to, I think, early February, or something like that, February.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. We need to scroll down a little bit. I think we're on item ten, oversight of the public works department by the planning commission. Any timeline on looking at that? And that had a low priority.
I, I, I think that'd be something you'd do in the fall. Next city council will have to figure it out, so, fall twenty twenty. Because they've gotta create their commissions, put those in place, so.
Okay, so, item eleven, the study session related to legislative review. I think we already talked about this a little bit, that we wanted to see it.
Or converged commission, or converged, sorry, I'm sorry, commission, Chairmore, sorry about that. I was just adding to that. Creation of new, evaluation of new commission or placement in existing commission.
Or nothing. Would we wanna consider changing this to be a city council or city manager? I don't.
Does the city manager have jurisdiction on this, or is it city council?
Probably the city council.
Manager does.
City manager.
City manager.
City manager in charge of commissions? Yeah.
City manager's in charge of departments.
Departments.
Uh, city council's in charge of commission.
Commissions, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, uh, study session, the legislative review, we talked about, that would happen, you know, it'd have to be in the fall, after they've signed whatever new, you want it in the winter, or fall?
So, do we, do we wanna change column A on ten?
Column A from, from low?
From low on our, on our bill to being something that we identify as, you know, having a, having, you know, a commission, you know, responsive to the public works department.
Medium.
Yeah, and that kind of, and that kind of says, you know, whether it's make a new commission, divide it, divide the tasks up. I mean, you know, it's really a council or city manager thing.
So, you wanna put CCC in, in column A instead of the word low?
Um, I was going the other way. I was thinking it was medium, but, okay.
Oh. No, this, the low over there is a priority. It was low priority.
Oh, got it, I see what you're saying.
Right, so, I, here we're just changing the assignment.
Got it.
So, it's not on the.
Got it, got it, sorry. A new column showed up, and I was like.
Yeah, the medium does make sense. If, if, if the planning commission received an assignment of, you know, review of projects that are going through the public works department, that would be a medium, I'm sure. So, so we changing that or not changing that? Column A?
I like to do city council, I thought that made sense.
City council, or city manager, as you.
City council.
Okay.
Because they already, the department's already there, so.
Okay. So, right, and then just to, to remind the commission, we do have a next study session on the general plan annual review. So, if we could, if we could move along.
I will suggest we finish this item and then take a quick two, three-minute break, and then we can discuss that.
Okay. Okay, and the measurement criteria? Just, what, session held?
Yeah.
Multiple sessions held, so.
Yeah, just present session.
Present ongoing sessions.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, item twelve.
We skipped right.
We moved.
Oh.
CMO.
Yeah.
Right.
For, for these are identified for CC or CMO.
It's gone, okay, great. Evaluation of the city's fiscal future.
Geez, spring twenty twenty-one sounds really attractive.
As attractive as summer twenty twenty-one.
You want summer twenty twenty-one?
No, no.
Next session.
Nothing has been, nothing has been summer twenty twenty-one yet, so.
It's next fiscal year, isn't it?
I think, doesn't summer start in June?
Yeah.
So, you have that one month.
Can we just use quarters, that makes sense?
Be the evaluation is complete, something like that, evaluation complete.
This is just a random question, but, but if we use summers and other people use quarters, and other people use as months, how does this all work out?
Again, it's gonna be adjusted, this is like step one, right? It's gonna be evaluated, does other, this is the commission proposed work program, does department propose work program, city manager, city attorney's office, so this list's gonna be really long.
All right, ten more boxes, or actually six.
Okay, so, item fourteen, infrastructure, the city's sewer plans, et cetera. Is anyone interested, or is it possible that we could have this in the summer of, of this year, summer of twenty twenty? You know, like, July, August timeframe? Great. Is that good? Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, next item fifteen, study existing school traffic and safety. Does anyone have a timeframe for that?
I think that's gonna have to happen now, spring twenty twenty, this issue's urgent, and, and I think the.
It's not this fiscal year, though.
Oh, sorry, what is this?
The planning year.
We're going out, this, where summer twenty twenty is? It's, it's gonna come through fast.
Measurement criteria?
I, I guess it's a still joint study session, or?
Study session complete, there. Okay, so, for the next item, I don't know that we would have a completion date, but.
In A.
Okay. And the joint session by the commissions of the CQ requirement presentation. I'd like to see that by the fall, if that's possible, but I don't know if the schedule's starting to look packed.
Well, you see on top, it says may be updated by department as appropriate, so.
Yeah, very good.
I shall adjust.
Excellent, thank you.
That would, that would actually be more appropriate, at, at such a time when a, you know, the project with a major, you know, CQ component is coming, I think.
We do have to watch for that.
We do probably have what the Westport project.
Is this year?
That's a mitigated negative declaration.
Probably in this fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be, oh, I see what you're saying.
Oh, you think it's gonna bleed over, okay.
Yeah, and, and relatively minimal on, on the secret standpoint, I think.
So, does that conclude item six?
Yes, it does, thank you.
And we'll be taking, thank you, and we'll be taking a three-minute break before we move on to item seven, the marathon study session on the general plan annual review. Thank you. the marathon study session on the general plan annual review. Thank you. All right, and we are back, and looking at item seven. The subject is study session on the general plan annual review implementation plan, and to consider general plan policies and strategies that could benefit from clarification. For this item, I moved, we continue this item seven to the next regular planning commission meeting on February eleventh, twenty twenty.
A second.
Let's, a vote?
Well, hold on, sorry, Commissioner, I just want, before we vote, I wanna just get a general consensus if we will potentially have a quorum for that hearing, 'cause that'd be really important for us to finalize this item, so if you don't know for now, that's fine, but if you do know, let us know now and confirm with us ASAP. So, Commissioner Takashi?
The twelfth, correct?
The eleventh.
The eleventh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I can say I will not be here the eleventh, I believe it's spring break, so... Or winter break, I can't remember which one. Ski break?
It's not the following week?
Ski break.
Isn't President's Day the seventeenth?
Depends on your school district.
Okay.
Yeah.
I am here.
Okay, so we have two.
And I'm unsure, I'll need to check on that. I potentially have a contention, but...
So, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and do that, right? I wanna get confirmation from Commissioner Sakcina, Commissioner Fang. If for some reason we have to cancel that meeting due to a lack of quorum, we can always arrange for a special meeting, and I will work with the chair, and we'll figure something out. Okay, thank you.
Ben, can you give us, one of the things I think was a concern was the schedule looking forward, just approximately. There was an end date when we need to complete this.
Sure.
If that's, that's really what I'm looking.
We'll have to, we have to get council approval by April first, which means we have to take it to council on the March seventeenth hearing, around there, which means we had to finalize this item by the end of February. Now you can vote.
All right, so, please vote with your lights. And the motion carries unanimously for zero. We have one absent. Now, we're moving on to staff and commission reports. Does anyone have anything to report? Okay. With that, we will adjourn.